One who is monitoring right now via Zoom, please mute your microphone. If you could, including myself.
No, I can.
And we're, we've monitored, we, we have since COVID continued to offer our meetings in a hybrid format. So that means that of course, while we are principally live, we also run simultaneously a synchronous version online. So we will kind of, you'll see as we balance through that, that metric this evening. What I'm going to do at seven o'clock, which is in just a few seconds, and I will open our meeting this evening. I will introduce the board. We'll call the role, establish a forum. We'll go through our business meeting. We have two matters on our business meeting, then we will go into our public hearings. And I'd like to take a moment for those that may have not been to a zoning board of appeals hearing before or any other public hearing. I will go through sort of lay the way, what to expect and how the workflow kind of flows this evening. So that everyone here, whether you are here as an, a, an applicant, whether you wish to speak in connection with an application, that you understand sort of how the flow will work in the sequence. And I hope everyone is aware of the, the agenda we follow unless there is some specific reason to depart from it. And all of this material was online. Everything that we are being presented, everything that's being referred to will be also broadcast behind me. And all of the members that you see before you, myself included, and I'll introduce everyone in a moment. We all have our laptops. We're looking here. So if you observe us looking this way, while all of the subject matters behind us, make no mistake, we're, we're seeing exactly that. We're just looking at it on our laptops. So it is now seven o'clock. I'm going to take a moment. I'm going to open our meeting and we'll get business underway. So convening the Newbury City Book Report Zoning Board of Appeals for the hearing day of June 11th, 2024, 7:00 PM. Calling the role, Mr. Ken Swan, here. Mr. Stephen Delisle, here. Mr. Gregory Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Walter Bud Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Larry Ginta.
Present.
And Ms. Lynn Scow is absent and I'm Rob Champetti, present. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six members. The five voting members this evening, and this is more of a legal criteria. We must designate out who the five legal voting members are, which leaves one member that is going to participate in all hearing deliberations, questions, but just won't vote. So the legal five voting members are Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Shannon and myself, and Mr. Larry Ginta is our alternate. And we'll step into a voting role in the event of a recusal. And I believe we have a recusal by one of the members, although it's on an application at the very end of our agenda on 34 Wyman Street. So with that, I'll just take a moment and introduce the board, and then we'll get into the, sort of the length log of the flow this evening. We'll get right into the business of this evening. To my immediate left, I introduce Mr. Ken Swanton, our vice chair. To his left, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary. To his left, Mr. Gregory Bennett, a member. To his left, Mr. Walter Bud Shannon, member. And to my far left, Mr. Larry Ginta, our associate member. And my name is Rob Champetti. I have the privilege of serving as chairman. So with that, we've established a quorum. We've established the five voting members and we are going to just get into our business meeting. For anyone that wishes to follow along, if you have a laptop, you can log on to the wifi that's available in this building, which is Newbury Port Public. There is no password necessary. You can do that on your phones as well. Simply navigate to Newbury Port Zoning Board and you can view any of these materials if you chose to look at them specifically on your handheld or on your laptop. So we will get into the business meeting in a moment. Before I do, I, I want to take a moment and just walk through the flow of this evening. When we get to the public here, we have a busy, busy agenda, obviously out of respect to a grateful and greatly filled room of residents and fellow neighbors and citizens. I try to be as respectful as possible to make sure that everyone understands what they're in store for, so that we can move swiftly, but methodically and thoughtfully through the business of this board and the business that impacts each and every one of us that's before us tonight. So with that, if you haven't been to a zoning board of appeals, here's the flow. Here's what to expect. We begin, and it's a very sort of linear process. We begin by first, I will read each of the applications by, by title, by address. And essentially I, I simply read the public notice. This would be the notice that was sent out to any of butters, the notice that was published. I read that by describing the property address, the applicant, and specifically what the applicant seeking relief for, whether it's a special permit, whether it's a variance, whether it's a special permit for non-conformities. And then I drill it down just one step further in sort of natural language, describing essentially what the applicant seeks. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, say for instance, to add an addition or extend a non-conforming use or whatever it is, so that you needn't, God forbid, be a lawyer, you know, and you still will understand exactly what it is that we're being asked to, to approve. So once I've described and announced the, the application, we then hear from the applicant. That's when the applicant or the applicant's representative will take the podium. We ask that anyone who speaks this evening, this is applicant, applicant's representatives, neighbors, abutters, or anyone of the public, any one of you who wish to speak, to kindly, if you would, take the podium. And it's because we're broadcasting synchronously with, with our online platform, that we're recording everything and allowing it to be very clear. So we just ask you kindly give your name and address and then speak your mind. So what we, once we begin the application, we'll hear from the applicant, from the applicant's representative, their attorneys, their architect, their designer, planners for themselves, or any or all of the other. Once the application has been presented, while that's being presented, any materials that are public record, anything that we're reviewing, anything that's been submitted and is on Open Gov, is going to be broadcast now and simultaneously is available online. Once we've heard from the applicant and the application's been fully presented, I will then invite the applicant to confirm that there's nothing further, and then we will close that portion of the public hearing. That's the first portion of the public hearing, and we then go to public comment. Public comment is when I invite everyone, anyone in this room to kindly buy a show of hands and as orderly as is efficient or convenient, to kindly allow yourself to be recognized. We will do our best to try to see all hands and we will ask you and invite you to come to the podium, give your name and address, and speak your mind. I will say that what we do, there's a blackboard that I'll ask Mr. Port to my immediate right. And by the way, just for a moment, my immediate right is Mr. Andy Port, our, our planning director. To his right, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. And to her immediate right, Ms. Gretchen Joy, who has the unenviable task of writing down everything everyone says. So as you look around this room and look at these tables, I want to make sure everyone knows who everyone is. When you come to the podium, please govern yourselves accordingly with respect to the two-minute time limit. I know that it's onerous. We have a very busy agenda. I have, you know, great and wide discretion and I, I usually exercise it very graciously all of the time. Because like you, I'm just, we are all just one of you. We want to hear from everyone, but we ask in light of everyone having an opportunity to speak, to kindly govern yourselves to the two-minute time limit. I will be as courteous as, as, you know, I can humanly be to sort of alert you to the fact that we're sort of running long and I'll, I'll always delicately but pointillently try to, you know, try to alert you if you're speaking to wrap things up so that you can come to a conclusion, so that it's not a problem. But we ask you to kindly govern yourselves so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Once we close public comment, and by the way, I will go through the room first, show of physical hands, and then out of courtesy for anyone online, we will then go to virtual hands that are raised online. We will identify them. And either Ms. Sullivan or Mr. Port will let me know. I will, we will recognize them by name or by telephone number. We will unmute their mic and then we'll hear from them as well. Once we've exhausted the room live, as well as the room virtual, we will then close the second portion of the public hearing, of the comment portion, and we will go to a section called Questions from the Board. I want to make a note here to just say that if you happen to frame your question, if you frame your comment in the form of a question, which you're certainly welcome and invited to do, please know that we mean you no discourtesy or disrespect if we do not directly answer your question, though you are welcome to frame it as a question. It is, we, we will be listening to all of the information. You will shortly hear your question reframed by one of the members of the, of the board when it comes to the next phase of this hearing. So please, if you do ask, if you do volunteer a comment in the form of a question, know that we mean you no disrespect. It's purely procedural. We won't be directly answering your question, but know that we will be taking notes and listening, listening very carefully. And you will most certainly see some recognizable version of your question in the form of the next third segment of our hearing, which is Questions from the Board. I'll then go to, for each and every one of our members, including Mr. Ginta, who is our alternate member this evening, unless there's a recusal at the end. Everyone will have an opportunity to pose questions, including reframing questions from the audience. Questions from the members to the applicant, to their engineers, to their architects, to themselves or others. Once we've exhausted everyone in the room, all of the members, I will then close that section of the public hearing, and we go to the final segment, which is called Deliberations. This is when you, as members of the audience and the public, as well as each other and ourselves, listen to us, think out loud and deliberate out loud. This is where we toil with the legal criteria of each and every standard of what's being sought by an applicant. They're seeking an application for a variance or a special permit for non-conformities, et cetera. We will go through the legal criteria and we will be speaking that criteria aloud. You get to essentially eavesdrop because that's part of the public process. So you listen to us toil with that legal criteria. We go through deliberations one at a time. We discuss and deliberate. And once we have completed that process, we then close that final portion of our public hearing, at which point, under a sort of modified rules of Robert's Rules of Order, I will then invite any member of the CBA to offer a motion to approve. A motion to approve is simply the mechanism by which that question is placed for a final vote. Please know that if a member makes a motion to approve, it doesn't mean that that member intends to support the application, supports the application, or intends to vote to approve the application. It's simply the semantics by which it is placed on the floor for a vote. So it is always in the affirmative, always in the form of a motion to approve. That motion is then seconded. Once it's made and seconded, we then call, I then call the role. And in order for an application to be successful, four members of the five voting members of the CBA must vote in the affirmative. Four members equals a pass. Anything less is a fail, you know, for lack of better expression. So, you know, that is the sort of, you know, the, the clip notes, if you will, on, on exactly what's about to happen. I, I always like to take a moment to just go through that, so everyone is sort of on the same page. And so with that, we now will get into our business meeting, which are matters that we've already dealt with, that we're addressing either coming back before us for some reason, a modification or a question or something of that matter. And then we get into the public hearings and we follow the sequence. Anyone who does not answer to the call of the docket, if your application's called and no one is here to present, perhaps someone's running late, as a courtesy, as a board, we routinely will simply defer and continue that matter to the bottom of the agenda. No one loses that opportunity. It's simply put, the back of the, of the docket. So I apologize in advance if you're here to speak in connection with an application for which the applicant is not yet here. That is something as a courtesy we routinely do. So I, I do apologize in advance that that means that if you're here waiting to speak and it was number one in the, in the docket and it's, the folks aren't here, they're going to be at the very bottom of the list, which means unfortunately so too with anyone who wishes to speak. But forgive me, there, there's no other better way, I think, to do that than that. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the indulgence of that walk through. We're getting to our business meeting now, which is the matter of an in-law special renewal request. So these are two in-law apartment renewals, and we have 32 Turkey Hill Road. And do we have anyone here on behalf of 32 Turkey Hill Road or Andy? We have simply a request for.
Oh, sorry. Is Michelle Alt and I am from 32 Turkey Hill Road in Newburyport, looking to renew our special permit that was issued for the in-law unit that we have.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, members of the CBA, we have any questions or comments, Mr. Swan?
I just have one question, which is, I believe this was for your children, because these in-law apartments. Remember, are your children still living there?
So the in-law originally was for my parents and both of them are now at Port Rehab. My mom is hopefully coming back to live in the in-law in September, but my son is currently living in the unit. And at this point, we're not positive about mom coming back, but she has Parkinson's. She's had some complications with that. But they are hoping that she can come back. So having her know that she does still have her home to come back to is a big motivating piece for her as well.
I'm sorry to hear about her condition, but thank you for answering the question.
Any other questions, Mr. Swan? Mr. Delisle?
Guess I'll ask, is your, is the child living in the house a minor child or a?
No, my son is actually 24 and he is a firefighter. And he is also an ambulance driver for Cataldo. So he's living in that, that two-bedroom unit next door. It's attached, but in the in-law.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Mr. Bennett? Mr. Shannon?
No, no questions.
Mr. Ginta?
I have no questions. I've, okay. We've heard from our applicant on the renewal, gone through questions in the board, and do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to extend the in-law special permit for 32 Turkey Hill Road for three additional years.
Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle. Calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Ginta? Oh, apologies. Rob Champetti, a vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ice habit motion carries. Thank you for your presentation, 32 Turkey Hill Roads, application for in-law special permit renewal is approved. Moving now to eight Coffins Court. Do we have the proponent online or?
Not like either.
Not either. Okay. Do we have any questions from the board, Mr. Swan? There's, there's no one here to answer.
I have a guess, perhaps the plane department knows. Is, is this still occupied by a, from all of them?
Okay. Mr. Delisle? I have no questions. Mr. Bennett?
No questions.
Shannon? No questions. Mr. Ginta?
No.
I have no questions either. So if it's still occupied, nothing's changed, status quo, just the cruel march of time is all that we're addressing this evening. Make a motion to stop that. All right, we have a motion to approve.
So moved, making a motion to approve the request to extend the in-law apartment special apartment for eight Coffins Court, three additional years.
Very good. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle. Calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, a vote yes. Five in the affirmative. The ice habit that motion carries. The in-law special permit renewal application on Coffin Court is approved. Okay, with that, we will close the business meeting and get into our public hearings, beginning with the first on our agenda this evening. This is the matter of Jean Allen, AIA 26 Beacon Avenue. This matter was continued from March 12th, 2024, then continued to April 9th, 2024, then May 14th, 2024. And I understand there is a request to further continue. Is that correct?
Yes.
No, I apologize. This is a special permit for non-conformities to demolish an existing single-family structure and construct a new single-family home on a lot with a non-conforming area and frontage. Do we have, on behalf of the applicant, a proponent to speak? Yes.
Our attorney, sitting here, we have been waiting for him to arrive. Is that another voting here?
Is your attorney, Attorney DeShane?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I suspect you heard me at the, at the outset. We will, of course, extend the courtesy of just simply deferring this to the end of our agenda. My apologies. And certainly we'll wait his arrival. Thank you. Very good. So we will continue 26 Beacon Avenue to the end of our agenda. To anyone here who wishes, or is here to speak in connection with that, this is a perfect case in point of circumstances such as this. There are many public hearings in many of our adjacent towns that are happening these same times, these same evenings. So my apologies for the inconvenience. We ask you kindly continue to stay here so that we can hear from you. Moving now to the second matter on our agenda. This is the application of Andrew and Louis Simons, Carol Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Acosta LLC. The application is 25 Ashland Street. This is a two-prong application. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, approvals, and conditions for a special permit to demolish an addition and renovation and construction of a new addition within the DCOD, which is the demolition control overlay district. The second prong of this is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals and permits to demolish the addition and a renovation and construction of a new addition. Attorney, me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Acosta, 30 Green Street in Newburyport. And with me this evening is Andrew and Louise Simons, who are here, who are the owners of the property, as well as Matt Lampis, who joins with Scott Brown Architects, who is the architect on the project. As the chair indicated, the property is located at 25 Ashland Street, and we're here for special permit for non-conformities, as well as a DCOD special permit. So the property is located also in the R2 zoning district. It's improved currently with a single-family home and also an accessory structure, which is not the subject matter of this application. The original structure, which faces and is adjacent to Ashland Street, was built in or around 1765. We refer to that as the historic house. There was a first addition, which was constructed sometime between 1884 and 1924. Based upon our research, we believe probably constructed around 1900. We'll talk about that in a minute. We refer to that as the first addition. And then Andrew constructed an addition off the back of that in 1998, referred to as the 1998 addition. To be clear, there is no proposed change to the original home, which is adjacent to Ashland Street. Both additions are on the rear of the historic home, and we're proposing to remove both of the additions due to the structural issues related to the first addition, which is between the historic home and the 1998 addition. We believe that the board can find under the DCOD criteria that the cost of rehabilitation, considering the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of the state building code is excessive, and the project remained, that section of the building remains, no, has no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, and will provide information from the structural engineer relative to that. So what is the history of the home? The historic home was likely built in 1765 on land, which is now Atkinson Common. It was the home of Eunice Atkinson Courier and was previously the home of her grandmother, Eunice Atkinson. In 1854, Moses A. Courier purchased the land, which would become the property of 25 Ashland Street. In 1858, Eunice Atkinson Courier was living with her husband Moses, and his house at 259 Merrimack Street. Moses decked vessels built by the firm of Courier and Townsend, and later worked in the shipyard of John Curry. In 1859, Eunice Courier purchased the property at 25 Ashland Street. At some point prior to 1860, it is presumed that the historic house was moved from Atkinson Common to the property, no small feat, but we found evidence in historic records to indicate that. In 1860, Eunice was living at 25 Ashland Street, presumably in this house moved from Atkinson Common. And Eunice gave the land for Atkinson Common to the city in 1873. In 1873, she decreed the property to her step-granddaughter in namesake, Eunice Atkinson Courier, by her will. However, the Form B states that she left the houses to Moses, presumably due to the age of the younger Eunice, who was eight or nine at the time. Later, in 1883 or so, the younger Eunice, then around 18, married Samuel Williams, and they lived at 27 Ashland Street next door. Moses was charged to assume management of the historic home until Eunice reached the age of 21. Were informed by the city directory that the younger Eunice and her family likely began to live in the property around 1900, and the property was rented out prior to that. Hence, we believe that that's about the time that that addition was actually put on the back, and we're going to show you some maps to indicate that as well. So with that, if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is an 1884 roadmap, and you see in the center of the slide 25 Ashland Street, and there's no addition on the back. So that's 1884. Next slide, please. And then in 1924, you see 25 Ashland Street, and so now that rear addition is constructed. This is a sandworm map. Next slide, please. And this is the blueprint style of the assessors' maps, which I'm going to show you two from 1924, but they both represent the same, that you've got that addition on the back. And if you could go to the next one, please. And then here's the typical assessors' map that you would find in the large book when you write, walk into the assessors' office. But again, you can see the addition on the back. Next slide, please. So here's the site plan of the existing conditions. The property, just so I can point this out, is non-conforming for lot area. It has 9,690, where 10,000 square feet are required. It has non-conforming frontage of 53.79, where 90 feet are required. And the structure is pre-existing non-conforming, also for right yard setback, as it approaches into the right yard setback with a 7.5 setback, 10 feet is required. These are all on the original structure. None of them are going to be impacted by the proposed addition. What you can see here is in the hash addition on the back, you see underneath the small, you see the small addition, excuse me, the small rectangle, that's the existing addition on the back. And the proposed addition is that the larger outline with the, with the crosshatch, all continuing to be in the rear of the home. Next slide, please. So as described in a letter from Mr. Fix, just Fix, the structural engineer, which you have in your materials, the brick and rubble foundation of the first addition is in poor condition with large cracks, possibly due to shifting and settlement of the soil underneath the foundation. Foundation is on earth. It's got rubble and then it's got brick, and this, we'll show you a little bit more about that in a minute. This letter states that, and I quote, "The poor conditions, cracks, the foundation of the L indicate poor structural integrity, and the foundation requires repair regardless of any plans for renovation." Preserving the first addition while repairing the foundation, whether renovations simply for repair would require much difficulty, danger, and expense, he says. Particularly, it would require underpinning as the major method of repair. He describes this process as inserting several large steel needle beams under the first floor frame of the two-story L in order to temporarily support it, the existing foundation can be removed and replaced. He is very careful and clear to say that the process is difficult, hazardous, and costly. He describes several steps that it would take and the expense to expose first floor structure in order to assess the framing to determine of how it will be supported by the needle beams. In order to do that, because you can't crawl underneath it because of the safety and then the way it's constructed, you would have to remove the floor inside to expose whether or not the beams could actually hold the needle supports. He very clearly says that, given the precarious nature of the two-story structure and the rubble foundation, work of safety would be concerned. His words are, quote, "Any attempt to keep and maintain the woodframed structure of the 1900 L would be fraught with difficulty, peril, and extreme expense." So now I'm going to go through the photographs, which I think you're going to be able to see with the naked eye how the foundation is slipping away from the main house and how it's bowing out in several instances. So some of these photographs are taken from the 1998 construction time period. What happened during that construction time period is, notwithstanding the fact that, as you can see, what I'm going to show you in two slides, that the new foundation from the new proposed addition was set apart from the existing foundation. There was a rainstorm that totally, that took away one corner of that, and they had to then redo footings and redo how they were going to connect it to the house. So as you can see, this is the, this is the first addition and its foundation. And you can see in this instance how that corner has been repaired over time. Next slide, please. And this is just another shot of that area. Next slide, please. And here's where they put the forms to the original addition foundation, which later had to be changed, given the essentially disintegration of the soils around the other corner. Next slide, please. And here's when it rained, the soils washed away and that rubble fell down. Next slide, please. Again, here's them supporting it back up. But you can see how the bottom of that foundation was rubble regardless of what happened to that corner. Next slide, please. Again, this is another shot of that corner. Next slide, please. And just another look at the construction of that foundation. Next slide, please. And then here it is during construction as well. Next, please. And then this is where they had to change how the methodology. And then this is where they had to change how the methodology in order to connect that addition. Next, please. So here's a shot after the addition is put on. So you see the nineteen ninety eight addition on the on the left. And you see the first addition immediately. And then you can see the cracks that have occurred even where they did the repair. Next slide, please. And then here's a close angle of that addition. Next slide, please. Here is the first addition foundation. When we step away, you're going to see, but you can see in this. This is an area in the middle of the foundation of the addition and it's bowing out. And the bricks are obviously very loose. Next slide, please. This is the connection at the house, the original house. Again, you can see the failing of the the bricks in this area. Next, please. So as I said earlier, much of the same footprint of the first and. Second, excuse me, the same footprint as the first and second additions are going to be removed. But we believe that the. That the addition will be meet all the D C O D criteria. Let me say that we did have our meeting with the historic commission, as you know. They provided their recommendations to this board. In part, I would quote from them first. There is virtually nothing of historical interest in this part of the structure. Second, a combination of factors having to do with the dimensions of the section. This foundation, the topology of the site make it unsafe to try to save it and build onto it at the rear. Even if it were usable, this approach does not readily lend itself to satisfactory architectural results. They then went on to say that proposed changes in the rear of the structure as illustrated in the plans submitted by the applicant are not. Likely to have an adverse impact on the historical value to the structure or its environment. With that, what I'd like to do is go to the next set of plans. Next slide, turn this over to Matt, the architect on the project.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. Matt Landis, Scott Brown Architects, forty eight Market Street, Newburyport, for the record. Andy, would you mind just going back to the site plan and just quickly a few slides fast? So before I get into the architectural, I just wanted to go over a quick overview of the progress of some of the challenges that we've gone through at far. And how we got to the design that we see before you tonight. So from the site plan, you know, we've got through, we've gone through a lot of options for this addition. Most of them included a much smaller connector and then the addition attached to that. Which eliminated actually the need to go to historic and also going over the D C O D calculations. And it also allowed us much more flexibility from an architectural standpoint, because we have that. That flex and the number of the D C O D to go over on the allowable openings. But the issue is, we kept running into the same problem. The stair and the connector i- in such a narrow space is virtually impossible to get to all three levels. And then trying to make a dunbell shaped plan work is just architecturally really difficult. You know, when you have one mass on one side and another and then a thin connector in between. It just doesn't allow for an appropriate size or scale addition to match the character of the aesthetic of the existing house. And I think that's why it's so hard when we were going through some of these initial iterations. But the biggest issue, I think, so far has been the structural component. Regardless of the shape of the addition or the size of the scale, where it's located, we're still going to have to deal with that structural issue regardless. And we're no issue, we're no strangers, sorry, to to foundation issues. I mean, every house pretty much in Newburyport has some version of a foundation issue. And to to deal with those, we've dug basement down deeper, we poured. Haunt walls around the perimeter, we underpinned a bunch of them. I mean, under the foundation sections and pouring the puddings. What makes this significantly different, though, is there's nothing to underpin to. And there's nothing to pour a haunt wall against. And that's what makes it more challenging about this project. But you can see in the photos from the nineteen ninety eight edition, they're just pouring right against the wall that is there. So there wasn't even that opportunity to pour a haunt wall or to underpin it. Because doing so would have given, you know, an even more dangerous situation of what was occurring. And then during excavation, there was one photo that basically had like a two by six holding on the corner there. So you can see that, you know, some of the brick and the rebels are getting away and the likelihood of that happening again is is pretty high. So. After reading the analysis from Joe Fix, he recommended one solution, which Lisa mentioned a second ago. Cutting in space for steel beams, support the addition, rip off the existing foundation, pour brand new foundation. We've done that a number of times as well. We've even picked up houses and moved them back hundreds of feet in the lot. We did one on High Street not long ago. The problem with that, though, is cutting holes into, we would be cutting holes into a. Compromising the foundation that's already compromised. So we would essentially be making it worse in order to try to hold it up and make it better. So realizing that, we wanted to address the challenges with the size and the scale and the placement of the new addition. But do it in a clean and sort of seamless way. So. Both from an architectural standpoint and a structures. So what does that mean? That means increasing the width from ten feet, which is what we had originally in one of our iterations to nineteen feet for better utilization inside. It's just really difficult to get a kitchen, a bedroom, a bathroom, a closet to work in in ten feet. That allows for a new staircase to go to all the levels. The existing floor has this sort of U shaped staircase inside the existing box of the house, which is really difficult and small and hard to use. And it also allows us to get. Away far enough away from those foundation issues where we can attach cleanly to a more secure foundation, which is the existence. So Andy, if you don't mind going back to the slide. Oh, I'm sorry, the the front of course. Uh, front of the vision. Yes. Thank you. So the new stairs are sort of parallel with the the house along the back. That sort of determines the width of the addition. None of this, though, can be visible or seen from the front, but. What we are doing, Caitlin, if you can go to the next slide. Is we're pinching in the addition, seven feet on on each side. So we're extending it from that site plan. We're extending it to two point five feet beyond where that dotted line was. But we're still sort of pinching in the addition seven feet from the coast. This elevation shows how we're keeping the scale of the addition down a little bit. We're changing the the gable roof, which is there existing to a hip roof. We're lowering the pitch of the roof of the addition and that also lands lower than the existing house. And then the dotted lines at the bottom of the proposed left elevation still show the work that we need to do with the foundation. So. Even though we're proposing to sort of clean up the the shape of this and intersect it in a cleaner way. We're still going to have a pretty complex footing and foundation plan that we're going to be proposing. Next slide, please. So the existing roof lands about nineteen inches down from from ridge and showing the top rear existing elevation. Our new roof lands about thirty inches below the ridge. So. Even though the addition is a little bit wider, the the pitch of the roof is is a little shallower. So. We're landing on that existing box just a little bit lower. Next slide, please. So this shows a little bit of a better view of some of the great issues that we're dealing with. We're sort of trying to keep that side entrance as low to the ground as possible to. Limit the amount of steps on the first floor. So there's going to be some regrading on this side to to make that happen. Next slide. So this is a pretty typical D C O D configuration calculation sheet that we do, but. I think what it better shows is the area of concentration of work. We're sort of at like a natural disadvantage because we have a smaller square footage to start from getting to that twenty five percent. Is just a lot harder to do when you have a lower square footage. So the big portion of that calculation of that forty percent is that nineteen ninety eight addition. If you were to just break that and bring it out, it's accounts for above a third of the proposed demolition percentage. So. It's about three hundred and ninety square feet or sixteen percent of the total. So if we were to, you know, pick that up and move it. Or not considered part of this calculation, we would be closer to that twenty five percent mark. And then from a material standpoint, you know, we're we're matching all the existing materials, a flatboard siding, we're using rock resistant room. Wood, flat windows, we sort of, you know, say very similar things most C B A meetings, but. I think the thing that's different about this is that this house has been pretty meticulously maintained by Louise and Andrew. These guys have been excellent stewards of this property and it's really difficult taking care of such an old house. This house has white plank flooring still on the inside. All the mantles are still intact. There's an integrated wood gutter in the front that's still in great shape. All the shutters are still in pretty good shape. So. They've obviously put a lot of effort into maintaining such an old house and. I would have no doubt that with this addition, they would maintain that, you know, meticulous maintenance moving forward. That concludes the architectural side of things, but at the end of the answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Matt. You go to the next slide, Andy. So as the board knows, the applicant requires a D C O D special permit. Because as Matt explained, we're removing more than twenty five percent of the exterior walls. Of the structure, at least sixteen percent, as he noted, is up in nineteen ninety eight addition. The statute, the ordinance requires that the board find that it can be demolished. Because it retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use. Taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of the state building code as applies to historic buildings. Or structures or other applicable laws. Here, we believe that the letter from Joe Fix and the representations from the architect. Support the board's conclusion in that if it were to make it. The poor condition of the foundation, the first addition. As described in evidence with photos prohibit the reasonable use of that portion of the structure or rehabilitation of it. The applicant will have to replace the failing foundation, preserving the first addition while doing so. Will be fraught with risk and injury and at a great economic expense. Here, the applicant proposes to remove the first addition. And comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards in replacing it. As Matt has shown in the architectural plans, it will be subservient to the main structure. Its scale and massing are similar to that, which is proposed to be removed. It's not visible from the public realm and it's complementary to, but not an exact duplicate of the historic structure. And so we believe that the board can make the determination as the historic did and recommended to this board. That the D C O D special permit can issue. Next slide, please. The next, the next criteria that the board must address are the general special permit criteria found in section ten H seven. And with that, I'll just kind of go through those in short order. First, the use is listed on the table of uses and of course, a single family use is allowed by right in the R two zoning district. But next, the use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Obviously, the ordinance has found that single family homes are allowed by right and therefore inherently is deemed desirable. Further, replacing the unsecured foundation is clearly essential. Essential to public welfare, protecting the applicant, the applicant's families and visitors. Third, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And of course, there is no change of use, so that won't be impacted at all. Fourth, the requested use will not overload any public services, water drainage, et cetera. And of course, the the structure will continue to be used as a single family home and no impact will occur there. But next, that there are no any special regulations regarding the use and there are none. Sixth, is that the request use will not impair the integrity of the character of district or adjoining districts. And certainly the use of single family home won't impair the district. But more importantly, the revision of this or reconstruction of this L in the back. Will be beneficial to the entire district. I'm going to show you some photos in a little bit where you can actually see the L pulling away from the original historic structure. So something needs to happen to. And next is the proposed use in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, which the proposed single family home is. And finally, the proposed use will not be conducted in a manner so as to emit any dangerous, nauseous or injurious activities. And of course, it won't. So the next item, and then you could go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. The board also, we're seeking a permit for special permit for nonconformities. Why? The reason is because the property lacks insufficient frontage. And because the addition is more than five hundred square feet, the board needs to find that the proposed addition. Does not create any new nonconformities and that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. Here, no new nonconformity will be created. In fact, aside from the dimensional nonconformities of the existing single family home, which won't be impacted. The proposal meets all of the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. Next, elaborating on whether or not the board can find that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. As we showed, the high scale massing volume location, the new addition are keeping with the existing two additions. It cannot be or should not be considered substantially more detrimental than the first edition and nineteen ninety eight edition combined. It offers a visually preferable appearance that complements historic homes when viewing the structure of property. That also was supported by the historic commission. And when comparing the proposed addition to the neighborhood, many of the other homes in the neighborhood, I shall see momentarily. Have similar Ls off the back. And this this lot actually happens to be rather large in the neighborhood. The help will be larger. The current square footage is fifteen hundred and seventy five square feet. It's less than twenty two of the twenty seven homes on the block bounded by Ashland, Stanley, Forster and Merrimack Street. The proposed plan includes two thousand six hundred and twenty square feet. You're going to see that this topography drops down dramatically. And so. When Matt refers to three floors, he's talking about reaching the basement, the first floor and the second floor. So it's all. So with that, what I'd like to do is go to the next slide, please. And finally, the proposed addition is in the rear of the structure and won't have any impact on the neighboring structure. Next slide, please. And this is the dimensional table. And again, I just noted that all the existing dimensional requirements. Will not be, the nonconforming dimensional requirements will not be impacted. Next slide, please. And I've just gone through this. You slip slide down to the my mouse, please, Caitlin. So here's a bird's eye view, if you will. You can see the lot in the middle of the plan. That's the current property. So you can imagine that L in the back getting just a little bit wider and a little bit longer. And you can see the property surrounding it all kind of long with the elongated lots that exist on this part of Atkinson Street. Certainly in size and massing, but not any different and probably less in a mass point of view than its neighbors. Next slide, please. So here's a front view of twenty five Ashland Street. As you can see to the left, you see the driveway that goes in and then starts to drop down. We'll see that a little bit more in the middle in a minute. Next slide, please. So here's the side, the left side where the east elevation. You can see the original structure, the first addition and then the nineteen ninety eight addition. Next, please. And this is just another view of that same side. If you look very carefully at the middle of the first addition here, you can see the brick wall bowing out in the middle of that. In the middle of the first addition, the brick foundation. Next slide, please. You can also see it kind of pulling down away from the original structure. Next slide, please. So this is the west side elevation. There's fence there. You can see the nineteen ninety eight addition in the back. There, but you can't, you can't really see the the first addition from this side. Excellent. And here's a, this is a look behind the fence where Matt was talking about making this a kind of. Reducing the number of steps to get into this side. So there's a different elevation that they're going to work with with the grade. On the the side of this structure. Next slide, please. And here's a rear view. Again, you can see how the yard drops down and back. It probably really drops toward the back of Ashland Street here. Next slide, please. And this is from the very back of the yard. Again, you can see the other structures that are adjacent. You see the other structures that have Ls that are elongated on the street with that barn that's on the left hand side. So obviously you can see the nineteen ninety eight screen porch there. The proposed addition is going to be first lower in height than the existing L. But just a little bit beyond what is existing in the nineteen ninety eight addition. Next slide, please. So here's a street line down Ashland Street as you look toward the river to the north. You can see twenty seven. See the twenty five, you's not going to change it all. And then you see twenty three. All of these are broad against the street. Next slide, please. And then you see nineteen and twenty one Ashland Street just beyond. Next. Twenty seven. All good sized homes. Next, please. At twenty nine Ashland Street. Side. And thirty one Ashland Street is beyond also. Next. And then twenty eight. And then twenty-eight Ashland Street, favorite building on Ashland Street. Next slide, please. Twenty-two to twenty-four Ashland. That's just down beyond what we just saw. On the opposite side. Next slide, please. And twenty Ashland. So this is on the opposite side of the prop. Next slide. I will also say, the board has received six letters of support from surrounding neighbors. And also supporting the changes in this project. With that, we would request the board grant a DCOD special permit. And approve a special permit for non-conformities to allow proposed addition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. And just to conclude your presentation.
Yes.
Very good. With that, we will close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. And with that, I'll just ask for support to put up our calendar that just gives the little rules of the road for public comments. So again, ladies and gentlemen, anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application, please know. Need be pro or con, though you're welcome to, to let us know if you fall in one or the other camp. You're also certainly welcome to just simply share your thoughts and we will listen to them all. We ask you to kind of govern yourselves, as I mentioned at the outset, to a, to a two-minute plus or minus timeline. And with that, any hands in the room? Anyone wish to be heard in the room? Yes, sir.
Bob Roskin, twenty-two Ashland Street. Street from the Simmons's house. Every morning, I see their door, see their, see the activity. They love this house. They care for it. They've been in their home. Beautiful home. Always supportive of their application.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cross. Cross. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? In the room, any hands? One's going to us. I'll circle back again, but do we have any hands online or anyone who wishes to be heard online? Seeing no hands online. And one more look through the room? Close that portion of the public hearing. Thank you. We will now go to two questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Swanton.
Yes, thank you. Attorney Mead, you know. Larger historic history, pretty much the big thing stopping them from being knocked down are this D O C D bylaw or ordinance. And. Proposal here is to take down forty percent of the building, but I understand that, I think you mentioned that that includes the nineteen ninety-eight piece. If you took that out, it'd be a lot closer to twenty-five, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Still a little over the twenty-five.
It's a little bit over, but it's because you have to include everything. So yes, that's correct.
And to me, it's very significant here. So I just want to, for the record, I think you already mentioned it, but Historical Commission, this has the first one, the Historical Commission, they reviewed all those. And their advice to us essentially is it's okay to take down this L on the back. And it's not particularly significant and it's fine. Correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. I noticed that when the ninety-eight addition was put on and you dug in close to the nineteen hundred addition. That foundation kind of collapsed. Are you all confident that when you dig away both of these additions and get into that? I realize the original building, even though it's from the seventeen sixties, was moved there a hundred years later. But, but. Is your, is your architect, are you confident that she won't collapse? She will?
Yeah, I'll let Matt answer that, but I believe that they obviously reviewed all of that and are confident that that won't happen, but.
So, yeah, just to address that, that. Change in foundation is actually between the two red masses that's on the lower left elevation. The foundation of the main box is actually much more intact. It's, it's all, you know, essentially rubble. There's a couple of photos actually, Caitlin, if you don't mind, go back to one of the photos that shows the back corner. Sort of zoomed out a little bit.
Of the, of the original house?
Of the original house and the addition sort of like in one photo. Maybe it's towards the lower.
Right there. There you go.
Actually, a couple more downs, more zoomed out. Well, there was, there was a. So the majority of these issues happening beyond where, you know, that first addition is. That, you know, the first addition is sort of sinking down and there's some sediment in that brick, which I think caused a lot of issues when they were pouring the dew against the brick. But the foundation of the existing house is much more intact. And I think this is much more suitable to attach a new foundation to rather than to. Deal with the existing. Settle on the brick.
Okay, thank you very much.
My last question is just, this is a substantial rehab. You didn't mention it, but the. You know, part of our rules here, substantial rehab, you have to redo the sidewalk, the trees. I'm assuming you've seen all that, right?
We have seen that and, you know, there's going to be a lot of work here. And the ordinance actually says, when you apply for the building permit, if the value is determined to be substantial, which is fifty percent or whatever. So. Everybody is politely getting ahead to get DPS ahead. And so my clients are very well aware that if that value is a substantial rehab, they have to do sidewalks and the trees and it works with the DPS. But we don't have that value yet because we haven't done the first.
That's, that's typical. All right, thank you. This is my last question. All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Thank you, Mr. Swanton, to know Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I had a few questions also. With regard to the, the first, the L, the first addition. L, what is the footprint of that? Piece of the structure?
Can you go to the site plan, maybe, Andy? Do you know that, Matt? About eleven by eleven. No, the length is twelve by twelve.
Well, just.
Not the, not, not, oh, no, not the subdivision, that's the portion, yeah, I hear. It's about eleven or twelve by eleven. About eleven by eleven.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry.
Yes, and then, and then the, if you were to add the nineteen ninety-eight addition, that would become like.
So that's that whole in that rectangle inside, yeah, that's the inside rectangle. That's the both of them together.
Right, but, but it's more than, more than half is the nineteen ninety-eight.
Correct, the nineteen ninety-eight addition is longer. It's longer, but it's one story. And the L is two stories.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm talking, just the footprint, though, yeah, yeah, okay. And with the increase. In the square footage going from fifteen seventy-five to twenty-six twenty. You had, you mentioned that that was including all the three floors when you had that.
I think it's, it's all the living space. And what I was trying to explain was that Matt was talking about the three levels of this. So that, that's the basement, the first floor and the second.
So there's living space in all those three levels, yes, and that, and that total is distributed amongst those.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, yeah, last question. Does the, does that original chimney stay? Get replaced with a?
On the main house?
Yeah, because that looks like it's on the, on the other side of the line.
Yeah, so. Is there the elevate, front elevation, Andy? Yeah. Right, staying.
Yeah, okay. Great, that's it for me.
Mr. Mead.
Attorney Mead, I'm trying my best to respond to some questions, but given this conversation. Presentation, having a difficult time. It's really frustrating to me.
So I'm sorry. Throw one in next.
I, I just have a couple. You comment on how the material windows, clavering and the like. Be harmonious with the historic value of the structure.
Sure, I'm going to let Matt address the materials.
So, Mr. Mead, we're planning on using matching cedar platform, which is what is there now. Using rock resistant trim. On the addition. They take care of the materials for the addition and then the windows were. Would plan style and. So match the appearance of the different windows.
I would, I would also know you'll see they pick up on the detail of the cornerboard at the back. Corner of the new addition. As well. So they, they repeat that in the back. Not quite as elaborate, but it does have a cornerboard that reflects the, the one in the front.
And I just, one last question, just to. When the structure is going from fifteen twenty-five square feet to twenty-six seventy square feet.
Twenty, twenty-six twenty.
Twenty-six twenty, correct. Is that entire difference from fifteen or the addition from fifteen to twenty-six of that? The square footage of the new. The new addition or?
Total house.
Okay, so could you tell me how many square feet? What's the new?
It's one thousand forty-five.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mead, Mr. Chad.
Yeah, I was just trying to come to grips with the roofing changes. It sounded like in the presentation that the existing roof is nineteen inches below the old house peak. And if you look at this drawing. It's not.
Yeah.
So is that an error?
It is an error, yes, so.
And it's something on two or three of them.
Yeah, right, so we have, and it might have not have made it into the presentation, but we have some stated drawings. And we spoke about that in the historic meeting as well.
Okay.
The rear elevation is the elevation that shows it accurately, exactly, right? So the left and right elevations should be updated. That is an error on there and to be nineteen.
That's correct.
Exactly.
So, so the new roof is actually a shallow pitch and lower than the original.
That's correct, yeah.
And just so you know, we submitted to the board actually yesterday, revised plans to make sure that, that. So we did, we submitted those on one. Open, yeah, yesterday. I couldn't think of what.
No other questions, Mr. Chad. Mr. Mead.
I just want to go back a little bit. Nation, you know, I was looking through the pictures that you went here and then I went on and said, oh, I looked at some pictures and I. I do have some concerns about that.
On the original house?
The original house, so it looks like it hadn't been pointed. If he's, he's maybe a little bit. I'm just wondering, is that part of the overall plan to re-point the existing foundation?
Yes.
Good answer, yes. All right, just to be safe.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Um, just to curiosity, the original addition from the eighteen nineteen hundreds, what was its purpose?
Well, what, what rooms are there? There's a. Yeah, there was a kitchen and a bed. A rough kitchen on the first floor and a small bedroom on the second.
And then the last question that I had, it looked like when you looked at the south rear facing view there. It, it showed the purple and the red. Is the red portion of the original seventeen hundreds house that's going to be taken off?
Are you talking about the demolition?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Let's see that.
Right, so that'll be covered up by the new addition at that point, right?
Exactly.
Right, so that will be, that area will be covered up because that's the new addition at that point.
Okay, right, so will the, is, is part of that the original seventeen hundreds?
That is, in the back, right. I'm not doing anything to the front and side of the structure. But so the, the back, obviously, it's in the demo caps. That will be removed.
It will, okay. No more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. I just have one following question and forgive me if you've already answered it, but when it comes to the material. Choices that had been represented, I understand that it is natural materials. Cedar clavering, is it cementitious or is it actual cedar?
No, cedar, wood cedar clavering, but what, what Matt was saying is that the trim will be kind of all leather kind of trimmed, right? The composite material trim.
Okay, so like an AZAC or a similar, or just a, is it synthetic, just rock resistant?
The, the Borrell, which is, right.
Got it. And the roofing changes, material changes to the roof?
Architectural shingles.
Okay. Pretty good, all right. And no further questions? Any other questions from the board?
Can I ask one more?
Yes.
Just to sort of get. Comfortable with the sort of the valuation of the, of the L. So that we can make our finding. For the DCOD. But. There were no pictures of like what's going on underneath. And that's because what's going on underneath, it's all, it's just, there's some very small space and between the rubble and the stone and the dirt. The underpinnings of the floor.
That's correct, and nobody will crawl under there because they're really worried.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. July. If there aren't any further questions, we'll close that portion of public hearing. Deliberations and keeping in mind, members of the Z B A, we have two matters before us. The deliberations and criteria around a special permit. Under the DCOD and then a special permit for non-conformities. We can deliberate all of them sort of together, though we will take them both separately if we get to that. And we'll begin with Mr. Swanton. It always falls on you. You can walk us through the criteria. Here we go.
Oliver, so. I'm not going to walk you through all night.
If you're.
But, but why you, why you taking, taking? Yeah, I. There's two things that are being proposed here. It's pretty rare that we, somebody asks us to demolish forty percent historic building, although. Big chunk of it's from nineteen ninety-eight. And the Historic Commission thinks it's not a problem. It's in the back, it's recessed. So for those reasons, I don't have a problem with that. As far as the second half of this. Putting this addition on to a building that's not conforming. Once again, the addition is in the back, it's recessed on the sides. It's sizable, but some of it is like in the basement, it goes downhill back, can't really get a sense of the nasty street. It's not like it all, well, they have put. Quite a few processes with similar. Similar additions and we've already heard. From. But is that on this one?
Across the street.
Yeah, across the street and there's a little bit of support from, from neighbors. So, you know, it's a two-pronged test. Are there new non-conformities? No, there are new. No, new non-conformities. And is it more detrimental, significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing? Pre-existing non-conformal use? And no, I don't think it is. It's, it's, if it was a lot of massing, it had to be one thing. But as I said, it's recessed, it's in the back, it goes downhill. I can support both of these proposals.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Swanton. I think that, you know, based upon the evidence that has been presented tonight. And especially with your initial filing letter and the report from Mr. Fix or, yeah, because he's a doctor. But I think that substantial evidence has been shown that the. That the demolition of the forty percent of this historical structure will not be. Will not be. Oh, yeah, well, substantial market value, but it, but it won't be run by. The DCOD segment. You've done enough to show that the special permit for. The DCOD. Has been satisfied here, in my opinion, as well as. I'm going to agree with Mr. Swanton in respect to this.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Anything for? Very good, Mr. Mead.
Just a few comments. I agree with my colleagues. Mr. Fix's testimony is compelling and. I challenge. The decision by the. Destroying or. Anyway. Comparing, changing really the story. These. Remains well within the. Same open space, well within the record. So the A. The size, structure is, is consistent with. The neighborhood. Insistent and. In terms of scale and massing and those reasons. There have been letters before. This is an ambitious project. It's audible that the owners are taking on this challenge, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mead, and Mr. Chad. I agree with my colleagues. I agree with my colleagues. Couldn't have said it any better than all three have stated it. What the application is presented. Mr. Gidda.
I think this is an improvement. Also, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gidda. You know, I have to agree, and I I think that to the credit of the app. You know, like all of us in this room and everyone on the planet, so too our bricks and sticks have a useful lifespan. They live proudly and then they come to an end of that span, and I think it's only for but. The stewardship and restoration and adaptive reuse of historic structures that we get to sort of see through and steward through. Our historic inventories into the next generation. It is imperfect like we all are, but. This is an example where I think it's laudable. It's certainly not inexpensive, I'm sure, and not without lots of problems yet to perhaps be discovered. But I take a lot of credit from our historic commission. Um, as they review this and give us advisor, it's a valuable process to see the D C O D sort of behave and breathe in this way. To uh, methodically give us the pause to look at each and every one of these applications. Carefully, thoughtfully determine whether there is an adaptive reuse, whether there is a uh. Uh, a historic um, pre- preservation path that can be taken, and I think the D C O D, I'm sorry, the uh. Historic Commission gives us great advisory when they say in their review and expertise um. That uh, even in the best case scenario, very little will be salvageable in a recognizable, historically appreciable way. Um, so that's sort of the bet that chimes us in to say, perhaps it's time for a new version of this for the next. Generation, so I I think that in a place like Newburyport, especially, when I see this, I allow you and commend you, it's not inexpensive, it's not easy. Um, you know, it's it's also not perfect, but it is as perfect as we could hope it to be, so I I greatly appreciate this level of detail. Um, because otherwise these buildings go away. So um, I'd rather have some portion of them uh, than no portion of them, so. I absolutely support it. I thank the entire team for the presentation. Um, any further deliberations? All right, um. I will close. The deliberations and we will go to a vote again. We'll uh, we'll do these one at a time. Why don't we take them in sequence? With the special permit under the D C O D. First, we have a motion to approve the special permit under the D C O D. So move. Thank you, Mr. Swanton, and a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dullow. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Swanton and Mr. Dullow. Should we add the sidewalk? Conditions to that? Yeah, that's what it is next. Um, my apologies. No, no, no worries. Um. Motion's been made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Dullow, calling the roll, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Dullow.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Channon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. That motion carries and the application for a special permit of D C O D uh, is approved. Um, next is the special permit for non-conformities. Do we have a motion to approve? So, Mr. Bennet, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Thank you, Mr. Channon. Motion's made by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Channon on the application for a spell with. With two conditions. Very good. Do I read them into the record or? Read them into the record?
The applicant shall replace the existing sidewalk in accordance with specifications provided by the Department of Public Services. Said improvements shall be completed prior to the building permit. In extenuating circumstances, including but not limited to seasonal constraints, an alternative deadline clients. Herewith may be submitted to and approved by the sole discretion of the zoning administration administrator. Number two, should the two existing trees be be removed per the pre-commission, the applicant shall plant two new street trees in accordance with specifications. Provided by the Department of Public Services. Said improvements shall be completed prior to the building permit close like. Closeout in extenuating circumstances, including but not limited to seasonal constraints, an alternative deadline for compliance herewith. May be submitted to and approved by the sole discretion of the zoning administrator.
Hey, you ought to write an apology card to Miss Brett and Joy for having to read all that. She's, she's, she's typing away. Did you, did you get all of that? Fantastic. Just wants to have that stored. I uh, as I listen to it, I know that it's, it's, you know, it it has to be read and written, apologies. But thank you. Uh, okay, motion is made and seconded with those conditions, and thank you, Mr. Channon, uh, for taking the time to do that. Uh, calling the roll on the special permit for non-conformities, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Dullow.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Everyone, yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries on the special permit for non-conformities. Turn me, thank you very much, uh, and to the applicant. And to uh, everyone who participated, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, moving on to our next application this evening, uh, this is the application. Uh, of Fort Franklin Street, Keith Avlo. This is a special permit to allow an investor short-term rental unit use one eleven. Uh, B. Uh, may we hear from the applicant? Dr. Avlo, good evening.
Good evening.
So. My executives is here with me. We have the property at Fort Franklin Street that has been operating as an Airbnb. And uh, we understand it under the rules of engagement. There's a three-year grandfather period, it's possible. Um, when uh, an investor owns an Airbnb, so that's why we're here to seek that permission to continue uh, doing what we've been doing. Um, in a way, we've been doing.
Very good, um. That's fine, uh, and and just to be fair, this is only the second application under our zoning bylaw amendments uh, with respect to short-term rental units, so. We uh, as a board are also sort of feeling our way through as well, so we may.
Sure.
We may unpack some more of this as we get any questions, so I'll, I'll ask your indulgence to uh, maybe we can address additional questions as they come up, because I'm sure the board may have them, but. And to the extent of the presentation, was that essentially, that's essentially it?
Well, that that's basically the presentation. The the dwelling has been inspected as the rule uh. Insists it should be, um, uh, we've complied with the few changes that were requested in terms of the. Structure of the railings and things like that. Um, otherwise, uh, there have been no complaints about the operation of said dwelling.
Okay.
We have all of the relevant uh, bells and whistles that go with such an application like fire extinguishers, the. Um, uh, smoke detectors, um, the exit plan, uh. The noise detector, uh, and parking.
Very good, okay, um, we'll just take a moment and go through the next phase of this and ask you to stay close for questions and such. Thank you.
Sure.
Very good. I will close the presentation portion of our public hearing and we will go to public comment. And again, ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak, just kindly raise your hand. Uh, I'll recognize you, uh, and we'll ask you to. Kindly take your podium, give your name and address, and then we'll do the same online. Uh, anyone wish to speak in connection with this application? Seeing no hands in the room, we'll look for a moment online. Um. Kevin Lucidi, hands online. All right, no hands online. I'll be the last pass through. By once, going twice. Good, um, I will close the public comment. Portions of our public hearing and we will go to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Swan.
Um, yes, um, hello.
Good evening.
I may have missed it, but you mentioned yourself. Did you give your address?
Uh, my, my address, um, yes, is uh, thirty-six Water Street in Newburyport, Mass.
Okay. Um, and this short-term rental unit at Fort Franklin Street. This is, how many bedrooms is this being ran for?
Two bedrooms.
And what is the parking situation? Do you? You have parking or you have, you have lease parking? What do you have at my parking?
We lease two spaces adjacent, adjacent to the dwelling.
Is that that little lot just to the right of the house? Is it standing in front of the house?
Exactly, correct.
Okay, I'm very familiar with the, the neighborhood, I don't live that far away. Um. Now, as far as parking goes, this is actually more a question for the, for the uh. For our account planner, just to be clear here, because as was been said, this is only second time we've been through one of these things.
Take your time.
But with parking. With a two-bedroom unit, do you have to have parking?
Yeah, just to clarify, so this is. This is just an excerpt from the zoning ordinance, the section. Yeah, sorry. So the highlights here are just the excerpt from the zoning ordinance. Uh, the council when adopting the ordinance had taken into account, referred with the grandfather and non-conformity that might exist on lots. We have a lot of the older lots, old lots, parking, you know, et cetera. Uh, here the council was recognizing that a non-conformity that might exist, if there's, say, an absence of parking for the unit. That exists there today, that could continue. And in the case of the new short-term rental unit being essentially added to a property, um, this table here is referencing the investor short-term rental unit category. Um, that just highlighted here that the minimum market required for that principal residential use is the starting point. And again, the council recognized the uh, here would be including recognition of the pre-existing non-conformity percentage. So if there's not any parking today, there would not be an expectation for parking for the residential unit itself. Um, however. To answer your question, for the, the new short-term rental unit above two bedrooms, so here it says plus one additional parking space for the short-term rental unit. Except that the renting of only one or two bedrooms, so not. Initial space, so first two bedrooms, there's not a requirement to add. You trip that? Did you read that?
Okay, so he actually has leased two parking spaces. Why not just? Make sure I understand this. He didn't even need to do that.
Correct.
With, with a two-bedroom unit, you can just park on the street, basically.
Right, as this was just described, there is not a requirement, it's just a two-bedroom unit.
Yeah, that you have those spaces is a plus, but it's not a priority mark, just so.
It's a convenience.
Like I said, this is only the second time through on one of these things. Um. Have, have there been any um? Complaints uh, with the building department, the lease department, the. Company department or? I mean, I'm not sure which of you I'm asking, but is there a record of any complaints of this operation?
No.
Yeah, and I think it's part of, uh, it's part of what's become our, our query and the query. In preparation for each and every one of these S T R U applications, planning office in its. Infinite courtesy and and and, you know, graciousness, they are. Doing the asking for us to uh, ask the police department and vet whether there are any complaints, um, and I've seen in our staff report they're having. Uh, we would know for these only complaints or any planning board or planning office complaints. Uh, and it appears that it hasn't there, which is actually a good pro forma for us. Because, and thank you, but because we would otherwise never know. But I think.
And thank you for clarifying that, because I kind of want that in the, yeah, in the process here in our minutes. And we're, we're, we're refining this process for ourselves and each other, um, sort of as we, you know, things. Things can exist very elegantly in pros, and then we find that they're very unwieldy in practice. So elegance and prose. You know, clunky in practice, our job is to sort of. Create an alchemy between the two, and that's exactly what this is, all out loud for everyone here to see, but I think. In good faith, we are trying to figure out an incredible way by which we can do this work, be balanced, fair, be fully transparent. You know, get through the business of these applications, because they will start coming at us, you know, like, like rapid fire, um, you know, starting very slow, I'm sure. Um, so that, that's great. Thank you guys for doing that, so that we have this progress. All right, um. Uh, no, that's uh, my only questions, I think.
Dullow. Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I think questions regarding parking and I think that any, um. You can put, just put that. You know. Think my questions are. All the insurance issues you have, we raised that. Yeah. Um. Yeah, so you have to meet the two for the residential use. Then you would need something else, another parking space for the S T R U use, unless it's one or two bedrooms, in which case you don't. And in this instance, the parking is set, so there's no issue at all here.
Right.
Uh, okay, and uh, Dr. Avlo, with respect to the insurance that you have for the uh. For the um, S T R U, what type of insurance is that?
Yeah, we have commercial renters insurance. So.
And that's what, and that's what we were getting. Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, just to follow up, what are the limits on that policy?
Um, I actually don't know the limits on policy.
Um. How, how long have you, um?
It's two years.
It'll be two years in the fall in October.
Can you give me a sense of the occupancy rate?
I'm guessing that if you, if you did year-round, we might be seventy, we might be at seventy-eight percent precisely.
How do you market the? Does this seem accurate?
Uh, it's, it's, we have a local agent who posted on, as I understand it, more than one. Site that offers short-term rentals.
Okay, uh.
One of the benefits of that, by the way, is that they're local, and so we have a team. That can respond twenty-four seven to any issues.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you brought that up. Explain that to me. I was going to ask a lot. Calling the police department, how does a neighbor advise you that one of your. Clients. Turning the radio off.
Sure, so if we happen to rent. Spaces from our significant neighbor uh, to the back of our house, we have a parking lot next to us to the back, it's a condo development. They know how to find me or our agents because we rent from them. Um, as to the neighbor to the left facing the house, uh, we're happy to give them those numbers, although I think they may have. And so the resident knows of us, the neighbors know of our. Service, and we're happy to also. Alert the neighbors to the left if that's uh, something that you folks would like us to do.
Thanks, Seth.
So we'll sometimes, for instance, get a call, uh, I'll be alerted in the middle of the night, hey, uh, there's a. A leak, we have that once interior of the ceiling. Um, and we'll get that from the team that the, that the resident, the renter has said, hey, you know, you have a threat. And they'll contact the team that we have, will hear. That's. They keep, particularly if they can't handle it expeditiously themselves.
Thank you, uh. I don't know, it's a general. In general, could you describe the nature of your uh, your tenants and? Give me some sense of that, yeah.
Sure, um. I, it's hard to do that, actually, but uh, I'd say that one of the long, longer tenants has been family members of neighbors. So it's common for family members of neighbors to make use of this dwelling, so they don't have to stay at a. At an alternate location, and then uh, we've had some long, we tend to have longer-term people. We have someone there now for six weeks, uh, so. Uh. We don't really know who they are, other than that they've been very compliant. People are just, to the extent that it might be interesting for the board. People live in some amount of anxiety over being poorly rated as visitors. Right, because then other Airbnb folks may not rent to them, so they tend to want to align.
Do you have written guidelines or rules or regulations that you give the renters?
We do.
Tiffany Bartholme for Independent Street. So we post the rules on the Airbnb site and the other her party sites that our management company um, writes for, and advertises for us. There's a short set of rules there, and then in the property is a free ring binder with the extent of these stuff. We also don't rent under twenty-five, you have to be at least twenty-five and over. Most of our renters are couples. Occasionally, there'll be somebody with a child, but they're usually just adults.
Thank you, um. If, if I wanted, if I type in your address, uh. B and B, will, will I get to your website? How would I get to your website?
No, I think you would go to airbnb.com and then put in like Newburyport. It won't always come up if it's not available, so we had a. Long-term renter for all of May and all of June, so if you tried to go to Airbnb and look for it right now, it won't show up for you. You'd have. Pick dates where it would be available and then it would pop up. That's the case for any.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, that's been very helpful, thanks.
And I'll, I'll also add, second phase of this process for any S T R U applicant coming for us to then go to before licensing. Uh, and the licensing phase will require any applicant already successful here. Uh. Uh, to publish contact information in the event of emergency, where to, how to, who to, you know. So it gets more granular. I think that's how the process is kind of contemplated by our council, so. I believe that there's, you know, belt and suspenders to cocoon these. So I believe that there's, you know, belt and suspenders to cocoon these applications with access. Um, which gives me some comment as well. Um, is there anything further?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chen, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't have a question for the applicant. And just as a point of note, I noticed in one of the other write ups that one of the STRUs had received a cease and desist. How was that initiated, since this has been running for two years? Similar to a lot of them in cities. Did everyone receive a cease and desist within the last two years?
We sent notices to all those folks we have listed that were operating to let them know about the new regulations. In this case, um, where we actually did this in advance, the council adopted the regulations to let us know that we're operating out there. Uh, that they should pay attention, that they should follow, and then, you know, where the regulations are being adopted, pick up and comply with them. You know, if you don't find that they could, uh, get permits. Um, and then once the ordinances were adopted, of course, we did sort of a similar, uh, we should let folks know about those. Um, but at the end of the day, it would still be up to each person or partner that they're operating to to make sure they're compliant with the ordinances, which include in this case, uh, a license for all operators in the city, but a special permit for the industrial side that will be deployed.
So in this instance, is this applicant under the radar, or were we aware that they were running?
Uh, I I don't have a, I have a direct discussion with the administrator on the dialogue. You have to, yeah, don't, I have to check to find out if any.
Okay, it's not relevant one way or the other, it's just, I was wondering how some received these notifications and maybe some didn't.
I I think it's just the pure imperfection of this aspirational process in its very nascent form that was, hey, you can only send letters to those that were known, right? And it isn't, it was by no means, as I saw, uh, and correct me if wrong, but operators didn't know. So they they weren't trying to copy, thinking it was just about whether two, you know, polar sides of a process yet to be brought together, you know, were aware of one another. I think the planning department, um, or the zoning, uh, our zoning commissioner had sent out those letters, those notices to all of the known operators, um, as to the attention. Um, obviously, all again, you know.
Lots of. Guess I was just trying to understand, if you receive a cease and desist, I assume you would stop being an Airbnb?
That's the presumption.
That's the presumption.
Yes, because it's not a permitted use.
It's not a permitted use.
It would have a cease and desist.
Okay, well, within within the parameters of the. Correct, correct. You know, there would have been many folks who were bewildered by the debate and curious as to what it meant and how it meant, and then I suspect there was plenty of that.
Sure, right, yeah, and I would definitely know, and it's just for clarity, especially with that we have a public here tonight to understand. Um, the zoning administrator or the license division itself enforcing that respect for permits, any ordinance, or in the case of license division, the licenses themselves, especially if they find a short term rental operator is trading a nuisance for the neighborhood any time. Um, those are the things where we, it's a fact finding exercise, right, looking for specific, is there a trigger in the ordinance that's been violated? Are there instances of events that have taken place that are problematic and trigger any of those types of nuisance concerns? And those are the things that would be uh reported back to you, especially off hours, for instance, we would rely on, say, the police department to verify if anything happened or, you know, law or something. That helps to have those records uh available, uh, and there are different ways of going about it, but that one, I think, is known for, because we kind of work in the, you know, that time. They have a timeframe and some of these things, obviously, we get. Might apply on this case, as you mentioned, change in other departments, the police department. Uh, a uh, to see if there have been explained to the permit, you should get noise the service to bring that. Um, you know, bear in mind.
Okay, thank you, thank you, no other questions, thank you, uh, Mr. Gitter.
I have no questions other than that have already been asked and answered, so um, thank you, and uh, thank you, Dr. Abloh.
Can I ask one more?
Yes, please.
Uh, do you have any other STRUs in the in Newburyport?
I do. The um. I should probably clarify, but um, I am the representative to a, an irrevocable trust that owns a second Airbnb that will be the subject of some discussion in the future, but we're not here for that at this time.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, whose question is that?
Yeah.
Uh, so we're not here for that. Okay, we'll be back.
My question is just that we have some special conditions that we would attempt to approve all, I want to make sure you're aware of them. One is that you'll maintain a valid short term rental unit license for the city of this. Two is that any online advertisement for the subject short term rental unit shall represent a set RTU consistent with the new reports of New York's the special permit and only licensed edition there.
Sounds good.
And three, that this structure is only used as a one or two bedroom short term rental unit, because we're just not entering parking on site. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Swan. Um. Any further questions? Good, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, we can now go to deliberations. And again, uh, we're deliberating the investor short term rental unit ordinance and application. Uh, and the uh, the criteria that the applicant has to show is uh, is outlined in our zoning bylaws, it's a nine point outline, we don't have to go through each, but I'll invite sort of a narrative discussion uh in deliberations, Mr. Swan.
Yeah, um. Well, in in considering this, uh, I'm not thinking about it from what I do, you know, what are my personal needs, it's what does the ordinance say, and what do we have to consider? I think the ordinance says these things are all uh, investor owned units, loud in a residential district. Uh, and they kind of kept through it, as long as there's not really major problem. There has been no mutation of any major problems with this one experience. Um, and primarily for that reason, uh, I can support this application. Good, thank you, Mr. Swan, Mr. Swan. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think uh, that Mr. Swan has uh, started the conversation off the right way. Uh, for me, I think the parking is an important, an important issue, and it seems like, based on the testimony we've heard here tonight, that the parking issue has been uh, uh, presented in a way that would satisfy the requirements of the ordinance. So from that perspective, um, and the, the other factors raised by Mr. Swan, I think I can also support this particular STRU.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I, there's a long list of nine items here that that we have to find. Um, I would say eight of the nine are quite easily demonstrated. The one that that gives the zoning, uh, gives, that is in my view, uh, has some discretion uh, is that which says that the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. So uh, I take that uh, as giving me some discretion in making that finding. Here, I find that there is no evidence that that criteria uh is not met here. Uh, there are no complaints, uh, the uh, operation has been operated in a fashion which has not been detrimental to the neighborhood, to the neighbors. Uh, so, all that being said. If shown some of that STR U, fair length for this.
Good, thank you, Mr. Bennet, and Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, reviewing the nine on test, I agree with Mr. Bennet, that he just stated number six. I also think number seven is the one that gives us some leeway. The requested use will not die as addition to the neighborhood clause in excess of that particular use. That would be detrimental to the character of the said neighborhood. Uh, we've had these discussions before that STRUs could be detrimental to a neighborhood. Again, I agree with Mr. Bennet, a few neighbors complaining or any reports from the police. I have to say we have no evidence of that. So I could, I could find uh, any affirmative for number seven. Miss, with that said, I can support the application.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chen. Mr. Gitter.
Um, I I support the application. He's above and beyond on parking, he's leasing parking spots, even though he doesn't. Uh, he tells us he has this, he uh, it's an occupancy rate, which is really well. Um, but he also has no complaints. A lot of people that are involved with this. The city making sure people are parking in the right spot. Um, he even mentioned that someone must have been, the city must have told him, you need to do some minor repairs or renovations. Which means he brought the property up to wherever those could be. So um, this seems like a good application.
I I have to agree, and I think that as we toil with this criteria, you know, we're we're sort of asked to analyze hypothetically in real time. You know, is the uh, practice of this use going to be detrimental to the existing neighborhood? And I think there's no better sort of evidence in response to hypothetical like this than the actual practice in use. Like in city, we have actual real time use, because every one of these applications are coming before us because they already exist. We have the very rare benefit of being able to simply look back at the operation and record and collect the data that may exist, and certainly we have the means by which to collect it. Uh, complaints by neighbors, reports to police, other issues of others who may use this opportunity, as is you know, their right to um, to share their experience in the positive or in the negative. You know, we have, we have the opportunity to to dispense with the hypothetical and actually treat it as a hybrid real time analysis. Because we don't have to guess whether this will be more detrimental in this kind of, you know, toy. We can simply look at, so far, it has have been suggested it likely will not, unless something significant changes. I I think that we're at an advantage to be able to look at these with that kind of, uh, with the benefit of that kind of information. So I think, you know, as we work through this, we we have a lot to deal with, but this is very favorable, just that we have a means to know whether there have been police reports, we have a public comment section. And I'm also in support of this because I'm moved by the fact that, uh, despite the others notice, we've heard from Noah Butters, um, you know, and believe me, for all of us that sit up here at this table, you know, it is, it it is an acute and sort of righteous um, part of the process that we hear from neighbors and fellow citizens when things are going well, but they're going not well. So I think that that, you know, speaks volumes, uh, that we don't have any, uh, we don't have any negative comments. So I too support it for those reasons, and I, I, you know, I'm grateful to every one of you because we're sort of working our way through this process. This is now the second one that we're working on, so we'll just keep trying to do this better and better uh as we can. So with that, I also supported, any uh, further deliberations before we close? All right, um, with that, uh, I will close that portion of the uh, hearing. And do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the special permit for Frank Street with the specific condition. Listen in the staff report, but I just read early.
Yeah. Okay, um, very good, thank you, um, I didn't have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, motion's made by Mr. Swan and signed by Mr. Bennet calling the roll, Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Delia.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yeah.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
And I vote yes as five in the affirmative, and the eyes have it, motion carries, uh, and the application for the STRU investor unit is approved. Uh, thank you to the applicant, uh, thank you both for your time. Very good, um. Moving on to our next application, uh, this is the application of MFG Ventures LLC, the applicant address fourteen Norman Avenue. This is a single special permit for non-conformities, the applicant seeks all necessary permits, uh, permits, permissions and and uh, and applications to demolish and rebuild a single family home. May we hear from the applicant?
Of course, good evening, uh, free to Monaco here, our representing MFG Ventures for fourteen Norman Ave. Um, just uh, looking for special permit non-conformities, obviously upward extension as well as frontage. Um, I guess sliding through the presentation, I'm gonna try to make this fast and serious to you all and answer questions, I think that's most important. Um, you can see here the proposed new home, uh, I'll get into a little more detail as we go through what we did, go in front of uh, a historical permission because the home was originally in nineteen forty seven, a kit house on Norman Ave, um, so that house is, does still sit um, on concrete twiddings and steel beams, uh, no foundations, uh, really, uh, these houses are really in rough shape. Uh, more than that, so, um, so as the house sits on the property right now, um, the house itself does meet all uh, required setbacks, there really are no non-conformities, other than the sheer fact that all the lots in that street are eighty feet versus the ninety feet, which is required. Um, our proposed dwelling uh will sit within all of the zoning requirements, uh, we will be, you know, the twenty five foot in the street, ten degree side. Um, the lot is more than um, large enough to handle the expansion of the property. Um, so a- after all said and done, after the property is built, uh, if if you guys do approve, uh, we will be uh, the only one piece that will be so non-conforming, obviously, will be that frontage, which we obviously cannot change. Um, hey, so so as we're kind of sliding through the pictures here, I get an area. Um, so you can see the lot is very large, it backs up to the school right here, uh, residence school, so it's um, it's a little over seventeen thousand square foot, lots of plenty of space there, um, to construct a new single family dwelling. Um, as we kind of, just kind of chipping through the the slides here, um, here's the quick uh dimensional controls, uh, means all dimensional controls uh, as as proposed or required by the city again, other than that uh, required ninety feet uh right now, with it's at the eighty. Um, so you know, our height, one of the things that we were very mindful of in the design of the property, we did go back and forth with historic uh, at length on this property, our first uh proposal uh was not exactly what they were looking for. Uh, so we did redesign the home to really sit within uh the streetscape, um. When they did review the property, which I got it later on, they they did deem it as historical with preservation. Um, they ended up coming back with preservation of the streetscape and trying to preserve the streetscape of the the street, um, not so much as this historic value in the materials or that home itself. It's really not a whole lot you can do with the existing structure. Um, I guess sliding through to the next. Uh, so this is what the existing structure looks like today, um, they're all really crack of jack box uh, homes, uh, most of the ones that are left at this side have some sort of addition built on a se- second story uh, off the back, this one had the um, breezeway there of the sunroom there on on the right hand side. Um, but otherwise, they're all two by four construction, they're, um, definitely don't come close to any of our building codes today and really can't support, uh, in our opinion, you know, a second floor or more of a living. Um, so proposed, you know, just again, just kind of our, our front elevation, um, you'll see that we were sitting about twenty three feet in height, so well under the thirty five foot requirement. Uh, we again tried to keep the the heights down, we tried to go all vertical lines, no large atriums in the front of the house, try to keep with that street state as well. And the elevation just heading down the left side, so the, oh, that's a lot, is a little narrower and quite a bit longer, uh, we tried to build the house more out back. So when you look at the front of the house, it doesn't um, mask anything else really in the neighborhood, it doesn't that's not detrimental to the street state of the field of the neighborhood, you try to build a lot of the house out behind it. And then you get to the red elevation. And then you'll see the, see the rear. And then the next just shows the uh, proposed block plan. And sliding through, we just have a couple, this is the neighbor at sixteen Norman Ave, just showing from a height perspective and additions, obviously. Um, additions have been done to a lot of these homes over the years, um, so we're not gonna, you know, be any, we're lower than this, this home, um, and the next shows seven Norman Ave and third three Murphy, which is right from the corner. Um, obviously, again, our, this property at fourteen will be um, quite lower than both of those as well. And, uh, we, this obviously does trigger the tree and sidewalk, we've already spoken with um, the city regarding this. Uh, we will have to uh bring the sidewalk up to eighty eight clients, uh, we're in there working through, uh, the tree commission, uh, have no problem adhering to any requirements that they they may have, seeing that removed trees are. And again, mentioning that the historic commission, uh, did put a demo of the light originally, but then they um, released the property additional uh demolition based on the proposed plans that we have received tonight. I'm sure this week, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Um, we'll close the presentation portion, we'll ask you, don't go far, we might have. Um, we'll now uh, open this up to public comment. Again, uh, the uh, public comment card that is behind me, I believe, uh, will just ask anyone who wishes to speak to kindly uh, try to keep to the two minute limit, if you could, any hands in the room, anyone who wished to speak in connection with the application. Pro, con, or just because, feel free, see no hands going online. Um, see no hands online. Um, see no hands online either. So one last pass in the room. Being none, uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll close public comments and questions from the board just slow. Um.
One of the things we need to consider is the massing of the house, how big it is. Apparently it's on the. Seventeen hundred and fifty-two square feet of living area. How, how big is the proposed?
It's roughly thirty-nine. Um, vast majority of the square footage. And the expansion we had to get to is because of the roof heights and. The recommendation from, um, historic in regards to. Dormers and keeping. No large eaves and we had to expand the footprint to try to get some more usable space.
Is that on two, Boston, is that a two-story house?
Yep.
Try not counting the basement or?
Not that.
Um. Count question.
Thank you, Mr. Swan.
Um, yeah, but you know what the plan is. So. You've got basically the, the, the new, uh, house. And that's connected to a new garage. They're connected by that narrow.
Yeah.
Connection way, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the heights of. Uh, I only ask that question because when looking at the, um, the side views, it's kind of difficult to get the sense that that. Connection way is only like eighty-five.
Yeah.
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 Uh, so I think that helps with, maybe helps with the massing a little bit. Um, but with regard to the roof heights of the. The, the proposed dwelling versus the proposed garage. How does that work? Cause from, again, from, um, maybe the side view, I think it looks like maybe the. The garage is like slightly taller than the proposed dwelling.
It's not, it's almost like.
Stay here, I see.
Actually sits a little bit lower, about twenty-seven. The main is under twenty-eight B. Sorry. She's one, she's not going to say.
Alright, yeah, I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions.
Mr. Chen. Is there a living space over the garage? That's how you get the thirty-nine hundred. Is the, the main building itself. Thirty-nine by thirty-nine.
Yeah, there's some nonusable space, quite a bit of non, it's defined when you get into the. You do there, but yeah, there's a whole bit of garage.
Okay, so that connector, second story connector connects the main house to the master bedroom.
Yep.
Primary bedroom.
There you go.
Same as from here, alright. Uh, thank you, no other questions. Thank you, uh, Mr. Ginta.
I have no.
No further questions, uh, I have no questions either, uh, thank you. Monaco, uh, so we'll close the questions from the board and deliberations. And again, members of the CBA were deliberating. The criteria for a special permit for non-conformities, uh, so I will, uh, ask you to kindly. Liberate around that criteria, and Mr. Swan can kick things off, of course.
Um, yeah, well, there's, it's a two-prong test. Are there any, are there any new non-conformities? Uh, there are none. And then is it substantially more, um. Detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformities? Um. I'm glad the store commission. You keep that roof down because this is a street of smaller houses. Um, and, you know, one of the things we deal with in looking at massing is kind of a magnetization of some of the streets in Newburyport. And, uh, the fact that you kept that roof down. One to two stories, but then two. To make it almost like dormers, streetscape. In my mind, really helps it why the, uh. All of this picture looked huge until my colleague pointed out that the thing in the middle is very skinny.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, uh, that was helpful to me. So, you know, it's, it couldn't go much bigger. In my mind, when it would kind of tilt over. Into too big a massing for, for this neighborhood, but I think with what we have. Uh, I think it, I could support this as being not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Swallow.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Swan. That's it, I don't have anything for.
Yeah, I, I agree too. Uh, I, I, I too echo, uh, Swan's comments about the street state, but I think, uh, the way this is designed and the height, uh. Supports nicely with the street state, and that's big and ended, uh. Also, the way that's. The point about building the, the design, you know, there's a. A big core part of the garage which could not be from the street. All good, it's a large house, they're not under deep, but, uh, the way it's. Figured here doesn't. Wellings and. Do that kind of. Yeah. Lot of coverage and. On hand.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Uh, yeah, I have to agree with my colleagues. This picture right here. And scared me because it is massive, I mean. Four thousand square foot house. You add garage underneath, you're talking five thousand square foot building. On that street is huge. In comparison. Street, um, it's very tastefully done. Eyes, all this mass fairly well. You know, we've seen from the sides. Um, and, and as my colleague mentioned, I think the roof height. Is, is great. It kept it down, um, where you, you could have almost made this a three-story house. Could have to six, six or seven thousand square feet. Uh, so I think it's tastefully done. I think it does fit. I think the scaling and massing is. Acceptable and I can support the application. Thank you, Mr. Chen. Uh, Mr. Ginta.
I support the application too. I, I like the fact that when you look at the street, it does look like a small house amongst other small houses. I'm glad that he didn't go up and went back. And the fact that there's no neighbors complaining here today means that. Let's have some approval or buy-in from the neighbors, uh, because that is a small, very tight neighborhood and they all know each other. So we feel like we must have that approval, um, because they're not here. So, um, I think those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ginta. I agree with my colleagues. I have nothing further to add. It's all been said. I too can support it, um. So I'll close the deliberations of our public hearing and that brings us to a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve this special permit for non-conformities, fourteen Norman Ave. With the special conditions listed in the staff report, which I probably should read about the sidewalks. The applicant should replace the existing sidewalk according to specifications provided by the permanent. Do you have any circumstance? Deadline. Or compliance here with may be submitted to and. Or you have the sole discretion of the zoning administrator.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Before I entertain a second, Mr. Monaco, you heard those conditions of those. Okay, great. Um, thank you, Mr. Swan, for the motion with conditions. We have a second. I'll send it back. Thank you. And I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, uh, moving to. Our, uh, next application, uh, this is an app. One eleven B, uh, this is the application of Lisa Freeman in thirty-four Lime Street. And may we, uh, hear from the applicant? Oh, and by the way, we have them, one of our members, Mr. Chen will be recusing himself. And in doing so, Mr. Chen will leave the table. Mr. Ginta will step up as our fifth legal, uh, member of the CBA and voting member. Um. And, uh, with that, uh. We, uh, can hear from the applicant.
Good evening, my attorney Andrew Lacoste, I'm representing, uh, the owners of thirty-four Line. Excuse me, Lime Street, uh, Pam Dougherty and Lisa Freeman.
And I'm sorry, counsel, your name again?
Andrew Lacoste. I had an office at State Street. I was at eleven, I've been in town ten years. Uh, currently I have private office space in Newburyport and Lowell. My deal box is five hundred and seven.
No, I, I know your name, I just wanted to make this, this.
Switch things up and in the process to get new space. Very good. Been there ten years, lawyer twenty. For the ordinance. Um, I, I know early in one of the early hearings, there was a question about cease and desist letters. That was sent, it was one cease and desist letter. Sent not two hundred. There were two different letters. There was one letter sent to my client that said cease and desist. And then there was a much more friendly letter. Saying other things that sent everyone else. In the, uh, in the city. I wanted to correct that understanding the board had because that's the, the fact of the matter. It was sent September thirtieth. Twenty twenty-two and two days earlier, my client's got a cease and desist letter. Which they did appeal, uh, ultimately we withdrew the appeal. Because there wasn't an ordinance in place. Um, and there was no, if, if we lost the appeal at one, there was no real mechanism to enforce it. So we withdrew it to not. You know, put the cart before the horse, let the ordinance. My client. Own several properties. She owns two properties in Newburyport and, and. And, uh, she owns a property in New Hampshire. She works out of state. She essentially splits her time between the two properties, uh, she, two properties and being one tour in Newburyport. And one's in New Hampshire. She splits her time. She's, she's a teacher. She's been at the same job for twenty years. Uh, Pam Dougherty was here. She owns a business in town, um, a doggy daycare. I know her personally. Pam is the only client and Lisa is the only client to ever have with my house up in New Hampshire. Um, in, in fact, the matter, they were there yesterday, um, I would, I would say. I trust these people with my dogs. Um, and I would trust it with my child who's thirteen. I would not trust anyone else. My, my, um, my dogs don't go anywhere. So I interviewed other people. And my conclusion was. Is they weren't trustworthy to do that. Sorry, I'm setting, setting with my people online. I'm used to more real estate. Um, and I'm gonna, you know, as far as the Airbnb goes, they, they, they've operated it. Uh, I know the city of Newburyport has figured it out and there's an ordinance. Their application complies with that. Ordinance, um, the, the application, it's a two-bedroom unit. It does not require additional parking. However, uh, in their advertisements. What they do is, is they, they request people, bring one, bring one. They bring more than two, they have alternative parking at Mr. Dougherty's place of business, um, which would just way, way. Um, uh, my client is. Asking for the special permit to be issued. She meets the criteria. This is only the third application. As the chairman indicated, the last was, was the second, uh, two parents ago. Correct the actual order. Um, then, then the fact is, is my clients. The Airbnb activity has not been a source of complaints. There's been some issues with neighbors that I, I think. Um, haven't liked them since they moved in or since they started the Airbnb. Um, there hasn't been a lot of interaction with them. In terms of the Airbnb guest being. There are so many reviews online. Um. A lot of them talk about dogs being, there's no restriction on dogs. There was, I know in office, one of the opposition letters, and I'm not going to address oppositions by, by name, um, it's not an adversary of the scene, so I'm not going to do that. Um, frankly, they have a four point nine-three rating, which means almost everyone likes. It's clean, it's neat. They love the city. This city is the city that's destination for a lot of people. There are no big hotels. There are nowhere for people to stay. Um, there, there are some inns, some, there, you know, some inns, Airbnbs and. I'm glad there's no big commercial. Um, the Airbnbs and the character, you know, the, it, it. Emphasizes the character of the beautiful neighborhood that they're in. Thirty-four Lime Street is, is a wonderful place. Um. Now, she probably should be one way. Conversation for another day. Um. I understand that the permit is discretionary. There are no. Police department complaints that resulted in any policing whatsoever. There's, it was the letter to cease and desist. My clients appealed it, paid a five hundred dollar fee. Even if we won there, we, we weren't, we had no, there was no enforcement mechanism. We decided why, why just put on a show for. Show sake, that makes no sense whatsoever. Um, and in trying to keep some, some peace with the neighbors. Um. The. I did submit seven, with the seven letters in support of my client's. Application. There's a number of people, I think, K F four and against. Their application. She's applied as an owner investor. And she's at the site. More than, I would say, ninety-eight percent of the other Airbnb owners. In Newburyport. She splits her time. There's other reasons for not moving her car registration. And her primary residence there, and they have to do it for pension and taxes and things that aren't relevant here. Some people don't understand. There's some very negative comments. And there we go, you know, uh, my client is some stuff gaming the system. She one hundred percent is not gaming any. She pays her taxes. She's an investor. She, she, she's a teacher. She cares for, for, for schoolchildren. It, it is absurd to. To read some of these negative things about, about them. Uh, eh, about Pam and Lisa, it, it's. It seems like someone or few people just didn't get. To know them. There's a letter from. Leila Wright dated June tenth. I'm not gonna read the letters. You, you, I'm assuming the board is gonna read the letters and go through all the letters for any good stuff. Um, there is a, a letter. From Ron. Deesman. Undated. Um, the resident in Newburyport. Benetta Burton and Kate Thomas. There's a letter from them.
Counsel, babe, the, just the, the package that you had provided, board members, these are the letters that were, there, we have copied them for the record, but these are. Where these, these letters aren't on, uh, opened up yet, but they're now part of the record.
Yes, they're not, they're not. I didn't submit them ahead of time. My apologies for that.
I don't know, quite right. I just appreciate you going through.
Yes, these are the same letters that I gave courtesy copy to all the voting members and, and, and.
Very good.
Official copy. And. There's another letter from Tony and Bill who live on Lime Street and where I pray the president today. And then the last letter in there is a letter from the mayor of Newburyport supporting the application. And. It says what it says. It's very supportive and. The. Advocate is gonna run the Airbnb. Suing. To the ordinance adopted. By the duly elected members. Of the voter select, or the city council. Um, and. They will take any of them, any, just any, any guidance the board wants to give, they provide and they say, bring one. They're not running it. A dog, K F four, anything like that. People bring their dogs. People bring their dogs every week. Whether they're service dogs, that's allowed in restaurants. People bring me go to a restaurant, we go to a Home Depot, you go, everyone has their dogs. This is the most. Dog-friendly city I think I've been in. You walk down. State Street. Everyone puts up bowls of water. Never seen a dirty bowl of water for dogs when it's a nice day. Maybe when it's raining and, you know, it's just rainwater. But it's one of the most dog-friendly cities I've ever been in, and frankly, um. Clean cities, you don't walk around and people are picking up after their dogs and caring for their dogs like they're part of their family. So there's some concerns expressed about that. There's. Complaints, I think that's lodged, it says. Someone's dog is sniffing other dogs. I'm not sure if we saw, there, there are rabbits all around. I think we see them, the, the, given early, you know, spring and summer. Late, late spring and early summer, there's rabbits everywhere. There's animals everywhere. Um, the, the, it, it's a little. A little strange of a, of a complaint. Uh, I know there was submission of a hundred and fifty plus pages, um, from someone today. There's a two-page letter. It includes flaws about animal. The whole matter and a lot about animal stuff. I would suggest that. That is a red herring to distract from what's really happening. There's been no valid complaints that resulted in police department enforcement. Or zoning, not. Um, I had to send in no press pass two years ago. Or a year and a half ago to, to someone's son. Because he's on the porch. In the ring camera yelling. And it, it was inappropriate and, and. He survived. Uh, left, and he has not violated. Has, yeah, the police served it on him without incident and, and that, that. That issue seemed to have resolved itself. At that time, it seemed like. He was intended to harass my client, which is very concerning. Um, you know. There's been, there's some complaints about. Noise, potty still four in the morning. Doesn't happen. It's just untrue. There was some complaint about people smoking in the dry cigars. They might have been smoking cigars in the driveway. It's a non-smoking unit and. If people smoke on the sidewalk, that's. That's something you can't enforce, but my, my. that's something you can't enforce, but my my client's burnt. Um and they love the city. They love being on Lime Street. They want to be part of their street and part of this close-knit community, which they're they're friendly with a lot of people on on the street. It it seems that there was a real, and I haven't watched or studied the whole back and forth about short-term rentals in the city. But there seems to be some people that one hundred percent opposed to any of anywhere at any time. And I that's just not in keeping with what the city just passed a law. And my client's here as owner investor. Um client and 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 shoot just ask the board very carefully, please read all of the letters in support and please read all the letters in opposition and look at everything carefully. And when you look at that carefully, I'm gonna suggest respectfully that the special permit should be issued and it doesn't they're going to be in compliance with his own laws. Um I would suggest respectfully, there's been no negative impact. There were some parking issues complained about and talked about. Uh my clients will provide up site parking if someone comes with more than one car. Um we will not represent to the board that that they're gonna provide all off-street parking for all Airbnb or short-term rental people. Um that would be unrealistic and it's not required by the statute. And and you know, in in the spirit of fully disclosing, they they have the park. They ask people to bring, they've been allowing people and 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 my client can answer this. I I think most of the dogs are small dogs that come and people aren't bringing huge kind of higher impact animals. Um you know, the it's not gonna affect public health or safety concerns in terms of utilities via safety lease. If you, I I sent a request and I haven't done one recently, back in twenty-two, when this first cease and desist that it came up. And I get a response from police, there's no real significant police responses whatsoever to the address. There's one with my name on it because when we when we went, we had the police um served no trespass. Um and then there's a couple of other entries with no written narrative. So there there are no documented police complaints. Um I know some people went to the police station and a police officer. But they don't, there's no follow. Um just the fact that that report in being in existence, I would suggest respectfully, it was not a complaint to the police that was um over density, it's not really going to affect the density. It's four, it's a, you could have four people living there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Right now, I believe it's about forty percent resident based on three hundred and sixty-five days. So the impact is actually less by using it for a short term. Um if you had four people living there with a cat and a dog, the impact on the neighborhood would be much much more. And they're certainly entitled to do long-term rentals um without any permission from the city. Um and the it's been managed properly. It's my client has been described, Ms. Freeman has been described as untrustworthy in one of the complaints. And I I don't even know what to say about that because the people don't know, untrustworthy, meaning that you moved into our neighborhood and we're in MBs and not in our backyard. You didn't consult us, so it's not okay. That's nothing the board should consider and and should 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 file that in a circular cabin. Um with that being said, and I would suggest respectfully that the um application be allowed um as there's no valid legal reason to deny. Um and I know it's the third hearing, so I mean, a lot of people want to speak, so I'll finish with that. Who allow it and it seems, it seems to fit what the city wants.
Thank you, counsel. Um thank you for your presentation. Um if there's nothing further in the presentation, I'll close that portion for the public hearing and we will move to and again, folks wishing to speak, please know you needn't be pro or con, but you're welcome. And we certainly invite you to let us know if you want. Uh but you are welcome to also just simply stand and share your thoughts. We do ask you kindly observe the uh the courtesy in the interest of allowing everyone to speak, so I will give you as courteously as possible a as gently as possible warning to ask you kindly and sum up. So with that, um hands in the audience and uh yes, sir. Mr. Underwood.
My name is John Michael Underwood. I live at twenty-one Back Street and I'm a Butters. And uh according to the attorney, I guess I'm an N B. Always stood for common sense Airbnb. And one of the things I find kind of interesting uh that I think one of the board members brought up is, is it having a negative impact to the neighborhood? And obviously it has by the letters that have been submitted to you all as well as the police report that was in relation to how uh Ms. Freeman and Ms. Dougherty reacted to getting a cease and desist, and we were the ones that filed asking that the city. So um let's talk a little bit about this ordinances. I'm going to read a couple of things that comes directly out of the code of ordinances uh from Newburyport. I'll start with section nine, three, zero, four D, no outstanding violations. And I quote, as a strue, you shall not be subject to any outstanding building sanitary sanitary zoning or fire code, notices of violation, orders of payment, stop workers, orders or any other requirements, laws or regulations that concern a strue. So Ms. Freeman was given a zoning violation enforcement order in uh September twenty twenty-two. She then filed an appeal in October twenty seven, twenty-two, and then withdrew that appeal into them. Because the original order was never rescinded, under the current zoning ordinances, she does have a notice of violation. Such, I don't believe she should be granted a new permit today until that violation is settled. Also, section nine dash three, zero, four E, compliance in relationship with other laws. Operator shall comply with all applicable federal, state, local laws and regulations. I don't know whether she lives here full-time or not. She said something in different sites. I also want her appeal. She said she works, she only lives here for a hundred and eighty days. I will call your attention to chapter thirteen uh for zoning in the editor's notes, and it says specifically, the city has law requires that anyone that operates a vehicle in mass for any reason for thirty days a year registered the vehicle here. She does not register her vehicle here. So again, with section nine dash three or four, operator shall comply with all applicable federal, state and local laws and regulations. She is not doing that. Section nine, three, zero, five, no operator should offer a dwelling unit as an STRU without having filed an application for approval with the licensing board and obtaining the licensing board's final approval. Ms. Freeman has continued to operate at this true since these ordinance went into effect in the fourth. And you can see that with all the reviews that her attorney just also mentioned. And by the way, fifteen since February. And I know I'm going over, so I'll just be very quick. Offering an ineligible unit as a strue, any person who offers a strue, this is section nine, three, oh nine. Any person who offers a strue or any booking agent who accepts fees for booking where such a strue is not listed on the short-term rental registry and is not eligible for such a listing, shall be subject to a fine of up to three hundred dollars. Again, I'm going to go back to section nine, three, zero, four. Ms. Freeman has continued to rent her unit as a strue paid for prior to her being issued a new license today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Um anyone else?
Good evening. Uh Judy Timon, thirty-nine Lime Street. And yes, to answer your question regarding cease and desist letters for uh short-term rentals, this particular one did have the cease and desist letter that you've heard about because of the numerous complaints brought to the zoning enforcement officer resulted in that cease and desist. So I would call your attention also to the uh six letters that you've received that are in the file, that are in mine included in opposition to this uh continued operation of this short-term rental unit, most of the complaints uh having to do with uh very bad behavior on the part of the owners, on the part of guests, and problems with uh parking. Um I wanted to also address the uh letter that you received from uh the mayor. And I I'm concerned that the letter might be seen by some as an attempt to influence the outcome of this proceeding. And I don't think that's fair to you as board. I don't think that's fair to the applicant, and I don't think it's fair to be a Butters. Uh the the mayor is the chief elected official of the city and does appoint and reappoint board members. So I would ask you to basically to disregard that letter and to look at the letters of um opposition. Um and the fact that uh the ordinance does say that the uh an applicant shall not be approved if it is deemed that it is harmful to the neighborhood and to uh Butters. And also, there are some inaccuracies in the mayor's letter. He states that Butters have objected to any STRU in the city, and that is not true. Um the Butters, including myself, have objected to this STRU. And again, it's based on documented behavior of guests, of the owner, and parking issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Um anyone else? Uh yes, Andy.
Can I pass out the hard copies that I brought?
Uh yeah, sure. Whatever.
If I submitted all the documents that I submitted online.
We we have. They're in the record.
Uh I believe so, but this is a better order and easier to read.
Okay, no, that's right. I just want to make sure.
Everything in here is, yes.
Yeah, thank you. This is just a hard copy.
It's just a hard copy. It's easier to remember this way in the filing and following in one line.
My name is Edie Shuffel. I live at twenty-one Back Street, which about thirty-four line. I'm a twenty-four resident, twenty-four-year resident in the neighborhood. I ask that you deny the application for the strue license for Lisa Freeman because per the ordinance, the operator shall comply with all applicable federal, state and local laws and regulations. Ms. Freeman does not need that requirement. The first issue is her primary resident. Lisa Freeman, according to Lisa Freeman, is a Newburyport resident. It says so right on her Airbnb host profile. Even her listing for her New Hampshire rental says that she lives in Newburyport. In the petition she filed and registered with a signature with the ZBA on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, she states, quote, Pam and I live here on the first floor and, quote, when permitting is adopted, Pam and I would qualify, have qualified under the expectations of living on site. In other words, a year and a half ago, she claimed to the ZBA that she qualifies as an owner-operator because she lives on-site at thirty-four line. Now, Lisa Freeman says she's a New Hampshire woman. Her residency status is no longer her private business and the city can no longer take her word. She is forcing this board to scrutinize the validity of her out-of-state residency. If her public statements that she lives in Newburyport are true, then she's falsely claiming out-of-state residency and she does not qualify for the investor license. If her statement that she lives in New Hampshire is true, then why did she previously file false documentation to this board that she lives on-site at thirty-four line? Ms. Freeman is currently in violation of the cease and desist order. I'm not going to go into that because we've already addressed that. I will just point out that there are currently twenty-two guest reviews on Airbnb posted by a guest who stated dog days subsequent to the September twenty-two, twenty-two order. And she had the right to appeal that she was granted a hearing to do so. She chose to withdraw her appeal, avoid public testimony, and instead simply continue to operate with impunity. I ask that this board now consider the petition filed by every single abutting property without exception, eighteen neighbors in all, compile in preparation for that appeal hearing. I also request this board seriously consider why eighteen people will sign their name to a petition to stay the cease and desist against their neighbor. It's because Ms. Freeman has failed to respond to emergencies, failed to take responsibility for complaints leveled against her renters, and has demonstrated a patterned behavior that shows object contempt for the neighborhood. And the attached police report, you will see in just one example, Ms. Freeman's egregious behavior when she and her partner moved by the sole purpose of spewing obscenities at the neighbor's property. I also want to point out that it's brought up often that there are no police reports on this property because in this neighborhood, we don't call the police on each other. That has changed since this became a I also have serious concerns about the legality of bringing dogs as a primary feature of this Airbnb. This is called Dog Days. Dog friendly is the unique selling proposition in all the marketing of her rental. Of the sixty-eight reviews on Airbnb, seventeen specifically talked about bringing dogs to the property, including Kate, who writes, we chose these places based solely on how dog friendly it appeared. And I do want to address Ms. Freeman's lawyers' comment that you can't control dogs from sniffing under a fence at other dogs and squirrels and rabbits. That's not the issue. The issue is that there is a new dog in this small space just about every week. My dog sniffs in her territory, another dog, and it causes her extreme anxiety and stress. I believe it's incumbent upon the city to conduct a legal analysis of this issue with counsel and with consultation of the Newburyport Animal Control Officer before awarding any strue licenses to properties that market themselves primarily on their dog's unique feature. It is also demonstrably false that Ms. Freeman provides off-street parking for her renters. The parking situation can thus be summed up by Ann, a Dog Days renter who posted in August of twenty twenty-two, quote, a parking lot was not included, but we never had a problem finding street parking right across the street from the rental. Also, the parking that is provided, it's two spaces in tandem, bumper to bumper. So one car locked and two cars fit in it. That means that every time a renter has to come and go from that property, from that parking space, they have to coordinate with Ms. Freeman or Ms. Dougherty about um moving their property. Uh finally, the city of Newburyport through this entire process has placed the burdens squarely on the shoulders of neighbors and citizens to police track, report and document any infraction that may include an applicant for being awarded a license. Furthermore, this board on advice of counsel has made clear the types of testimony it will and will not consider. I strive to meet those standards by presenting facts supporting documentation, and I hope you will consider my request to deny. Thank you very much, Freeman.
Thank you, Ms. Shuffel. Um anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh Robert Couse, thirty-six Lime Street. We are immediately adjacent to Ms. Freeman's property at thirty-four. Uh I'm also a member of the planning board. And in that role, I've been a member of the planning board since uh twenty twenty-one. Uh and in that time, as you all know, there's been a lot of discussion uh zoning amendments related to short-term rental units. Uh but wanted to read, and you've heard this from others tonight, but I wanted to read one paragraph that is as consistently than as consistently than part of all of those zoning proposals. And it has to do with the city's goal related to short-term rental use. And you've heard this, but to minimize adverse effects on residential properties and neighborhoods that may arise from residential properties being used as STRUs. So minimize adversity. As as part of some of the public meetings, there were letters submitted by other owners of properties that the short-term rental units. And I I was struck at one point by a letter from a resident who lives on Upper Line Street, eighty-seven Line Street. His name is Mr. Sabristi. And just just to paraphrase his letter briefly, he says, "Prior to becoming an Airbnb host, we reached out to our neighbors and notified them of our intentions. We've also encouraged them to contact us immediately if they had any complaints or concerns pursuant to an Airbnb guest at twelve." And I think what's what's fundamental here is the difference between that statement, that owner, how he operates his property, and what we have all seen related to the operation of thirty-four Line Street. Because there there has been no communication, no outreach. We were we were all told when the property changed hands that the second unit would be used to rent the family. I want to put out there that this would be a short-term rental. So there was, and has been, a significant lack of communication and outreach. For my wife and I, we live fifteen feet from thirty-four lines. The last straw for us is in the context of the cease and desist letters. Ms. Freeman and Ms. Doherty decided to have a loud party, shout obscenities at us, at me personally, threatened to have loud parties every night. And to paraphrase the the mayor's letter about upstanding citizens, that's not behavior that upstanding citizens really demonstrate. That's not that's not how people behave where I come from. So we were shocked when that happened. So you've heard that there are eighteen people who have signed a petition that that have expressed concerns about this operation and to the point about this this already being operating. And then, you know, there's there's evidence there to help the board make a decision. Eighteen people are telling you that based upon our experience over the last three years, definition of an adverse effect on neighborhood. And and I think you really, you know, the the neighborhood has gotten a a lot of bad press because we have pushed back on all of this. I think that's really unfair. I think the the mayor's comments in his letter are really unfair about the neighbors. You need to listen to the neighbors as as well as the property and the situation, and and there are significant concerns here. So I I I hope you listen to all parties. And I kind of hope you can can see your way to to not approve of this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wilkie. I used to live in Newburyport for about six months. Personally, I dressed some people that I was suggesting she had a lot of sleep. It was my husband, myself, and families. Yes, we were drinking. We were in the outside yard, and everybody, somebody had mentioned, "We don't call the cops neighbors." No one came over and said, "Hey, you're being loud. Would you please calm down?" That's what my neighborhood was saying. And as far as the obscenity, yes, it was an obscenity. And I told her, "Don't do that." But this is not a great excuse, but it is an excuse. There was alcohol involved, and they'd already ceased to assist. So she was upset. But honestly, there wasn't a single one of the neighbors that came over that evening. So I just guess I can't say, "How would you expect them to know?" And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Lila Wright, fifty-five reservation terrace. Ask that the mayor's letter be read in for the record.
Well, in fairness, we read that. We have to read all of the letters. We just don't have the time. We have the letters. Do you not? Does everyone not have the?
I don't think everybody has had that.
You're welcome. Do you have a copy? Do you have a copy that you can read?
I don't have one, but I'm happy to read it.
What's that?
I'm happy to read it. Didn't read all of them.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I'm going to read mine as well.
Yeah, I I'm going to say no, only because we have them. Everyone has part of the public record now. And I'm sorry, but in fairness, it's nine-thirty, and there's lots of other folks who want to hear from it. But but before I, I'm not, I'm just one voice here. I'm going to hold my colleagues, and I will do whatever the board feels is appropriate to do under this request.
Yes, the letters are in our work. I need to read any letter that we are well capable of reading those letters.
Andy, would you like to talk about the enforcement letter? Unenforceable?
The zoning administrator. The zoning administrator had given a notice of zoning violation. This goes back to prior to the council having adopted the ordinance, authorizing her specific address for her property. It goes back to the ball-and-play language of the zoning ordinance that essentially says if a user is not listed in the zoning ordinance, it is not allowed to use. And that was essentially the sort of long way to reference there, where short-term renters are not allowed to use. The council has since adopted it. It was a three-year period, probably, that the council had been meaning what sort of regulations to have in place, and then have been implemented lately, late last year. They have adopted new regulations, both in licensing and now we see that.
And effectively, the enforcement letter was unenforceable.
Well, hold on. I I have to intervene in the role of sharing out of courtesy to everyone. We can't. I can't allow the sort of the cross-examination with courtesy and respect. It's public comments section, so we want to hear from every member of the public. So if I can ask everyone to just tailor, you know, your comments around the application that's before us. We do have every letter. If we would be here till midnight or beyond, because we read one. I think it's in balance. We have to read every single one. And I I just don't think we have the time, and we all have the letters, and they're all on the record.
So I can't simply read my letter and?
Please, yeah, absolutely. And I'm happy. And I I mean no disrespect. I just I just have to, you have to kind of run away. We have to run in order to hear.
Understood. I understand. I am writing in support of a special permit application for the permitted use of the short-term rental for Lisa Freeman's thirty-four Line Street property. My perspective on this measure may be different than others. As longtime local realtor and former Newburyport ZBA member, I am a staunch supporter of the personal property rights. The city has spent literally years to come up with an ordinance to address the short-term rental community. It may not be perfect, but I think we can all agree that it is a solid step in the right direction. The application before you is unique. This property is illegal to the family in the R-two district in the South End. However, the resident applicants, and yes, their resident applicants, are considered investors. In any case, they've met all the criteria to qualify for the short-term rental unit, which brings them before you tonight. Lisa and Pam purchased this property in December of twenty-twenty as they recognized it as a diamond in the rough, an old house that needed a little love and attention, a place that they could make their home, both supplement income from the second legal unit, not unlike other owner-occupied multifamily homes, which are becoming less common in our gentified community. They worked some magic on this old house. And just like so many others in the South End, when it was ready, they moved in their belongings and their four-legged family members in hopes of sharing this beautiful, fun, and loving place. Unfortunately, they and so many others were caught up in the city's conundrum as to how to address the short-term housing. At at the time, it was not part of the city's ordinance. In other words, it was unpermitted. It was not specifically designated. This does not qualify it as an illegal use, or an illegal use would would have specifically have been listed as part of the ordinance and not permissible. But let's be clear, for years now, the City of Newburyport itself has profited greatly from the direct revenue they have received as a result of short-term rentals. And as a byproduct of many visitors, our small businesses and restaurants have also benefited. If the STRUs had been an actual illegal use, that would make this, that would make the city complicit in illegal activity as they continue to collect and use the funds derived from this use. If these neighbors, or in this case, I'm going to call them NIMBYs because they certainly are not interested in this being in their backyard, as they seem fit to the criteria, I will use it, had take, if they had taken the time to get to know Pam and Lisa as the kind and compassionate people they truly are, rather than judge them as lawless or somehow harmful to their way of life, I can assure you, they would have benefited from the experience.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anybody know hands in the room will go online? And we see any hands online? No. All right. One more passed in the room. Anyone wish to be heard before we close public comment? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your comments. We will close the public comment. We'll begin with Mr. Swann.
Well, usually during a public hearing, I'm writing down questions I hear from the audience so that I can then post them to you.
There are a lot of questions, but. Well, let me start with one. Where goes the albatlu?
My client has two properties in Newburyport, one in New Hampshire. She's a teacher. Her contract, recommend her wrong, is a hundred and eighty-three days in New Hampshire. She comes back to Massachusetts from England. Eighty percent of the year, she's in both states. She registers, she registers her car. She registers her car.
Simple question. What state do you live in?
She lives in New Hampshire. She can change it at any moment. She she lives there. Her car is registered there.
By the way, I have no problem with that.
And you can ask her directly. I I agree with you.
So the question, I forget. The question is, where where do you live? The answer is New Hampshire. Subject to the coming and going under a teaching contract that has you a hundred and eighty days.
A hundred and eighty-three day contract in the public school.
Okay.
And the application is, as all the as an investor own.
Could I change my address tomorrow and be an owner-occupied unit? Sure. But we took the house in New Hampshire tomorrow and change it as an owner-occupied unit? Sure. Pam is there all the time.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
So we're really kind of an owner-occupied unit, but we're applying for investor unit because I used to New Hampshire.
I get it.
And I'm retiring.
And nowhere does it say in the ordinance, you can't live in New Hampshire. So it's kind of a.
Well, it's kind of been an issue with my neighbors for some reason. I I mean, walk around our neighborhood, many people have New Hampshire plates, Michigan plates, duckers plates.
I hear you. We have to deal with what's in the ordinance.
Right.
The ordinance doesn't say you have to live in Newburyport or Massachusetts or even the United States. So it's it's, I just wanted to make it clear because I'm going down the question ladder that as to where you live. You live in New Hampshire. I noticed in your online listing, you allow dogs, but I'm not going to ask about it because the ordinance does not say anything about allowing dogs. So I mean, a lot of the questions that came up, I'm not sure what to do. As far as the parking goes, you have, how many spaces do you have on-site? One, two, or none? No, really?
We have two on-site.
Two on-site. Okay. And according to the, and you're only looking for a one- or two-bedroom rental, so do two?
Two beds.
For two, up to two bedrooms, so the parking spaces on-site is fine. So that's. One of the things that strikes me is that some people, some of your neighbors say they don't don't know how to get in touch with you, or heard someone else say, "Why don't they come talk to us?" You know, the very first person we had come in here a couple of weeks ago for a short-term rental unit, we wound up saying, "Wouldn't it be nice if you kind of just gave your number to the neighbors so they knew who to call?" Got a little sign there if you'd rather. But is is that something you'd be willing to do, kind of let people know that they can call you? Or who to call, basically?
My my client had some concerns, which I completely agree with. I think a bracket could be worked out with with an alternative number because there's been some very aggressive behavior.
Oh, I I understand, but as a way to try to have the neighborhood know who to call, we found a couple of weeks ago on the first one of these applications that that was a positive thing. I don't know.
Blackett's not good. A point of contact. If you use a management company, it could be changed to that.
Yes.
I believe they decided with management company.
Somewhere to go, basically.
And currently, there's a long-term rental. The person's been there since October, so there hasn't been any current Airbnb short-term rents activity. What was the terms of the long-term?
She's leaving in June.
And she's been there since October. Or hasn't, this activity hasn't persisted through the through the through the last months. Anyway, sorry.
You know, when we first got into reviewing these things, we didn't know because they just passed this, or this is a brand-new thing. The city councils decided this is okay for the next three years to have investor STRUs. So we got, we went and asked for legal opinion on well, what should we be asking when we approve these things or not approve these things? And we heard that it's important to look at a record of problems. And, you know, we often have neighbors come in and talk to us. And many times, we'll pick up from the neighborhood issues, but in this case, we were advised just looking at a history of problems, to look at police reports, zoning zoning board reports, building inspector reports, and we have dug into those things. The only I can find is that letter that you mentioned earlier, that back in two thousand twenty-two, some folks, some neighbors went down to the police station, and the policeman wrote it up. But as you pointed out, nobody, the police didn't follow up with anything. So I guess, are you aware of any complaints that were ever followed up by the police or by by the building inspector, by the zoning enforcement, or anybody?
From the date we withdrew the appeal, when Collins paid five hundred dollars for it, we didn't go through with the appeal, not because we didn't want to have that day, because we wanted it. We almost sought an alternative venue, but we decided against that because we were waiting for the city to pass this. And the city, you know, went through the process, the public deliberation, and it's here. The fact is, is my client has not received any communication since September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two from the building inspector, the fire department, the police department. There's been nothing.
I think that's, you know, it's a learning process for us. So that's something that that's a question.
My client said it's inspected house for the Airbnb. So correct it. They did that. Now, explain.
We just had our instruction for the process that we had to do some construction.
Okay, so they were there for that, and I.
Which it should all be said.
All right. This is new ground for us. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. It was thoughtful. We appreciate it. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Dela. Thank you, Mr. Dela.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. So just sort of putting in on this, uh, the zoning enforcement action and the appeal of that action that was withdrawn. So you had the zoning appeal, the zoning enforcement action. You appealed it, you withdrew the appeal, and then you continue to use the property as an Airbnb?
There was nothing to appeal. There were nothing. We were the only ones sent the season, so there's nobody else to see the scene.
Well, okay, but in there was a whole, in the letter from Jennifer Blanchett.
Yeah.
Uh, there were a number of grounds as to why that was sent, right? So I'm just trying to understand, if you don't, if you have, if you don't appeal it, it's still there, so. I'm just trying to understand what what was going on. It 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 seems like there's, there's an awful lot of history here that is being, uh, downloaded to us. And we're, we're trying to fit it into the ordinance, which talks about you know, the the points that Mr. Chagden went through earlier with respect to the prior hearing. Which was, which are. Yeah, the harmony. The requested use will not impair the integrity character of or character of the district or the adjoining district nor be detrimental to welfare. The requested use will not buy its addition to the neighborhood in excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. The proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. So we have to kind of work our way through these things as we get to a resolution here. So I'm just trying to understand how the zoning enforcement letter was dealt with and if it wasn't dealt with, how you continue to operate in the way that you did. I'm trying to work through that.
Well, there was no legal mechanism for whether we won, when we were successful on our appeal or lost, either way it went. There was nothing that could, there was no enforcement mechanism because we couldn't comply with the ordinance that hadn't been passed yet. And there, and it was very. Well, I think that. I think blatant unequal treatment.
Okay, well.
One led it to one person, one led it to the other two hundred people. I don't know why that is. I have some, I have some suspicions of why. I'm not gonna press them.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so, uh, that's, that's it for me. Your questions for the time being. Well, move on to Mr. Bennet.
I I just want to make sure I understand what you're seeking from us. Are you seeking applicants a permit for two bedrooms or three bedrooms? Two bedrooms. So I'm on your website. It's described as a three-bedroom apartment. So is. Well, you didn't take it off, that's like looking at it right now.
What what platforms?
All pet-friendly, three-bedroom apartment in this area. Uh, is it Airbnb or VRBO? It's all pet-friendly accommodations.
It's an era, we.
Yeah, maybe it's driven, it seems like property has two bedrooms in each unit. So it's never been three.
Listen, when you came through with your, uh, your team to inspect us, they disqualified a single bed in one of the bedrooms. So we took it up and we removed it. So now it is a two-bedroom. So if that's not fixed on that site, yes, I'll look at that when I get our school. Right now, I did not, obviously, I removed it.
And my client, that went through the inspection process, obviously wants to, she wants to be.
And I understand, I just don't understand what you're seeking.
Is it the two bedrooms? One, the one, the one to two bedroom range, not, not any more than um, in my client, on the inspection, it clearly implied what 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 the inspection is designed to do to make sure it fit the ordinance, and she's gonna operate it as a, the ordinance. If then that that can be directed easily, but a lot of.
Hopefully you will agree to clarify this. Friendly website that it's not a three-bedroom.
Yes.
The, the reason I raise is because the staff uh, report that we received here indicated that you were seeking three bedrooms, which just money will not, that there are two bedrooms. So, um. Just that your lawyer reported question, you're absolutely right, uh, there were any number of, uh, STRUs that were operating before this step, it wasn't active, this ordinance isn't active. It seems that you're the only STRU that received the notice of violation. Is that correct?
It seems that way.
You have no reason to tell me why you, among all of the other SDR, STRUs that were operating before, received this?
The complaints are directed at my client. Ms. Dart and Ms. Freeman, not necessarily the use as an Airbnb.
I understand.
And and I have some within one month of the heat over and doing the Airbnb. Mr. Cooper approached, or no, straight, he was walking with wife. My client said, good morning. Didn't appear to hear her. She said it a little louder. Maybe she, maybe you didn't hear me. Come racing across the street. Who's in your house? And she said, I don't lose your house. It's no one's business, it's not my client's business. Who's in her neighbor's house? It is not. And he approached it an aggressive man like that. And that didn't just start okay.
That's really not my question.
Yeah.
Can I respond to this? Would you please let me ask?
Yeah, sure. Could I respond to that?
No.
Gentlemen, hold on, please, if you please. Um, I want us to just carefully tread with courtesy toward each other. I want to hear from, we want to hear from everyone. I will say, counsel, please, with respect to commentary and response. Refrain from any ad hominem references to any other individuals. I think the matter, to your point, I think correctly, is about, uh, the use. Right, and, uh, I think. That's a point we'll take, but, uh, in in fairness, sir, we, I want to try to, and with respect, I want to try to just redirect this line of questioning to Mr. Bennet. Um, and, uh, we may have additional questions, so I, I I I I apologize, but I, uh,
I understand.
I I ask your indulgence. We're just gonna try to move, move forward, but I, I hear your loud and clear, I don't want that to continue, so please.
I just, just, I don't want to beat this.
And I'll answer your question directly. Ask me another question, I'll answer.
Thank you. So it is your legal opinion that there was no need to defend against this issue on, uh, notice of violation because.
When we won a lawsuit, couldn't go anywhere.
Is that, is that your? You didn't need.
Yes.
Okay. You have a, uh, agent oversee the the renting of this.
So, yes, we had a company when we first opened the Airbnb in June of twenty twenty-one. They went through the first half of the year and then involved whole next year. Then we took it. He is in Pandora. So prior to that, we paid a management company. And that is when, of course, the encounter with neighbors happened during that time, they could manage. And just for the record, that is the only encounter with the neighbors we've had. There's been no other. Hello, how are you? Welcome to the.
Yeah, at this time, is there emergency contact out there in the follow-up with that?
Emergency contact?
Yeah. The alarm, the license performance.
Yeah, of course.
You don't have one now?
We don't have one now.
Do you? I I've asked.
Oh. Yes, on the, uh, on all of the platforms that we are listed on, our, both of our telephone numbers are there. If one of our customers needs something and they can't reach us, they call Airbnb and Airbnb reaches us, but all of that
Does your partner live in this?
My fiancee, Pandora, lives in, uses the Newburyport since nineteen.
She's.
And as I stated on there, a hundred and eighty degrees of problem.
Yeah.
So we are on site. Unkindness are immediate neighbors. Several, many nice names.
Thank you for your answer. Hey, you're. How many parking spaces do you have? Two.
Also, in the backyard, we do not allow access.
So embarrassing that typically, because your fiancee park. She have a, she have a vehicle. She parks.
And if there's complaints of the noise in the backyard, it is, it is myself, my partner and our friends.
I'm just focusing on the park now. So, so your fiancee.
Yes, she does.
Do your, do you have two or one car? Additional?
We only allow one car.
You only allow?
Because we need one up to the neighbors, so we allow them to park at our company, the beach dot daycare, or we tell them when there's the park.
Why do you think that eighteen of your neighbors? Jack, your, this, this is troublesome to me.
That's why we have a lawyer.
I don't know.
Me too.
Well, why don't you, I'd like to hear from you, not from your lawyer.
Yes, uh, as, um, as our lawyer was trying to explain to you, my only encounter with the neighbor, Mr. Coop, was when he came over aggressively with his finger in my face and said, I don't know who's at your house. And not, you've been there one month, maybe. Happy to be there. We had the company running the Airbnb. Uh, I proceeded to say, if you felt uncomfortable, you, you, I'm a taxpayer, two homes down the, the South End. Police, but they would, they would probably have laughed at you because these young men that were here for a wedding because their parents live in town were out smoking cigars on the sidewalk because we don't allow smoking. Not against a lot of smoked cigars at one AM, they weren't allowed, they would just have. They're thirty, they don't go to bed like the rest of us at nine. And Pam and I are in bed most nights at nine, so we didn't go to bed at nine when we were thirty, so we can't go upstairs and say, hey, everybody upstairs, you gotta be asleep by ten. So since that happened, then we heard from somebody that Mr. Coop got the neighbors to sign petitions. That petition that is on file is from that time. It's not from yesterday or last week. We, that's I'm gonna say again. Trying to focus on the fact that a lot of people online share. We love these. It is our immediate neighbors who have developed this dislike for us, is what I suspect. So who knows what, we're fun, we're having fun, but it's never past eight o'clock.
I just wanted to get kind of your perspective on this.
Yeah. It's personal, it has nothing to do with our.
Um, so tell me a little bit about your occupancy rate there. Uh, we asked the last applicant what the occupancy rate was.
Oh.
How many, what percentage of the time are are your rooms booked?
Uh, less than fifty, I'm ordering now.
And question, can you characterize, or can you tend to describe in general fashion, who's taking rooms in your, uh, master area?
Well.
Are they young, old?
Well, since we took over after the first year and a half, we are very selective. Uh, we no longer accept your children's wedding parties at our house because it's the neighbors, because they are thirty and they don't look bad. And they are laughing and we're hearing them, but they're not because they're in the house, so they're not using our yard, using our sidewalk and. Um, so we're very selective. Families are coming here to see their parents. Sometimes girls weekends, but then we kind of have to make them feel uncomfortable and say, well, you have to be really quiet if you're gonna stay at our house. But in reality, they don't need to be quiet. Lost time of thought, they can come home, they can laugh, they can sit down down. And come in the house laughing, and stay up a minute and be lost.
In general, how long is this, how long is this?
About two to three days.
Uh, this is just a simple point. I take it that you have, uh, liability insurance? I'm trying to get into learn a little bit about this. Your marketing is primarily Airbnb, is that how this works?
We use Airbnb. And, uh, I just want to say, I guess, I mean, legally, we can't discriminate, you know, seventeen, no, that's.
If I understand.
So it is a little bit.
I understand. Understand your obligations and that.
But we certainly screen them out. Before we accept.
They've changed their. Nothing about breaking a little bit just to the complex, and I think, yeah, I think my clients. Sorry.
Do you have a set of written rules and regulations that govern your tenant?
Yes.
Are they, are they made available?
They're, they're on, they're on the, um, website.
Are they available at the?
And they, they will be.
I think that's all I have.
Mr. Bennet?
Wow, there's a lot to unpack here. Um, I have a million notes, so um, it it sounds it's if you're, you're looking for two-bedroom, four-person people, which is what you're likely like to add, but still, you need to do an inspection. Um, recently, it appears you have enough parking. It doesn't appear that having animals in your, in your homes against law. From what I can tell, you, you've told us that you have rules that are on the website in in the, in the suite itself, you will. Um, you've told us the sites that you advertise on. Um, though, was the pet site a traditional site? I'm not familiar with all of this.
He was just giving the name.
It was just the name of.
Management company called.
Oh, yes.
Because we're probably early on the bringing, you know, allowing dogs.
Yeah.
Now everybody is, but.
Yes.
Wanted to be.
Okay, and then you had said you're gonna make sure that whatever listing that you had matched what you get. You have commercial insurance. You're forty, you have about a forty percent occupancy, which is quite rare. You said under fifty.
Yeah.
Um, what is your rating?
Yeah. There are, we have sixty-eight reviews from when we took it over.
Yeah.
The prior to that, the company gets the reviews, it's in their name.
Yeah.
So you don't carry that tier. So we only have higher reviews when there are sixty-eight of them.
All right. And then you live in New Hampshire for work reasons, but. And then you live in New Hampshire for work reasons, but Pam lives full time, not in New Hampshire. Always in.
Always.
Some point of contact in the building at all?
Week vacation.
So no.
Yes. Yeah.
I guess if there was a problem. Presumably be the first signs.
And if we're on vacation, we have someone who stays.
So there'll be somebody in the suite? So I'm a little confused on why you're here for the rest of the owner of the apartment. Yeah, I guess that really is my biggest sort of unknown question will.
May I answer?
Yeah.
I think she she's combined this. In her contract in New Hampshire and because she frankly doesn't need to pay it. But she lives upstate technically.
Well, who's the owner of this home?
And that's probably the reason we did it. Hamlet's a very successful business. So you were. If I could do that.
I understand. Um, do we have any lease reports other than the one that's been mentioned here?
The the one that has been mentioned and it is the line and part of the package mentioned earlier during Father Smith. I have that into there, but by now the journey measure is was not even the very, anybody's bought any other estate records.
What was the date of the, what's the date of that?
Twenty twenty two, I think it was like. Yeah, we'll say I have the twenty two.
That's the only, that's the one.
The public, okay, I believe that report. With the complaint, claims went to the police department. It wasn't, we need police come over here now. We need the police. We have an emergency. Um, they went and made a complaint like any citizen should do if they feel they.
But it doesn't, it doesn't appear like the complaint was about the occupants here.
Yeah, it to your point, I guess, was the day, I think the report is November the sixth, twenty twenty two. Um, the officers reporting a couple different things right after they wanted to push some noise and play, but to your point, it was specifically to SGRU. It does mention. Um, it says, you know, the visual understood that the issues surrounding the Airbnb and the art. All of the planning department is ready for the handle. There's a mention of that in there, but it wasn't um, clear if everything was within circle of the SGRU versus. As it mentioned here, I know it's just the residents that, you know, live there versus the the occupants that are staying there. But that would sort of.
Yeah, I didn't read that. So um. So let's talk about this unresolved zoning action, just so from my understanding. The zoning action was to cease and desist order that only went to one. One um, short term rental.
Oh, sorry, you mean up the old, the ones that run the city move?
Yeah, so there was one, one presented in the city, but it they just ignored it.
Sorry, just to be clear, I think. So I believe that there were actually two that were given notices around that time. Um, we are specifically complaining and coming in. Yeah, again, we have sent a general notice to everybody about, you know, before the council is adopting something to say, you really should be paying attention to make sure you do comply today with the ordinance. And then when we have the ordinance adopted, don't ask them to say, you know, one of these ordinances, you need to be compliant with them and, you know, things and so forth. Um, and to the the question raised about why this one versus very others, um, typically there's only a course of process. The complaint being received, something named verified as being, you know, like it's a person's name or perfect. And the. Um, as opposed to saying there's a whole listing out there or staff out there. So here it's initiated with some complaint that I've perceived and then that was taken there to, is there something that's. Should that's slightly memorized.
Basically, the rest of the. Action is tonight.
It was essentially staying pending your, you know, the council. We were to treat short term rent here and then you're deciding with the big occasion. Uh, there's obviously a discussion there that have, you know, backwards. Uh, should there not have been any ordinance here adopted. What would be the implementation effect of the old ordinance? And it's language about not having users listed and so forth, but here effectively, this is a matter where you're under the ordinance. You're applying, you know, permission to that ordinance and deciding about this short term.
So. I think I've got it all down. I mean, that again, the other troubling item is that we we do have a neighborhood happy. Um, with what's going on in the neighborhood, you know, we're going right down the rules here and. I'm not hearing a lot of complaints about the people actually making use of the Airbnb, so. Um, that that's the second state is. Listen, I have, I have no.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask question three to Mr. Thorpe of the year? What was the other address that perceived a cease and desist law?
In fact, I'm sorry, I do not recall it off my head, but I can check. It's kind of my hair.
I think it was on Beck Street.
That's how sex.
Into sex with Lyme. Which would be right across from thirty six. Lyme Street.
And twenty one.
Literally. Possibly blasted from there.
All right.
Good, good.
Uh, I agree with Mr. Ginta, there's a lot to unpack. And so, you know, as as we go through this, this is sort of for the benefit of. Um, respectfully, US Advocants, um, and also every one of the members of the audience and all of those that might not be here. Um, and we as fellow shoulder to shoulder residents of the community who happen. To be unfortunate enough to be sitting on this side of these tables, but nonetheless, as we sort of talk through this, we are. Uh, behold to the criteria that the council has set up in this ordinance. Uh, and it is, as is the work of this board, like other boards, like. Uh, planning and perhaps other land use boards and other, and the licensing commission, we are. We are far more rigorously beholden to the structure and structure of the ordinance. So we are almost. Duty bound to be a bit robotic in our analysis, though we are not robots, right? So we're human beings. We try to understand the context, the big picture. And listening is a big part of that. As I listen, I I wrote a lot of notes as well. Many of my questions. Had already been asked and answered. Uh, I'm gonna ask a few others, but I. I kind of set it against the context that even though this is our fourth implication, it's SGRUs, that we are merely. On the initial step in a two step process for an investor owned STRU. There are lots of criteria that fall under the the purview of the licensing commission. Uh, should any applicant be successful, they then go to the licensing commission. Where more of a granular analysis on compliance, access, accessibility. Um, notice, how do folks get in touch with? And also they are sort of the enforcement arm and have the police power as a word in enforcing compliance with. Uh, any operator that's granted a license. Assuming they're first granted a special permit from us. And departures and grievances and breaches of that structure. Is within the purview of the licensing commission to say, uh, you know, you shall not pass any further. They can enforce, they can revoke, um, and they can choose not to renew. Uh, though this is also a very limited timeline, three years from us. But before licensing, it's every year. Is that correct? Correct. So um. I say this out loud so that we all hear it out loud and I say it for the benefit of us as well as me and you and the collective, all of us. This is a two step process, whatever happens here before this board. It's not the end of this analysis, but merely the beginning, if if you're successful. So as I go through some of these questions, they're gonna bleed a bit into what is ultimately gonna be. The purview of the licensing commission in in a subsequent hearing, should there be one. Um, but I'm gonna ask them anyway, because I wanna try to understand context. You had said that there were. That you had. You had sixty some odd reviews, um, and I believe. It looked like we have a printout. I think it just might be, I don't know why, but it might be, it looks like an Airbnb. Platform review, it has one thirteen, but it rates you at four point nine five with one hundred thirteen reviews. Um, I know that's platform specific, but. Are these the reviews from your ownership as well? Or are they some inherited from prior operations?
We don't, we don't inherit it. Once the other person's managing your property, they're they're receiving your reviews.
Okay, that's a, you know, that's a good.
Sean, we're talking. Airbnb did a great job.
Um, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I do, I found there are sixty eight reviews with a four point nine three review. It's Airbnb and I only have one booking.
That's probably actually for.
It was just printed the other day.
Great. Is there else to state? So um. Yeah. Yeah. As you operate the Airbnb, you are only asking for, you're applying for two bedrooms, correct?
Correct.
So that means that your preexisting nonconforming use permits you to grandfather the parking that you currently have with no requirement for additional parking. Um, you have parking on site, but it's not part of your ST area, right? Um, it's just private parking. For your fiancee and you, and it's relegated to the back of the property. So is the rest of the parking, would that just be on the street parking?
We allow one car on street.
Okay, is that part of the listing?
Yes, we write it in the listing.
Okay, um, and you, do you, um, do you have, I think I heard you say that you have a set of house rules.
Yes.
And you publish those on the platforms that you ran through and you also provide a copy on site. Um, if, and you had mentioned, and I looked at this as well, so I think this is correct. Is, is Pam also a co-host with you on these platforms? So her number is also listed as well. So if someone has a question, a guest has a question, they can simply go to the platform and they can message you on the platform. Or they can choose to go off platform and text you directly, control you directly.
We usually try to keep that in mind.
Of course, but they could, they they can see your number if needed to, in an emergency, let's say they just wanted to. Belt and suspenders, you know, hit the platform and also text a host directly. They could eat, they could do that. That's um, that's gonna be one of the requirements before the licensing commission, among other things, is accessibility, and that's a public accessibility, uh, you know, piece as well. And that's part of the spirit of this work. So my my question is, uh, have you ever? Have you ever been contacted by any guests directly via your cell phone or is it all been on the fly? Like any, any con, any questions, concerns, how do I operate this?
I think it's a little bit of all. I think. Think they'll eat, they'll message us and then sometimes they call or text us.
Yeah, does your co-host usually, are they sort of first responder?
She's the first responder. I.
Cause she's.
Public school, I'm, well, no, she just has a little bit more availability than I do.
Okay.
And we also don't take instant bookings, which means no one can just book without us screening them first.
That was one of my questions. Do you require a um, a um. Positive review of guests where they can.
No, Pamela does. Pamela does.
So she does the vetting and screening?
Yes.
But if you don't instant book, everyone has to first make an appointment?
Yes, of course. And then we ask all the questions. How many dogs? How many people?
Right. Um. How many bedrooms? I know that, but you're applying for two, but are there three bedrooms?
We had had a single bed in a bedroom that didn't qualify especially from your. Company that came in. Inspection.
Our company?
Well, you have like a firefighter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Inspection.
I forgive me, I didn't mean to sound. I I was curious, I'm like, do we have company?
Yes.
Back operation.
Obviously, we have a new new group. It's in the company. No, I I I forgive me, that is, as I hear it myself saying, it is a two, so I'm sorry, sorry. But um, so the building department did come in, they inspected, they gave you comments, you.
They came back yesterday. They, I think, I don't know if he signed off, but he'll sign off in the morning.
Were there any, were there any curative recommendations that they made?
Yeah.
Expect to.
Yeah, we had to do some big, big jobs.
Like?
Uh, put in a big window for the big firefighter to get in and out.
Okay.
It's an escape room.
Um, and anything else?
Uh, we had to do the maps for the um, the escape room.
Got it.
Um. Take the bed out, the single bed. A lot of kids like to stay there, you know, but they'll sit on the couch.
You have fire suppression equipment on site.
Always. Uh, noise monitoring.
And all that's mapped in the in the house.
Yeah, we also have cameras, vision, audio and.
You have cameras, you must disclose that.
Yeah, they're outside of our home everywhere, but yeah, we have.
And noise monitors too?
So.
Did you mention noise? You said you had.
That's inside that property.
Also, it's going to be a very granular subject for any licensing commission review and. And I suspect they're gonna be looking very carefully at all of the STRUs to the extent we permit. Um, investor STRUs, they will then create a rigor for compliance on annual basis. Which I, it sounds like you're already aware of.
And.
And you had mentioned you have insurance with a commercial renter rider in place. Okay, I I ask these questions because they sound robotic, because as I started, I mentioned how. The rigor of what we have to, you know, go through in this review is limited in scope, um, but enumerated in in subject matter. So for better or worse, this board has very limited purview and authority to review uh, the criteria at this stage. Knowing so well, the licensing commission is going to get into the deep grass, uh, or the tall grass, the deep weeds on. Issues like access, compliance, um, violations, redress of violations and such, so um. I guess from my standpoint, I just went, I've gone through the questions I had on each of our nine criteria points, uh, just so that I was clear. If my colleagues have asked any other questions I originally had, is there any, I don't have anything else. And forgive the meandering, I'm just trying to sift through, I mean, I've got lots of notes, but I'm trying not to repeat what's already been asked. Is there any other question?
I follow a question. I think that is, I'll put it out there and then they can answer, and then I think I might need an answer from Andy.
The part. What we've done this with. The STRUs in the past, they've been a single unit, right? And we've been, we've analyzed the parking, the preexisting nonconforming parking. In that context, but here we have two units, right? We've got a residential unit and an STRU. And we've got. Two parking spaces. Right. You've two places. Two, forget. So how, how do we know how to analyze those with respect to the STRU? Like, how are those apportioned?
Well, with the preexisting nonconforming parking, is one, is the one parking space go to one unit or? Or did two go to one unit?
Well, effectively, you were looking at what is the the trigger of any, you're, I guess what I'm looking at is you're looking at only the additional trigger for like the STRU.
Well, we have been, no, no, don't we have to look at both? Doesn't it, doesn't it say the ordinance says that you have to meet the requirement for the residential use? Plus, you need one more for the STRU, except if it's a one or two unit STRU.
Correct. However, don't forget, there's that strong emphasis parentheses was put in the government order that indicates that with the exception of any preexisting nonconformous parking.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm getting at. How do we, how do we analyze that with respect to this? Situation where we have.
If you're adding two bedrooms, there's not a trigger for a additional parking space for the.
No, no, you're not hearing, you're missing what I'm saying. How do we analyze the apportionment of the existing spaces that between the the. Two spaces that exist as nonconforming, uh, preexisting spaces, right? Because if you were making it two unit. New. You would need to have four parking spaces in total, correct? So is there some apportionment between? The units or the existing spaces, or they just amorphous, float between and anyone can say, I use it for here or there. How do we, how do we analyze how those those spaces apply to the STRU versus the residential? Unit.
I, I, I don't know that you're able to attribute necessarily in every instance of what is the.
I, I, I don't know that you're able to attribute necessarily in every instance of what is the parking being tied to. Here, there's a blog line is, you are only evaluating whether or not there is above-two-bedroom being proposed, and if so, discussing whether or not an additional parking space needs to be added to that property or with that. When you go to the property. This one right here is a two-bedroom. So if this one is here, but you said explicitly that there is no parking requirement for any STRU here, meaning you're not necessarily looking at the pre-existing parking conditions of the property.
They don't do any parking for.
Wait, no, the ordinance says that you need to meet the, the, the R2 plus one if you have, uh, the STRU use, but you don't have to have a plus one if it's one or two units. If you had a three-unit, you would need to have the extra parking. Correct. Right, just, yeah, if you bring the, if you bring your, um, yeah, it's your parking language, I think that's a bit worth it. It is confusing, and we have this confusion in the last hearing.
The part that I did. Like it's worth including recognition of any pre-existing non-conformity or same. So essentially, you are not, as a board, looking at, the way this ordinance is structured, as provided structure, you're not necessarily given the, the ability to look at the pre-existing non-conformity underlying the other uses that are listed, the only by reference to use whatsoever. You're only looking at whether the proposed STRU here is beyond two bedrooms, where it's tripping the threshold, or it needs additional.
Well, what about the line of thought? That's what I'm, that's what I'm having trouble with. The minimum parking required for principal residential use.
Yeah.
Right? Plus one additional space for the STRU use, okay? That's, that would be under these. And then if you say, except that, the renting of one shall not acquire, require the additional space, you still need two, right? For the residential use. Because that's what's required.
That's, that's the default in the reselling, like irrespective of.
Yeah.
You are only looking at the STRU, so any pre, any underlying uses or use there. You don't have to essentially wrestle with those, you're not making the invasion or assigning those.
So we don't have to, we don't have to reach that now.
Yes, and you don't have to. Correct, and, and, while you may as well feel that's what you'd like to do or think is appropriate in context, the ordinance here has explicitly codified that, um, you are not looking backward in time to the other uses that are there, or, you know, the residential uses, you're only looking at this single.
So in this, in this context.
Yeah.
You have the two units, we haven't, we haven't addressed this before in practice here, you have the two units, and they have a number of parking spaces, so there's no allocation of one space to one unit.
He might say it's sufficient in marketing today, because we've got two, or you might have four, right to your point, right? But you don't, you're not necessarily positioned to evaluate that and take into account, mainly because the council's already codified that you're not looking at that unless it trips the threshold above two bedrooms, where you're.
So there's no parking, so no additional parking.
Under any.
Right, right, two, two main things before you're looking at parking, yes, are, um, the non-conformity, you know, any non-conformity, you're not evaluating looking at that, that's just.
Yeah, I understood that last time.
And then the, uh, is it above two bedrooms? If it's, if it's one or two bedrooms, you're yet not looking at parking.
There is no parking.
Yeah. All right, uh, I, I realize from neighborhood contextual perspective, might be, you know, look at that situation here, there's been a free determination by the council that there are certain brands that are reasonable here. Or, and then narrow that, so what parking provision the?
Yeah. Guess if that's the way that it's being. Being construed, then.
That's how we began construing our first application. In practice, it's what we.
Well, yes, no, I understand that, but here we're in a little bit of different, because scenario, because we have two units.
Yeah.
So that's what I just wanted to drill down.
And essentially the non-conformity applies to any uses or any residential use of the property, right?
Yeah, okay, okay. So you guys dodged any further questions on that issue?
Glad we didn't ask questions to midnight.
All right, um, any, was there any further questions, Mr. Swanton, anything further, question wants? Steven, any further?
Uh, no.
Um, any, um, any other questions for those? All right, um, thank you.
If my client want.
Sure, I'd also like the board to keep in mind that there's probably a hundred Airbnbs in this town of Newburyport. You've only got three applications, thus being the. Last time I was on a meeting, there's only two homes in Newburyport that is a two-family where the person such as Pam and I are onsite with the Airbnb onsite. The other ninety-eight homes changed their address to primary residency to rent theirs. So no reason to say, so just keep in mind, we are onsite, and we are one of only two in the city that are onsite.
Which is why my client, the application, has invested.
She lives in New Hampshire, she, she'd drive me as straightforward with the boy as possible, and the clients with the ordinance are a hundred percent.
Appreciate that, um, that comment.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, if there isn't anything further in questions, I'm going to close the question portion and move into deliberations. And again, I remind the, uh, the CGA, uh, we are deliberating the special permit criteria, uh, that we have before us since. Where? So it's the ninth criteria, a, an investor STRU. And, uh, they have the special permit criteria. Mr. Swanton, when you kick us off, um, and we'll go through that deliberation.
Yeah, um, well. I actually live in the South Adams, so I have some sense of the neighborhood. Um, the, uh, and I'm not commenting upon whether I like STRUs, that's, city councils don't have STRUs, so they have some criteria for us. They're only for the next three years, because these are investor-owned STRUs, only been for three years. The first thing is, is it allowed use? Yes, they made it an allowed use. Um, then parking, yes, we finished, went through that. Yes, this is an acceptable parking situation, and there's a criteria around, is it going to affect the city's water or sewer? I think that will be fine. Um, I don't see a big issue there. It's, uh, here the integrity of the neighborhood. Well, that one depends who you ask. Some of the neighbors seem to think it impairs the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, I did pick up on a comment that we don't go to the police with everything. I get that, that's the neighborhood I would prefer. Unfortunately, the way the statute works is we have to take formal complaints of actual things, and they're really fighting, uh, and, uh, police records, uh, please actually doing anything to stop a um, something that's impaired the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, I also, I know they've been somewhat reluctant, I can understand why, but I think it's important if you do make a way for for people, if they have an issue to contact you, I think that would also help diffuse things. Not everything, but it. Um, not trying to disregard the comments I heard from some of your butters, who were, some were in favor, but many were against, and so we have to go with what the statute says, and we just, we can't just take input from a butter, since we often do other things, but not on this, this one, we, we have to take formal complaints that have been made in the city, which start in. Um, my colleague indicated that in future years, if there are complaints, the licensing board may not renew the license. But that's not for us, that's down the road. What we have to deal with is the ordinance in front of us. Um, and I wish it were smoother and everything, um, but, uh, and we would, we didn't go over the, the, some of the conditions we put on, but you may have heard them in the last hearing about how it has to be two bedrooms, and you have to maintain license, and you have to, your advertisements has to reflect that, that stuff. So it's, those would be part of it. Uh, and with all those in there, and with, with an agreement that there's some way neighbors can contact someone who can contact you somehow if there's an issue, uh, I could. Not a. Because I think it fits the criteria that we have been given.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, I agree with Mr. Swanton. I don't think that we have a whole lot of discretion here, because you have come through with an application that, that fits the criteria that we are looking at. Uh, I do think that there is probably some, uh, you know, some healing in your neighborhood that needs to be done, you know, maybe host party, get to know everyone, hang out a little bit. Uh, try to, try to hit the reset button, because the, the reality is that, while we don't have the discretion here, these complaints, if the situation continues likely, uh, resurface at the licensing board level, as Chair Champetti was sort of alluding to earlier. Um, so that would be a shame, uh, but I think as Mr. Swanton stated, we don't have a lot of discretion here in what presented the, the criteria likely. So I would also reluctantly support this.
Thank you, Mr. Bennigan.
Yeah. It's highly unusual that we are presented with eighteen neighbors.
Yeah.
Uh, and that certainly captures my attention. As I listen to the testimony. Neighbors. Yeah. While, what, hit the nail on the head here, um, striking much of this personal that related to the. I think we do have some distress, I mean, we're bound by the language, uh, in the ordinance, but that language is, is rather raw. Uh, so again, focus on the use, the requested use impairing the integrity or character of the neighborhood. So it's the use, not the bubbles and the smoking of cigars. Party, it's the use, and that's the R U itself, uh, which in my view. So, uh, the testimony, um, was not very strong in that, I cannot hear any testimony major issues regarding parking, major complaints regarding the guests, uh, occasional complaint regarding the dog, yes. Uh, however, I, I struggle with those, what I would characterize as isolated, non-chronic complaints, uh, to deny what seems to be at least the council, or the council, but determined to be a, um, element in housing. I know in passing that the occupancy rates here, but I'm kind of surprised that it's beyond, I don't know, not strong for the RUs, but I hear the rates at seventy percent and fifty percent. That certainly suggests to me that there is a need for some of this type of arrangement in our community. So, um, I balance that in, in the scale as well here, so. All that being said, I believe that you're going to be different met here, but I wanted to comment on this legal issue, um, about this notice of violation, I, uh, the way I read that, it's a notice of violation that has never been enforced. So I don't put much stock in that. And I you need it. Hold, I suspect every STRU should have received the same. She hit the reason wasn't. The R U. That'd be, it'd be useful. Uh, all that being said, I support the application, and I encourage that. The applicant, neighbor. Nice. Then it will be horrible then. I'm sorry. Dug into one another, but it should be, yeah, definitely. Overcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bennigan. Uh, Mr. Ginta.
Well, it's, it's, you know, it's a tough thing to see such turmoil in a neighborhood. Understand your feelings. We've heard everybody here, it's not often that I've got two full pages of notes, there's just a, a lot of different things going on here, but at the end of the day, the city council passed the law. Um, it, it has its criteria, the applicant meets the criteria, as you all witnessed, I went through it all, and they, they need the law, and, uh, they, they, they should, should be approved in application. This is the first step, um, in their process. Just hope the neighborhood can come together on this, but when it comes to what the city council passed, they most certainly need that.
Thank you, Mr. Ginta. I, um, I, you know, I do have to say, and I, I say this with great respect and empathy to all those that came out this evening from the neighborhood, um, I try to empathize and stand in your shoes, I couldn't possibly begin to, um, I know that that's a long road, and those are just words. But I say this just as a human being in the world, because we all are, as we sit up here and try to, you know, sort through the mire of this new ordinance, uh, and do so with fairness and equal protection and credibility, um, we are, I think, intellectually duty-bound to recognize the fact that the eight, sorry, the nine criteria that we have um, is a rigor and, and, you know, sort of an academic criteria that we have to run through like a lens in a prison every single application, and we take each application and refine it. We are not given the privilege or the province to look backwards in time, other than to gather objective, um, evidence of a departure from the criteria, such as police reports, um, something that is, uh, that is objective and tangible, and though there is, and I say this respectfully, because there are people in this room who I know personally and have a great deal of respect for, and so it pains me to have to disagree with those whom I know personally and have a great deal of respect for. But if I'm being intellectually generous, I have to align myself with the rule of law, and this notion of equal protection is that I, I, while I respectfully disagree with the mechanism by which one individual in the city operating an STRU among hundreds received a cease and desist letter for some reason, I find that to be a departure with my sense of, um, balance and equal protection, and however that happened, um, I recognize that it was born of a, um, of a, an existing and laying at that time violation of an ordinance that didn't yet exist. Operating Airbnb short-term rental unit was a commercial use operating outside of the purview of something at that time. That has since been changed by our council, which to me seems to nullify the underlying tenant that gave rise to a cease and desist, whether it went to one person or every person, and in this case, it went to, what, two people, uh, this applicant being one of them. I'm forced intellectually to have to step that aside, as, though I respect and understand how it came into being, I, I, I can recognize it, but I can't give it great weight, because it is back in time. As we said before, the city, and we try to run through this ordinance, I have to look at, and I think we all have to look at this as being not a crescendo and a culmination, though, as though we're a trial, this, we're the closing arguments of the jury's verdicts, but rather a commencement. It's the beginning of something, and for us, and for this process, it's the first of two steps, and I say to all of my fellow neighbors and residents, um, who I say with respect and courtesy, who come out this evening to share your, um, experiences with us. As this process evolves, if this application, or any application aren't being successful here, there is another step, and it's licensing, and at that step, though we only have the power to grant relief for three years, and then it expires, it is, um, it is forever gone from our windows, but it exists for three years, though before licensing, there is a criteria by which every operator must abide, which is far more granular, with greater purview and greater discretion than we could ever have under the zoning ordinance, to follow rules and regulations and have police powers and recourse in the event of a breach. So I ask all of us to pay attention to that, and I say this to, um, the applicant's respect as well, as any. all of us to pay attention to that. And I say this to um the applicant's respect as well, as any that the next step will be where the rubber meets the road and the steps that follow part of that commencement. This is a brand new ordinance and it's a brand new beginning and, and your you know, your great indulgence in, in watching us like the wheels of the, you know, uh, freight train to move very slowly as we sort through this. Forgive us because it, it is brand new for us. For me, I think that this applicant meets the criteria. If I'm being intellectually generous with myself and my colleagues and each and every one of you and this applicant, I can't not find as I would find word any other applicant, that the applicant meets the criteria. Um, and that doesn't mean that this applicant gets to operate, um, unless and until uh, you know, with, with full blessing of the, uh, the city's, um, zoning, unless and until they receive a license from the licensing commission, which would be next. So, um, I, I have to support it. Though I say this with that context, um, to all those that have shared very, you know, heartfelt and personal experiences. Um, what we're here to do is, is to try to give fair balance and equal protection as we deal with each of these applicants. So for me, I, I feel compelled to just have to say that. And with that, I, I also um can support the application. So, um, any further deliberations before we close that? No. Um, with that, I'm going to close the, um, deliberation portion of public hearing and, um, I will invite a motion to approve. Any condition?
And I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the special permit for thirty four Long Street with certain conditions listed as follows. Structure going to use as a one or two veterans short term rental unit because it's existing non the applicant can maintain a valid short term rental unit license per the city ordinance. Any online advertising for the subject short term rental unit shall represent consistent with the reports and requirements of the special permit and any licenses that form. And I would add to perform some mechanism. You know, address so the neighbor does have an issue. So those, those are the four conditions. Good. Uh, motion is made by Mr. Swanton with four conditions. We have second, Mr. Ginta.
Motion is made and seconded, calling the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton, yes. Let me see the line.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
Mr. Ginta?
Yeah.
My vote, yes. Uh, that's five of the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries. The special permit is approved. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, who attended this evening, thank you for your indulgence and patience. Uh, I know it's very late, but it means everything that you take the time and participate. Thank you. All right, moving, uh, actually, we have one last application this evening, uh, which is twenty six Beacon Avenue. We have counsel here for twenty six Beacon Avenue.
Yes.
Ah, Mr. Shane. Kelsey, do you mind if we take a quick moment? Uh, we're going to take a quick, um, recess for, you know, uh, we'll, we'll call it a hot pot.
Not at all.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. We can go on, but just
Now, please, you see. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. I could do surprising. Yeah. You can't wait to watch it. It's not there. See, I'm not so you are. Yeah. Absolutely. Let's say, yeah. My husband was sleeping. Thank you. Yeah. Boy, I'm very excited. So, yeah. Frankly, it's rough.
Meeting, um, we have committed an application to uh raise and reconstruct a home on the property uh at twenty six Beacon Avenue, however, in um, you know, in working with one of the neighbors, uh, you'll recall, we had agreed to flip the house whereby we were going to put the garage on the side facing the neighbors that we were working with, the Comos. Um, however, at the last meeting, we weren't able to get all of the drawings uh, the elevations and the site plan to reflect the um, the revision. And that was really the project we wanted to present because we felt it was beneficial that we had worked with the neighbors and agreed to that flip. However, um, towards the end of the meeting, um, we got into a lot of discussion with the neighbors about the concerns as to whether or not the um, the project as proposed was in keeping with the neighborhood and whether it would have been detrimental to the neighborhood. And I know a number of the board members um suggested that they had concerns that perhaps the house was too big uh, and that it would have detrimental impacts on the neighbor. So we continued. Uh, we updated our application and I'll run through the presentation very quickly in a moment if we have time. Um, and we did actually, the plans now reflect the flipping of the house so that the garage would face towards the Comos. And uh, both the site plan and the elevations have now been updated to reflect that. However, uh, based on our discussion, in finalizing the elevations, um, my clients did make some modifications to the home. Um, I think one of the other problems we had at the last meeting are not problems. An error on my part is that um, with this proposed change, I think there was some confusion with the sum of the numbers. For instance, uh, we were asked what was the existing si- home of the existing home? And it was represented that it was eleven hundred feet. And that we were proposing to build, I think, um, Gene, in answering a question, suggested that the proposed house was going to be five thousand square feet. Um, and that was true, however, that was five thousand square feet gross sucks. Whereas most of the other comparisons and discussions we had about the um, uh, neighboring homes and things was always based on net. So I think in updating our application, we are now reflective of the true and actual numbers and proposal. And so I just want to update you on the fact that the new plans that we want to talk about. Um, the existing home is in fact thirteen hundred and forty, has thirteen hundred and forty-six square feet of net living area because it turns out that the entire attic of that home is finished. So that was five hundred and seventy-nine feet. So the existing home finished living space is thirteen forty-six. The proposed home, we have reduced in size to thirty-seven fifty-six. That is what we are now proposing. Total new home would be thirty-seven fifty-six based on an existing home of thirteen forty-six. Um, what we did too, to help in reducing the massing and scaling of the home was to reduce the pitch, uh, roof pitch from a twelve-twelve to an eleven-twelve. We actually ended up bringing the ridge of the home, the house peak, down a foot and a half. So we did make some efforts to reduce the size, the height, and essentially the massing and scaling of the house. So those are the numbers that we're on now talking about. Also, um, since we last met, um, I um, I took Mr. Delisle's question regarding the last time I had reviewed the Jordan case and uh, the related uh, Bransford case, uh, because it seemed that that case stood for the the fact that um, uh, somebody wanted to increase the size of the house on a non-conforming lot six-fold. Um, and it was indicated that the, the, the court, SJC, had actually um, determined that that was too much and therefore that was asked of me. Aren't we in effect, you know, going four or five-fold and therefore wouldn't that case say that it's too much? Well, that, that case, the Jordan case, uh, really was about a determination that um, just because you build a home on an undersized lot that meets all the dimensional requirements, that it's still determined by the courts that that does in fact result in an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. And so you do need a finding. Okay, the court, the SJC actually didn't even address the uh, lower courts at the original zoning board determination that in that case a six-fold increase was too much. And the court, you know, in, in not even going to that question, essentially said that the um, the underlying ZBA and then the, the underlying lower courts, you know, they made that determination based on the facts and figures associated with that neighborhood, the impacts and whatnot. And they weren't going to touch it. But what they upheld was the fact that um, if you are building a home, if you are increasing the size of a home on an undersized lot, you are by the very nature of what you're doing, increasing the non-conforming nature of the structure. And therefore a finding is needed of no significant detrimental impact. So I, I just want to make it clear that I don't believe that case was saying five times is automatic, five or six times is automatically not acceptable. It rather was defining the process and leaving that decision requiring that that decision be made uh, by this board. Now, and I guess based on our new numbers, our thirteen forty-six and our thirty-seven uh, six, uh, thirty-seven fifty-six home proposal, we're, we're at about two and a half. So we're far now out of this realm of a four or a five or six-fold increase in the size. We're at about two two and a half times. Um, so with that, I, I am going to very quickly skim through this this uh, presentation just so that it's on the record with the revised numbers and things. And, and then I'd like to just spend whatever time I have left discussing the um, the determination as to whether or not this house is going to be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood and more specifically talk about what does define the neighborhood and what are the detrimental impacts being claimed uh, within that neighborhood. So if I could, Kayla, I, I'll jump through it really quickly. Um, introductions we've done before. Um, again, we want to raise the house, build a new house. We need a finding from you uh, that it's not going to be significantly more detrimental. Um, uh, the existing lot, as you know, is pre-existing non-conforming at eighty-five hundred ninety-one square feet. We need ten thousand. Otherwise, we wouldn't even be here. Um, the lot is also pre-existing non-conforming as a lot frontage. Uh, we're four feet short of the required frontage. So again, because of those non-conformities, we need a finding from you, um, that it's not going to be detrimental. The existing home is pre-existing non-conforming as to some setbacks, but we're eliminating. So the new home, as I've said numerous times, will meet all dimensional requirements, lot coverage, height. It conforms to everything. Uh, next slide please. Um, the zoning impacts, we're eliminating the non-conformities. Uh, the new home will meet all dimensions. And we're not making any proposed changes to the pre-existing non-conforming lot. Uh, next slide please. There's the house on uh, on Beacon. Uh, next slide. This is um, the existing home. And I guess the next couple of pages, if you want to, that's a elevation of the existing home. Rear elevation and, and left side of the existing home. And there's a picture of it. So that's the home we want to take down. And then the next two pictures show our neighbors to the left, which are the Comos. And the next picture shows our neighbors to the right, Mr. Berlin at twenty-four Beacon. Um, the newly proposed uh, home, here we now have the site plan showing the garage being on the left side of the home adjacent to the Comos and the larger proportion of the home being adjacent to the Berlin property, um, giving it that home is, is comparable. Uh, next slide, uh, these are now the revised renderings of the home. You can see the garage is on the left and although it's probably really hard to not to see in this picture, that roof ridge is actually a foot and a half lower than it was. The roof pitch is slightly flatter. Uh, and we also uh, reduced the overall size of the house down to thirty-seven fifty-six. Uh, the next slide please is the rear rendering. The next two should be the sides. Go. And so I'm going to see the other side. Then um, again, the location picture, and I'm going to show you just a couple of photos that you've seen. Uh, what we had done is just started taking some pictures around the facility that's across the street, two and a half stories. Um, it's that same house. Then uh, the, this is the view down Oak Street. Uh, these are, as you can see, all two and a half story homes. Um, and then this is directly across Beacon from us. Uh, we have a two-story home directly across and then that two and a half, uh, slightly over to the left. Slide please. I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, so again, this new home eliminates the pre-existing non-conforming setbacks while not creating any new non-conformities. The home will be more functional and sustainable. Uh, and it's not going to be, in our opinion, not detrimental to the neighborhood, to the existing structure. The new home meets all dimensional regulations, including setbacks, height, lot coverage, which is beneficial to a neighborhood. The new home size, scale and massing is generally in keeping with the neighborhood and we'll discuss what that means in just a moment. Uh, and therefore will not be detrimental. It's not outside the realm of the character um, many of the homes you see in the area. Um, it's going to be aesthetically more pleasing to most people than the existing home and will result in uh, more value, also increasing property uh, taxes to the city. But it also have a positive impact on abutting properties' values. Um, as values of properties go up in a neighborhood, that increase in value carries over to the existing homes. And then the next slide. Yeah, okay, great. So, that said, I just want to put on record our essentially our ask with the revised plans. Uh, we are no longer, we are not creating a four or five times bigger home. It's actually only two and a half times bigger. Our, our home was bigger than we had originally said. Thirteen forty-six. And again, we've reduced the size of this home to bring it down to uh, thirty-seven hundred fifty-six square feet. Um, I think of the biggest issue that we were left with at the last hearing, um, in addition to getting all the plans and all the presentation updated, uh, was the question of whether or not this house is in conformance with the character of the neighborhood and what specific, if any detrimental impacts, uh, it will have to the neighborhood. Um, so in, in addressing those, first of all, there's been a lot of questions. And as you may know, um, I did present, I did uh, submit to the board uh, Thursday of uh, last week, a comparison documentation that talked a lot about the surrounding homes in the neighborhood and in the neighborhood in general so that we could give the board an understanding that, you know, this house isn't so outside of the scope of, of the neighborhood that it would be detrimental. Um, but one of the big questions is, is, and again, the neighbors, I uh, as early, as late as four-thirty today have submitted a number of documentations and analyses of, of surrounding homes and have, have taken the time to to poke holes in the analysis that we've presented, um, sort of in argument that uh, that home does not fit in the neighborhood and it's not consistent with the neighborhood and it would be detrimental. Um, I, I myself had some time to review some of those, but when they come in at four-thirty, it's, it's tough to be able to prepare, address them. So what I'm going to do is just address the information that we had proposed, um, or provided uh, last Thursday. Hope the board had some time to review it and certainly hope the neighbors had time to review it. And in fact, I know they did because they then submitted our counter, uh, counter analysis to that. So, um, if, uh, can, can we go to that, um, the neighborhood comparison document? Yeah, yeah. So when we talk about neighborhood and, you know, does this house fit into the neighborhood? Will this house have detrimental impacts on the neighborhood? Um, I have yet to see a situation or a case where that meant the three or four houses that directly abut. Rather, it, 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 it goes out to a scope that is consistent with what we consider the neighborhood. And um, for our analysis, we took a, we took a circle, circumference, you know, within a, a quarter mile. And there are a couple of outliers a little farther away than that. Uh, but the neighbors claim that that isn't the neighborhood, that the neighborhood is really just that intersection of Vogue and Beacon. Um, yet in some of their documents, they speak about the south end neighborhood. And, and I'm in agreement with them. I think if we want to look at what the character is of this neighborhood, we need to go beyond the four or five houses surrounding this house. We need to go out into numerous other streets within the south end of Newbury Court. That is the neighborhood. That is what, um, you know, we, we all need to look at. So um, my client actually did a lot of this research to just compare what we're doing with some of the uh, homes in the neighborhood that we feel are reflective of what we want to do. Um, I have not provided you information on the various ranches or one and a half story homes. Um, because my job is to show that we are in general conformance with the neighborhood and that there are at least a number of other homes that are like ours that, that, you know, are comparative. So I'm going to run through this quickly as well, um, but it's just to give the board our viewpoint of what the neighborhood is and what other homes in the neighborhood uh, and how they compare to us. So, um, if we could just slip to the next slide. Uh, we, we, uh, next slide too, please. All right, there's the Oak Street neighborhood picture I showed. All right, let's start with twenty-four Beacon, which is our neighbor to the direct right of us and probably one of the most vocal, if not the most vocal opponent to this project. Uh, and he has suggested that our house is too big and it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. Yet when we took a close look at his lot, um, you know, there's an old saying that people who live in glass houses shouldn't throw rocks. Um, their lot is actually undersized. Point two zero. So they, like us, have a, a lot of uh, comparable size. Uh, it's very close to ours. And yet you'll see that the, the, the town, uh, the city has information that their house is clearly two and a half stories. Um, it is listed in the city as having thirty-two hundred and fifty-six square feet on an undersized lot. And, you know, we also looked back at some of the recent, uh, building permits that were pulled and it seems that the living area in the half-story that's finished uh, is underestimated at five oh eight. It's actually six hundred and sixty-eight square feet of finished living space. So the actual net living space, which is what we're now comparing of that house right next door is thirty-five hundred, excuse me, thirty-four hundred sixteen square feet. And I will remind you, uh, our house is at approximately thirty-seven hundred square feet. We're talking about a difference of about three hundred square feet. Um, height, they're the same. Uh, size, they're the same. They're on an undersized lot. Um, they happen to put their air conditioning units facing uh, the house that my clients bought. So for them to charge my clients with not having any consideration for the neighborhood and building something that's consistent with the neighborhood, um, I, 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 I just question the validity of that argument when in fact their home um, is very comparable to what my clients are proposing. And I would suspect at the time that house was, was uh, proposed, they needed a, a finding from this board. And they obviously received it and uh, the folks that lived in Red Army will all remember that house. We didn't go back.
We're gonna just let, I'm gonna let the first team. We're, we're gonna get to comments and then I'll, I'll hear.
The bottom, the bottom line is that house was reviewed and approved and allowed to be built on the same sized lot that we have. It is very comparable to our home. And in fact, there were additions to the home as, as, as early as uh, or as late as October of two thousand fourteen, where a good-sized dormer was put on over the garage and that area was fixed. So into what I understand is an office and closet. So, you know, that one could even be big. But it clearly is comparable to the massing and scaling that we're suggesting. If I could go to the next, jump through the next couple of slides, they're all with perspective. There's a, there is a picture of uh, our neighbor uh, with their two and a half story home and with the garage that they finished and added additional living space on an undersized lot. Um, the next uh, the next house that we have is twenty Oak Street. And I'm just going to point out some quick numbers here. Uh, this is also a I'm sorry, you know, did I, we go down to the next one? After the twenty-four Beacon app, the next one should be twenty-oh. There we go, thank you. Just going to point out in the bottom, now bottom of these charts is the actual living, so actual living area. So that's, this should be compared to our thirty-seven hundred. Now here's a house also on a, um, an undersized lot in the neighborhood, two and a half stories. The, 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 the top story is finished. You can see in the picture that it's got windows and skylights. Uh, and that house is just under three thousand square feet. So it's not all that different. Uh, significantly different from what we have. Uh, and um, another thing that's been brought to question is we, in this thing, we added a, a line that says distance from the proposed property from our property to these. What we did is we used um, MapQuest to just say, okay, I want to go from this house to this house. How far is it? And these are the numbers MapQuest gave us. It's on the next page, uh, next slide. But again, the neighbors have questioned these numbers. They're, they're not correct. They're wrong. Well, they're right according to MapQuest when you ask them, what is the distance between these properties? I just wanted to give you a relative distance to show they're in the neighborhood. It's three hundred feet away. That's in the neighborhood. Um, the next slide is nineteen Oak. Again, undersized lot, three thousand square feet of living space. Although I su- suspect that is a two-story home. Won't suggest otherwise. It's two hundred and twenty. Next slide is two, shows that it's only two hundred and twenty-six from our home. Uh, fifteen Oak Street. And this was um, a home owned by a gentleman who was very vocally opposed to what uh, what we're proposing. He has suggested that, um, you know, the house is too big. It's going to block his sunshine. It's going to block his pool, uh, derive his pool of sunshine. Well, as listed in the um, the town records, is thirty-five hundred square feet in size. So it's just less than two hundred square feet smaller than the house we're proposing to build. It's two and a half stories. Um, although it does fit on point two six acres. So it's a couple thousand square foot bigger lot than ours. However, um, in two thousand eight, we go to the next slide. The folks at fifteen Oak Street decided to add a pool house to their, to their um, three, uh, adding another four hundred and eighty square feet, putting their total living area on their property at uh, just about four thousand square feet. So this is a home that sits adjacent to the backyard of our home. It's four thousand square feet, two and a half stories. And yet the claim is our house is out of character with the neighborhood and it's going to adversely impact this home. And the basis for that argument was, if we go to the next slide, that, and this is a picture of the pool house presented. Um, I don't have a number for lot coverage on this uh, lot, but given the size of the home, the pool and the pool house, um, I, I will question whether they're not pushing the twenty-five percent, if not more. And the next picture, and I hope we can view this. There's a house at fifteen Oak Street uh, where the red marker is. There's the pool. You can see the pool in the middle of the picture and the, and the pool house to the upper region of the of the, of the picture. And then to the right of the pool, you can see a massive tree that, that sits between the pool and that green area. That's where we're proposing to build our house. So to say that the house that's going to be located on the opposite side of that tree is going to suddenly uh, and you can see the shadow from the, from that tree on the pool. Um, I, I don't see how our house, the proposed home, is going to have any impact on that pool unless they cut that tree down. So again, four thousand square feet home adjacent to us, yet the argument is we don't fit the neighborhood and we're going to be adverse to that. If we could go to the next. All right, again, this is just a close-up of the tree. Oh, there you go. That's a better picture, the one on the right. You can see where the existing home is. You can see the tree, the two trees around the pool, and you can see where our new home would be. Um, and certainly it's not going to have an impact on that pool. Uh, and I will remind the board that our house will be the required distance from the backyard setback. So we're not putting that house any closer to, to that home or that pool than the law allows. We are in conformance with the law. Um, I, I have to be honest. Uh, I wanted to make sure that we at least went through the two abutting properties so that we could you know, we could, we could understand what the information is and just really how we compare to the two abutters. Um, the Comos, which is shown on the corner there, um, they are a smaller home, but you'll recall that I sat and met with them. Tried to accommodate their concerns about, you know, blocking their backyard or blocking their sun. We did a complete flip of the house so that not only does our house meet the requisite setback from their house from the lot line, but the only thing that's going to abut that is the garage. And then, you know, some thirty, forty feet farther, then the rest of the house will show up. So we really did make a significant accommodation of the Comos. And given the fact that we meet all the laws, all the requirements and agreed to flip the house, I think we've done everything we can to accommodate them. However, they have decided now to recant their earlier um, support and, 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 and files. Um, which is unfortunate, given the fact that my client spent thousands of dollars to try and work with the neighbors. And remember at that time, guys, those were the only neighbors that had anything to say. They were the only neighbors that had any input. Um, so those are the ones that we focused on working. It was only, it wasn't until the last meeting that, you know, suddenly the other neighbors came up. So I, and, and I'll leave this, I don't want to take up the board's time and, and the neighbor's time or anyone else's time in, in going through every home we've provided a comparison to. But I can tell you, every home is within a quarter mile of this house. I clearly feel it's within the neighborhood. And there are literally dozens of homes that are thirty-seven hundred square feet or larger that are sitting on small lots, uh, or lots that are just barely conforming. Um, we've got one at forty-four hundred square feet at seven Beacon. We've got one at uh, at three thousand square feet on Riley. And, and there's a, and again, gentlemen, I, I, ladies, gentlemen, I'm not going to go through them all, but I ask you to look at. And we've been accused of sort of cherry picking, you know, just the houses in the neighborhood that meet this. And yes, of course, because what I want to show you is there is a significant number of malls in the area that are the same size or larger, including the two that are butts. And therefore we are in character with the neighborhood. I'm not saying we match a hundred percent. But I think we can say we match close to half or forty percent. That certainly puts us in a situation where we are in conformance with the neighborhood. Don't have to be, every home doesn't have to be that big, but certainly I can point out some within a very close region that exceed the size of our house. And I will tell you, each one of those that's on an undersized lot received a finding from this board that they would not be significantly detrimental to neighborhood. I, I understand there's a house at the end of Beacon and I'm not sure whether it's in here or not. I mean, it's, it's eleven thousand square feet gross.
I'm not sure. It's a large, it's at the end.
So there are even homes within the neighborhood that we haven't, we haven't pointed out to. Um, the last thing I, I want to touch on is, um, this whole idea of significantly detrimental. What does that truly mean? Uh, it's not a subjective determination, as, as most of our neighbors have concluded. They, we don't like it. It's going to be too big. We're not going to like it. It's going to cause our house values to go down. Whereas the market information proves otherwise. I, I'm asking the board to not look at this in a subjective way that geez, that's a big house. Well, in Newburyport, it's thirty seven hundred square feet. These days is certainly not a big house. And we are seeing more and more of these homes being converted to homes much bigger. And they are fitting in neighborhoods in some ways defining neighborhoods. So, you know, neighborhoods change over time. Characters change over time. Would suspect that most of these neighbors who do own the smaller homes, they find a readily available market for those homes when they're ready to sell. People aren't going to just move into them. They can make them bigger. That's what the world is moving to. So let's talk about what is detrimental. In my understanding of the law, detrimental means that it is violative of a protected interest. Okay? So that that house is going to be detrimental in the neighborhood in that, A, it's going to bring down my property values. It's going to block my ability to get in and out. It's going to create undue traffic impacts. It, it's going to, you know, what are there a detrimental impact? The, the fact that a, a house is going to affect the view from the house across the street that instead of looking across at the smaller home, they're looking at a bigger home. I don't think that's protected interest. I don't think the bylaw is, is meant to protect what people think is the best view they want to have. It, it, that's just not the way it is. I mean, clearly, you know, planting those trees next to that pool wiped out the view from the back of twenty six Beacon. Yet no one would have questioned that. They have a right to put a tree on their yard and it can grow as, as, as tall as it has. The neighbors have not articulated any specific detrimental impacts to their homes, other than it's going to change my view and block my sunlight. Again, I would ask the board, isn't that the reason why the city has height restrictions? And side yard setback restrictions? So they allow people to build only to a certain height so it won't unduly impact people's sunlight or their views? And we are meeting those requirements. Not building above the requirement. Not building outside of the building envelope. So the city says, you can do that. You can go to thirty five feet. You can go to within ten feet. And we've done that. Now, because we're on an undersized lot, the board has to view what will be those impacts to the neighborhood. And are they significantly more detrimental? That's quite the standard, significantly more detrimental. You might argue that if I'm impacting someone's view today, um, that might be detrimental, never subjective determination. But is it significantly detrimental to the overall neighborhood? Again, we don't look at one home and say, oh, it's detrimental to this home, therefore it's detrimental to the neighborhood. This board has to consider, in my opinion, nearly the entirety of the South End neighborhood to get an understanding of what the character is of them. Uh, the neighbors in their own writings, which again, we just received a few hours ago. Um, they mentioned the character of the South End neighborhood. Agree with them? Let's look at the South End and see how many big homes are there and just how out of the ordinary is what we're proposing. I think you'll find if you do the homework, it's not that unusual and not out of the question. And again, guys, we're not going from eleven hundred square feet to five thousand. We're going from thirteen, I want to say it wrong, please. Thirteen forty six to thirty seven sixty five. Is that a logic pretty sure it is? Almost, almost two and a half times. But that end product, thirty seven hundred odd square feet is no different than the two abutting neighbors. We're claiming we're going to have, I, I just, hard for me to reconcile. Um, so I'm going to leave the rest of that to the board because I'm sure you're going to want time to review it. And I'm sure you're going to want time to review the, um, analysis, counter analysis that's been provided, the, by the neighbors. Know this board is going to want to review everything and no issue with that. Um, one of the neighbors even suggested maybe a site visit. We're not adverse to that too, because in the same way they'd like you to walk you around and show you all the small houses. I'd love to walk you around and show you all the big house, including the two that are butters. So that you guys will have relevant context to what we're asking for and what the true impacts will be to the neighborhood. I can assure you that they're not going to be significantly detrimental. And I really challenge anyone to find the information that says putting a large home here will result in a diminution of the value of the abutting property. In this business, thirty years, I've never seen that. So, you know, may it have a little impact on one home if it does. You know, if it did, in fact, overhang it, which none of this, this home won't do. But other than that, there, there's no going to be a diminution and diminution in value of the neighboring homes when we add this new home. It's just not going to be there. So I'll leave it to the board whether you want to, you know, do a site visit or if in fact you want to see this hearing continued so you can review all of the information that the neighbors have provided to. If not, and you're, you're, you're set on making a decision today, which we also support, you consider the information I've just provided. That we're not going five times. We're not building a five thousand square foot home. We're not starting with eleven hundred square feet. We are doing what is typical throughout this city and a permit which you guys have granted. We walk through this thing, you'll see there are dozens of undersized lots, homes in the three to five thousand square foot range. And again, I'll say it one last time. Home meets all of the regulations with respect to setbacks, height, lot coverage. Three other requirement under your zone. The only reason we're here because we're short four feet of frontage and a little over a thousand feet of total area. Now, I don't think an extra thousand or fifteen hundred feet of area would lessen or increase the impact that this home would have on the, on the neighborhood. And yet we had that fifteen hundred square feet. We could build a five thousand square foot home here, as long as it met all the setbacks without any. So we were here before you because we're a thousand square feet short. Really need you to take a look at the neighborhood and what else is in the neighborhood. And the source of some of the opposition that's claiming we're going to ruin the neighborhood. Their homes are just as big and undersized lots, just like we are. So it's okay. If I have it, I don't want to see anybody else. It's just not right. Happy to answer any questions you might.
You counsel.
And I, excuse me, I should mention, uh, Gene Allen is here. So if the board does have any questions about the house sizes, what we're proposing, uh, Gene's here to answer all those questions. Very good.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. You can go to public comment. Uh, and you folks have been here all evening, so I suspect you know the rules of the road. So, uh, show of hands, who wants to go first? Thank you. Just again, just give your name and address.
Thank you. Uh, David Berlin, twenty four Beacon Avenue. We are the, uh, director butters on one side. I just want to make sure, uh, um, there, there are a few people here who agree to maybe, uh, yield their time to me. Is anybody here who would do that? David, uh, I just want to, they're not going to get up and speak, but I'll speak on behalf of the neighborhood and on, on their behalf. So there's still much time here. First, I would like to address some of the, um, uh, comments made by, uh, Mr. Duchesne. Uh, he mentioned that twenty Oak is on a non-conforming lot. It's a conforming, okay? And we provide the data. You have a big document that we submitted as a point of view for the neighborhood. And there's a table in there that shows you in the neighborhood are conforming and non-conforming. And we believe that for the most part, when a big house, or in that case, it's not even as big as the house they're suggesting, is on a, uh, conforming lot, it's sort of like disqualifies that comparison because they're talking about building a conforming lot. They mentioned that twenty six Beacon has thirteen hundred and forty six square feet. The public record says eleven hundred and two. Our analysis sticks to what's in the public record, and I don't know where the math comes from, but I, but we would ask that the board consider what is on the matter of public record and the assessor's record. He also did math and said that our house has thirty, thirty four hundred and sixteen square feet. The public record shows that is not the case. Public rec, records have thirty two fifty six, and that is the case. He mentioned that we built a new finished space over the garage. We did not. We took the existing finished space over the garage. We put a wall down the middle of it because it was the master bedroom closet. And we just split that same finished space into two rooms. One is now the master bedroom closet. The other is our, is our office. So these are a bunch of, uh, inaccuracies that we want to make sure that, um, don't influence decisions here. Um, they mentioned that they reduced the size of the house. They did not reduce the size of their planned house. They misspoke at the last hearing and just offered you a new number for the, for the new house. They said that it eliminates, um, non-conformities. I want to mention to you that the non-conformity they're eliminating in the side setbacks is on our side, it's six inches. Okay? It's irrelevant to us. Um, on, they, they mentioned the, 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 the different structures on fifteen Oak Street where the Tykowskis live. That is a conforming lot. He did math, said it's either twenty five percent or more lot coverage. Go there and measure. He conforms. Seven R Beacon, he mentioned, has no coverage, has no frontage on Beacon Avenue. It is a driveway that goes to the back to a house that borders public open space, which is the Perkins Park. Okay? That house is irrelevant in terms of the mass effect or the neighborhood or anything, because it just doesn't, it's, it doesn't compare. Okay? And it's on a conforming lot. He argued that they are not larger than anything else in the neighborhood. They are the largest in the neighborhood. And our data shows that. Um, he mentioned that over time neighborhoods change and just have to get used to it. We actually don't believe that. We believe in preserving the character of our neighborhood, and that's exactly why we're here today. Um, he also mentioned that we, uh, we talked about the character of the South End as a neighborhood. No, in our analysis, and I insist that you read it, please, we talked about this South End neighborhood. As anybody who's familiar with the South End knows, it's divided into a whole bunch of neighborhoods. We believe that our neighborhood is a much tighter uh, hit, uh, group of homes. And in the analysis that we provide, we offered not a, a few homes around the, um, the, uh, the, the subject property. We talked about forty one homes that are in the neighborhood, up and down Beacon Avenue, up and down Oak Street and up and down, up and down Pike Street a bit, because there are, uh, direct butters that are certified butters that are on Pike Street. So I just want to be clear about some of the inaccuracies in this statement. Now I have some prepared remarks to my. Uh, thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time to summarize neighborhood share point of view, which has been uploaded to the docket. And as well as, uh, to share some personal thoughts. Some of the neighborhood residents who cannot be here tonight sent their email requests to yield their time to me. So thank you for awarding me that. The shared neighborhood point of view, which is filed in opposition to the permit application focuses on five key points. The proposed dwelling size, scale and mass, and intimate relationship with the streetscape and lot on which it is to be built is significantly out of the line with any logical standard for the neighborhood. To prove that their proposed dwelling is in line with the neighborhood, the petitioners conveniently selected a cleverly filtered list of twenty two large dwelling properties, many of which are not in the neighborhood or should be disqualified as comparisons for other reasons. For example, they're on much larger and conforming lots. The presence of such a supersized dwelling on a small lot would incredibly, be incredibly disruptive to the college stretch of Beacon Avenue that forms the streetscape around the subject property and is therefore detrimental to the neighborhood. Twenty six Beacon Avenue is one of five non-conforming sized lots in a row in permitting the construction of a proposed supersized dwelling with a two point five story imposing facade stretching from the lot's left setback to its right setback. Full, full available frontage, uh, um, uh, is, would set a zoning precedent that would allow the same, the other four lots resulting in a, uh, potential mansionization of Beacon Avenue. As evidenced by the fact that closed dwellings are a transplant of a merely identical dwelling, dwelling built by the petitioners at forty one Wilton Street. Uh, we provide the, uh, the numbers in, in our document. The petitioners, who are repeat flippers in Newburyport, have taken a shortcut to prioritizing profit over preservation of the neighborhood character. We do not regret to petitioners their reform of income. Just bring a design that fits with the character of the neighborhood. And our larger document offers examples where this has, this has already been done and asks that you collaborate with us to arrive at a mutually beneficial outcome. We invite petitioners and the ZPA to come walk the hood with us. The neighborhood opposition document relies primarily on permit application and public data, including the city's assessor records, saleanddeeds.com and other permit applications to irrefutably demonstrate all of these five points. For example, to prove the proposed dwelling is in line with the neighborhood, petitioners picked homes that are sprinkled across Newburyport's South End, as though the entire South End is one big neighborhood. So I'm sure you know, nobody in Newburyport would agree with that, that that's the case. We can even demonstrate that the proposed dwelling is out of line with petitioners' version of the neighborhood, never mind our own. One important basis of our analysis is the size, scale and massing effect. For the dwelling size, scale and massing effect to be in line with any selection of properties, we believe that it's important to compare the dwelling size, scale and mass as it relates to its lot to the same, to the other dwellings in the neighborhood, not just some dwellings, all of them. That's to establish a baseline for the neighborhood. We're saying, this is in, they're saying this is in line with the neighborhood. Whereas we can rely on the architectural plans to approximate the proposed dwelling above ground volume and therefore size, scale and mass as it relates to the lot, the immediate streetscape and the neighborhood. We do not have access to the same data for all the other homes in the neighborhood, many of which were built in the seventeen and eighteen hundreds. So we turn to public data for every property in the neighborhood that we do have access to. To mathematically and therefore establish a baseline massing of the neighborhood, we focus on two ratios that serve as fair proxies for every dwelling's massing on its lot and the streetscape and the neighborhood around it to establish that baseline to say what's in line with the neighborhood. The facade frontage ratio, this looks at the width of the dwelling's primary or foremost facade as percentage of the, of the street frontage. It serves as a proxy for the extent to which the facade not only dominates the width of the lot, it also looks at the degree to which it imposes over the street and the streetscape. As the proposed dwelling evolves at two point five story facade stretching sixty five feet from the left to the right most setback of the lot's non-conforming eighty six feet of, of coverage, its facade frontage ratio is seventy six percent. At this percentage, instead of being in line with the neighborhood, it would rank number one out of all forty one properties in our analysis, in, in the neighborhood that are in our analysis, where the average is forty five percent. The living space lot size ratio looks at the reported square feet of living space as percentage of the lot size and square feet. This ratio offers a sense of the intimate relationship that the dwelling has to its lot and the lot to the streetscape and the neighborhood. The dwelling's thirty seven hundred fifty six square feet of living space and eight hundred, uh, eight, eighty five hundred ninety one square feet in lot size yield a living space lot size ratio of forty four percent. Ranking it number two out of all forty one properties in the neighborhood. That's double the neighborhood average. Metaphorically, the petitioners want to take a dwelling that's designed to fit in a much bigger lot as nearly the same dwelling does at the eleven thousand three hundred and twenty six square foot lot at forty one Molton Street and squeeze that into a much smaller lot. The Molton Street lot is like, is a, is a forming lot that's thirty two percent bigger than the lot at twenty six Beacon Avenue. It's like taking fifteen, eight and a half by eleven pages and stuffing them into an envelope like this. I think we can all agree that this is a way to kind of cheat the system and it kind of barely fits. Okay? You're better off putting it into something that conforms like this. Okay? So just because you can do it, doesn't mean you can't. The reason the neighborhood has come out with such overwhelming opposition and the document that we put online is physically signed by, physically or electronically signed by over thirty neighbors in the neighborhood. Uh, is that we realize now, if we support the idea of a massive dwelling coming to our neighborhood and moving so large over the Beacon Avenue streetscape, that we will have stepped on a slippery slope that allows for twenty more of them sandwiched together, forever destroying the amazing character of the South End neighborhood in exactly and precisely the way Mr. Duchesne said would, would and should happen in our case. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application?
You just have one or two rebuttals to that, in a way, unless she's done?
Please. Yeah, I could, I would just, I want to pull through, um, comments first and then certainly entertain any additional questions. Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm sorry when you're so late, first of all, um, but, um, one thing I did want to say, uh, at, at the
I'll just catch up, so you're naming the
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, my name is Ayesha Berlin. I'm David's wife. I reside at twenty-four Beacon Avenue. The house that was, uh, considered to be terribly. I first of all, want to kind of comment to why I personally submitted things so late, because I had this, I had all the printouts of everything from the, right before the last time we met to now and was trying to compare them and could hardly find any differences. And I know from doing the calculations of like the length and the depth and the height that they were very different from what was being stated on the papers. To this, to this point, I still can't make sense of what's actually different and I wish they would have simplified it for us. Um, that would definitely save us all the time. Um, but, um, I just want to say, uh, I object here to the proposal due to its massing. First, while the current proposal might be in line with current zoning ordinances with respect to setbacks, its sheer scale is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use and therefore intensifies the non-conforming nature of the property. Using the precedent of the case of Bjorkland at Al, the proposed construction would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In the Bjorkland case, the plaintiffs owed a lot size of point seven nine two acres, a non-conforming lot. Situated on the property was a one-bedroom, one-story, single-family house and a shed that consisted of six hundred and seventy-five square feet of living space. The home was thirty feet long along a frontage, very similar to the one that we're talking about now. The new owners wanted to tear down the current building to construct a new house with thirty-six hundred square feet of living space. The new house could be sixty-eight feet long along its frontage and complied with all dimensional requirements of zoning bylaws with the exception of the one acre minimum lot area requirement. So very similar, uh, to this one point. The judge in the case found that the sheer size of the building on a substandard lot, a non-conforming lot, increased the non-conforming nature of the structure. So it was just the sheer scaling that increased the non-conforming nature. And the case before you is very similar in nature, with a massive increase in size. And I had to do my own calculations. Some of them I could take from the, the, the plans, but some were so unclear that I had to, um, articulate the actual difference with our house, which yes, it's a large, I, we did not build it, we bought it. But it is step back, first of all. And it is also, we have a flat roof in the back, so part of it is not three stories, part of it's only two stories. And so I did, I did the width comparison, so it's going from thirty-four feet to sixty-five feet. I did the height comparison of, this is the current house on twenty-six Beacon, uh, from fifteen to thirty, now thirty-one feet, although that's clear to me what the actual height is. Um, and then I did the volume calculation, because I think that's really key here. Because we're talking about something that is massive. And so when you do that comparison, you have four point four times what is there now. And the way I did that, to be clear to everybody, is I took the height from the records, I took the height of the building times the length of the building, times the depth of the building. And I did the same thing for what they're wanting to put there, except I gave them even more credit. They didn't take the height of the garage. I just multiplied the two-story times two. And then you get four point four for times what is there now. And I also want to mention, compared to our house, when I do that same calculation, comes out with six, three hundred and ninety-two cubic feet and their house comes out with fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven cubic feet. And I think that's really important because it's the scale, it's the massive scale of the house that's not being communicated well. And then the square footage itself is almost four times what is there now. So what they're proposing is almost four times what's currently there. So hence, I think the current plan, based on the case and based on the information I just provided you, definitely increases the non-conforming nature of the house. Second, in addition to the above, personally, I find that the massing of the building has a substantial negative effect on the directed butters in the following way. There's a significant reduction in sunlight, a significant reduction in privacy, and I mean emphasize significant, and a significant negative effect on property value, property value to do the above enassing. I expect, provided you guys with some pictures, but our afternoon sunlight will be greatly affected both in our house and in our yard. Top and bottom, we have multiple windows facing that side that currently get plentiful sunlight and that will be almost fully to totally blocked by the mass of the proposed house. This will be due to the height of the building and where it will be situated, because it's now situated further to the front and it's going to be situated five feet to the back plus it's a depth of thirty-nine feet. Um, this will be due, um, and this will significantly reduce our sunlight, especially in winter when the sun arcs much lower in the sky and it will literally, we will not have sunlight because of that. Um, uh, and I also already mentioned the single story in the back, which is why that is much lower, so that did the even more adversity effect. Our privacy will also be significantly, significantly reduced with windows from the new house right in line with our windows. The back of their house, if you look at the plans, the, the entrance to the back is right, it's ten feet from our property line. And the, um, and, uh, and it's looming over our backyard. Currently, we have a very private backyard and I think we can all agree that that adds huge in Newburyport, that adds a huge value to your property value. So we disagree with the, the, um, the, the decrease in property value argument. Um, uh, and, and it's something that many people who visit us remark. There's no doubt in my mind that this is a feature of our house that adds value to our prop- property, because it's not common in Newburyport. We always receive comments on how unusual our property is with respect to its privacy and setting. In the back, our only sunlight in the afternoon comes from the direction of where the house will now stand. So in addition to the direct impact of the loss of sunlight and privacy, including windows that look directly into our window, we will also experience a loss in property value. Yet this is, cost is imposed on us by the building of the new house on twenty-six Beacon Avenue and it will not be new, internalized by the new owners. In fact, they will make a huge profit. Their plan indicates a desire to maximize personal profit and does not consider impacts on the neighborhood and directed butters, of which there are three. And I want to mention that there have been a number of cases in Massachusetts where sunlight and privacy do get taken into account if property value is, is affected. Specifically, these attributes have been considered in decisions in which local zoning laws lack specific protection for light, air and privacy, but in which impairment of those interests appears imposed directly from a marked rise in density, which is exactly what we're experiencing in Newburyport. Uh, this principle appears in cases of birthing, there's a board of appeals, the born and Petinella versus Board of Appeals in, in South And in addition to this, I want to ask you, um, I, I'm curious about who the builder is, how the property will be protected from construction and what planning has to be expected, if none of that has been discussed on the plans at all. And, um, there's something else I want to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else? And by the way, just crossing the midnight threshold, I'm going to hold everyone to two minutes and, uh, and that's just the way it's going to have to be. So kindly choose your words wisely, but it'll be two minutes, just in the interest of getting through this evening. So I thank you in advance and apologize in advance. Sir?
Yes, uh, I'm Fran Tull and I live at nineteen Oak Street. I guess I'm a certain butter, butter across the street. I'd be looking at the house to go out to my driveway every morning. Um, I have a couple of things I, at the opening of this, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, you mentioned the term the cruel march. I think that's pretty appropriate, given that it's twelve o'clock. Marching on, um, I think, you know, we've got a little bit of a red herring going here with twenty-four Beacon. Um, that house was built twenty years ago. A different time, a different neighborhood. That neighborhood has been improved. House is now twenty years old. I mean, it's approaching, I mean, it's, it's an older home. So it's relevance, um, to, uh, and it's, you know, upgrades and such, I think are irrelevant. Um, in terms of massing effect, I'd like to borrow something from Richard Feynman, I don't know, you know, we love, love businesses who, who, uh, showed how Space Shuttle, uh, blew up by, uh, by putting an ice cube in a, in a cup. I want you to think about the size of even your laptop computers, they all look pretty small, but if, if we put Andys in between those two and we push them to get, Andys would look much larger. Okay, and, and so I, I want to use that as a, say, um, a way of showing the massing effect of this house. Okay, we have a large structure at twenty-four Beacon, we have a smaller structure at, uh, seventeen Oak, I'm sorry, shouldn't have that number. And if we put a very large structure in between those two, it will look even larger than it is just because it's in, in an undersized lot. I think this is a very logical point. Uh, earlier tonight, we, we sat through, because we were delayed by our opposing lawyer here, uh, another petition for a home which you passed where, uh, Mr. Swanton praised the fact that the frontage of this house was smaller and more in line with the neighborhood. I think that's a key point to bring up here, because this house, and it's, quite frankly, its architectural style is not even in the character of this neighborhood. So if, using all of the pictures that were presented by both sides here, you will look and you will not see a single house in that that has any, any look that's similar to what's being presented here. I think that shows that the character is much different. So I, uh, I'll leave you with those three points.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Yes.
I am Sue Como and my husband mentioned that I live at seventeen Oak. Um, so during the, the, uh, previous, I was opening the one of the field meeting on May fifteenth, my husband and I did indicate that we accepted the, uh, building of the proposed very large house at twenty-six Beacon so long as the plans were reversed, such that the tall three-story facade of the wall of windows was not towering over our backyard. And I, um, appreciate, uh, Mr. Duchesne's efforts to, uh, put that into place. At that point in time, my husband and I were largely unaware of any abundance of opposition in the neighborhood aside from mostly our home. And we felt as though it was inevitable that such a large house would be built, given the many enormous homes that have been recently built in this, in this general area, but not in this immediate neighborhood, mind you, such that at the top, such as at the top as well as at the bottom of Beacon Ave and near the corner of Riley and Beacon. Felt as though we could fight the impending flood. And I suppose our decision was sort of an act of self-preservation as well as potentially damage control. We simply did not have the knowledge and tools to act otherwise at that time. Since then, we have been made aware that there are other avenues to take other than just assuming nothing can be done. Our neighbors have begun to speak up in solidarity against the building of that very large proposed house and there is now much support of the concerns that my husband and I originally felt were largely our own. We, we, we felt and we still feel that the house is just way too big for this neighborhood. I do apologize for our, uh, I do apologize for our originally being somewhat self-absorbed and short-sighted and thus perhaps unintentionally inconsiderate of the rest of our immediate neighbors, especially of our neighbors at twenty-four Beacon. I will remind the ZPA that we have since retracted the statements we made on age of Dean and we do not now accept or support the proposed plan, regardless of how the house is placed on the lot. We feel that such a large house would go very out of place in this immediate neighborhood and would, and would be a detriment rather than the implied more pleasing improvement. That said, we still do maintain our reasonable concerns, um, such, for example, we would lose the early morning sun that comes in through our rear bedroom window and wakes us gently and pleasantly in the morning. For that matter, twenty-four Beacon would be deprived of most of the sun. Both of us as the immediate abuddits, as two of the immediate abuddits, would lose privacy significantly, significantly in our windows and backyards. We are fearful that allowing such a large house to be built would set an unwanted precedent. Imagine, for example, if my husband and I sold our modest-sized home, although we have no intention of moving unless we're yeah, um, yeah, yeah, so, uh, we're fearful that allowing such a large house to be built with some precedent. Imagine if my husband and I sold our modest-sized home on the corner as well as did the other immediate neighbors with similar-sized homes and that all of these houses would then be placed by McMansions that would totally change, actually ruin the idyllic and picturesque atmosphere of this neighborhood. We invite any board members to come to our home at seventeen Oak Street, walk around the backyard and imagine what it would look like and feel like if they were to restore all the windows towering over our backyard just ten feet from our fence. And for that matter, instead of the same scenario invading the privacy um, and sunlight of the home at twenty-four Beacon, the house is just too tall, too big and too inappropriate for this immediate neighborhood's streetscape. And this neighborhood is defined by us, the actual neighbors.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I'll be extremely breached. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make an introduction. We talk about the neighborhood being unnatural. We are the neighborhood. We're here, please hear us.
Thank you, sir. Oh, uh, sir, Jane?
Rich Coe, seventeen Oak.
Apologize if you said that, I just missed it.
I did.
Hi, I'm Peter Tocolski. Uh, my wife Kirsten Gurley and I both own fifteen Oak Street. We're the stewards of that home, was built in seventeen hundred. It's the first home in the neighborhood. It's in our kind. That house is there. It's just pasture, goats, cows, nothing more. The third floor of our home was built with the original house in about seventeen hundred. It consists of a twenty-by-ten room with a three-and-a-half-by-three-and-a-half fireplace that goes right through. You can't get up in there unless you're about five feet, which people were back in the day. And they slipped up there to keep warm, because that was the warmest room, because the fireplace, it heated up. You can't furniture there. That, it's a very small attic. It resembles most of the older homes that have that type of attic space. They either have a large chimney or a small staircase that, that goes up. Thus being the steward of that house, um, I've watched a lot of things go on and taking care of this house has been a main ordeal for me to keep it in the historic register and everything with that. So that's been a main focus for me. My wife wishes she could be here, but she has to work at five-thirty in the morning at the hospital, uh, in the emergency. So she cannot be here. She feels the same way as I do about this too. When we bought the home, people had put on additional. It's only two floors. The ceiling's this big in the second floor, there's no attic over it. There's nothing, there's a little tiny hall space for the duck work to go in. It's at two, it's at two floors. Our house is a two-floor house. Um, as far as the pool goes, that yard, uh, the sun goes to the right side of that maple tree and that's how we receive our sun. If we felt the sun was so important, we'd cut the tree down, like maybe mentioned. Um, but we don't feel that way. We feel that having wildlife and birds and bees and things that pollinate trees make a big difference in this neighborhood. So we do have trees, we, we're guilty of having a hundred-year-old maple tree in the back. And by the way, And by the way, we have the largest oak tree in Newburyport in front of my house. They did a circle around it with the they made the road. Less wide, put the sidewalk around it. The Zurich only oak tree on Oak Street, which we are all Stewarts of. So putting all that. The only other thing is that the pool house that we built. There's no living space. There's no kitchen in it or anything like that. That is for the kids to play foosball in, watch TV. We have four children, three girls. I feel that putting a house that looks right into my backyard with three girls in bathing suits trying to have all the other girls over. And stuff like that is very invasive of our property. I don't feel that the height fits it at all. It peers right into my backyard. I'm not going to cut the tree down so I can get sun. His house will block the sun in my backyard. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's it's a lot. It's just too much. I would feel better if they would do what we did and put a two floor house. And live on two floors. Most of the people in our neighborhoods live on two floors. It it it's the envelope thing, Mr. Berlin water. It's just a massive Disney castle. With ten feet on each side. With no front. It looks ridiculous. And I want to thank you for being so late. It's twelve o'clock at night and I didn't hear an apology you at all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Quick, while we're doing this, quick show of hands, who else wishes to speak this evening? This application. Are there any other hands left, this gentleman? Yes, you, sir, and then. Anyone else? Because I I I want us to try to. I'll ask folks if you could, if it's been said, and I say this respectfully. If it doesn't need to be said again, I'll invite you to be concise. And we'll try to hear from everyone and we want to, you know, be thorough tonight. We did this late, so thank you all.
What's that?
Oh, great. Okay, sir.
Steve Murray, twenty five Beacon Ave.
While you're talking, we're gonna get some water.
By all means, I'll be additive here, although I would like it on record that I'm also saying Mr. Duchesne for being late. Over here late.
And so the only additive thing I'll add is. Twenty five Beacon, right around the area that the house is being developed is one of the last. Tree lined areas of the road. It's what drew my wife and I to the house we live in today. And as Mr. Duchesne said, like. Hey, this is the way the world works. We develop new houses, we build new houses, and I agree with that. But like, it's a forty four hundred square foot house. I get deliverable spaces less. But like, it does set precedent, and he said it himself, like. If that enters the neighborhood and houses get to that scale, that mass. Like, I I feel like the, at least the immediate environment, like what gives our road. What gives our home character, but the aesthetic of the neighborhood is different. So that should go into consideration as well.
Okay, thanks.
My name's Mark Gallagher. Eighteen Beacon Avenue. I want to go to sleep right now. Since then, patient for me more than anything, watching the board. Seeing how things. Seeing who did really. I've been in the twenty seven years. My wife and I. Little tiny ranch. Nine hundred fifty seven square feet. I have a neighbor across the street who has all signs. Up in this neighborhood. Change that has come to our neighborhood. Scaring me to death. I get more. People are leaving banks. Dunkin' Donuts come to buy my house because I have three quarters of egg. Really tiny house. Planted about seventy five trees. Do horticulture. Joke with my wife. Every time the city cuts down a tree, I'm like, too. That was the case. Listen to all of you. It's amazing. My wife had to take my van home. With another neighbor because they're so tired, they couldn't stay here. I I love nature. I love nature. But upon behind. These eagles that come. Fortunately, a woodchuck. Fifty rabbits, but what's happening? It was foxes. It was skunks. It was possums. It was even a couple of coyotes. Which everybody seems to be so frightened of. And now what there is. This massive growth in Newbury. You know, we all know. All's theory. This neighborhood is tight. I'm watched. Dave and Ace's children. I saw the house before they bought it. It was a small ranch. It was a small cave. Somebody bought it, said they were gonna, they were gonna keep the house. What they did was they they went up. As far as they could go and they actually went beyond the plans. But for some reason, the board doesn't seem to have people take the top up, take the bullet plans. They just. It just seems like more. Money is coming into Newbury. My wife and I worked. We lived in a condo across the street. It's funny, for twelve years, and we moved using a wheelbarrow. Bought this little. Excuse my language, shitty ranch. It looked like a trailer. But we worked for the next eight years and we had renovated. We love this neighborhood more than I do. It is changing so much right now. It's scary. Someone told me to go to forty one Molten Street and I drove up there and I was astounded at the size of the house. We know what's happening in Newburyport. You know, we all know the emperor has no clothes. We know I will be pushed out. Or I will die. Someone will buy it and they will grass my house right away. And build more condos for one giant building. We just lost Caroline Chuck away down the street. Someone bought the house. They took out, I swear, at least twelve huge trees. It seems like this city is letting. Money. Buy whatever it wants. Think it's sad. I know I'm not supposed to use emotions here, but. You got. I just have to come visit my house. Come see what what nature looks like. Instead of taking a lot and just clearing, everybody's just clearing these lots. I can't, you all know. All see it. So. I wish my wife could be here, but she's she's. She's the dearest, sweetest, loveliest person. And we have been. I don't know what's happening in this town, this city. It is just getting bigger, bigger, bigger car, bigger houses. I think we're using too much resources. I think we're just ignoring. What's really. And I won't give up my house until two of us stop. My wife is seventy six, sixty eight. Just, you gotta come to my. Nothing like it in Newbury. So anyway. I have bought all of you staying here for this long. You know, and some of you are older than me, not much older. So. All I know is a lot of lawyers. Heard a lot of very articulate people. And I see now. That most neighborhoods, Newbury. Because they're just so weak that they had to. I have nothing against you. I want you to have a house. I want you to live in the neighborhood. If you stay in the neighborhood, you don't sell it to me. And I want to say one thing. What I want to say is. What I didn't like about tonight was. Many of them had to leave because they were so tired. I don't know why. We accommodate. Lawyers. But the neighborhood is right on time. Stuck with it. I gotta get more of this city. Man. Need some of that. It needs something. What's gonna happen to all this? Everything is just the lead. I'm so thirsty. Thank you for the education. Thank you, guys. Good job. I don't know how the hell you do it, to be true. I just hope you listen. Hope you listen to what. What's happening and knew what they thought, because it's really, it's right in front of you, as you all know.
Thank you, sir. I see one hand online and I'd like to address. Looks like Sarah has a hand up. Sarah, if you can hear us, this is Rob Chinipenny. And we're going to unmute your mic, ask you to do the same. And we will just ask you to give your full name and address, then. So your thoughts?
Sure, I'll be super quick because I know it's beyond late. I was on this call with a few other neighbors. They've dropped off. They have younger children. They could not stay up this late. Sarah Harrington, I live on fourteen Lincoln Street, which is in the neighborhood, as the lawyer would say. And there are many of us on Lincoln Street that are very concerned about the scale and size of this proposed house. We're all against it. It's, I'm gonna just echo what everybody else has said. I agree, the scale, the size. It sets a dangerous precedent to keep allowing this type of scale. And size of house to be built on such a small lot because. As everyone has said, if you came to that house and looked directly across the street. All of the houses are small ranches and capes. The lawyer absolutely cherry picked houses. He didn't look directly across the street. It's gonna totally change the neighborhood and that's all I have to say. I agree with everybody else who spoke before me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else online or in the room? Before I close comment?
In my in my letter that I. There was one other small thing that I. They asked the board to consider, and that is. Watergate break right in front of twenty six Beacon two years ago, and the DPS told us that all they did was patch it. And so I would question whether or not. Construction, demolition and or construction of this home may have some. Effect on on that infrastructure. We also have a significant drainage problem on Beacon Avenue, which is documented by there being a nine inch pipe that goes all the way down Beacon to the river. And I'm concerned that the increase. You know, the the increased size of this may have may have dealt with various effects on on drainage.
Thank you, sir. Have anyone else wish to speak? Let's go in twice. Seeing no hands online any longer, going to close. Public comment and Attorney Duchesne, you wanted to address, and if I can ask you, I I've been very sort of. You know, exercised a lot of discretion.
I can assure you, I'll be left in two minutes.
Okay, great. And I bet I just wanted, I wanted to ask. You to try to be as succinct as you can go.
I I. I guess the only thing I. There are a number of things I want to say in response to some of the information, especially those suggesting that our data is incorrect. First of all, you cannot always rely on. The town records, for instance, in looking at our neighbor next door, they just their house at the size. Yet when we went back through and looked at the additions. You know, the town hadn't updated the records, so there are times, in fact, we found that with our home as well, right? We. Originally said it was eleven hundred square feet and then determined that the city had not reflected in their records. Then in fact, the entire upstairs was finished. So that's why we're now at thirteen. Hundred whatever, but and and I do have, and the last statement I want to make is that. You know, for the record, the the builder and the architect for forty one Molten Street is sitting right here. Can assure you that that was not a conforming lot, that was an undersized lot and they had to obtain a binding.
Point twenty six.
Right.
We have to go in front of the beacon.
But we did have to go in front of the zoning board to be able to build that. In light of the late hour and the fact that I would like an opportunity to address a lot of the statements that were said tonight. But ask the board to consider a continuation of this hearing so that you can also consider all, and we can all consider the plethora of information that was submitted at four thirty this afternoon. I have had no chance to review it and rebut it. And I don't even know if the boards had a chance to look at it, so. I would suggest that a a a continuance is in order. Because we do still have more information, but more importantly, if the board is inclined to grant the continuance. My client has authorized me to try and set up a meeting with the neighbors representative. See if we can't sit down and talk.
Thank you. One thing. Give me a moment. We're a country mile down this road, right? It's twelve thirty in the morning. So I'll ask members of the Z B A whether there's any appetite for. Continuance or what we press on. Here, including ourselves and yourselves and. You and your clients. Twelve thirty thirty. Yeah, continue on. I'm not prepared. Same with this case. We should never stop looking. I think that that writing is involved. It's it's fatiguing to sit release, but out of respect for all those that suffered out this late, I wanted to open this hearing. We will do want to entertain. How much time do you feel you need and which time do we feel we need?
Well, I mean, I can be ready in two weeks, but I also do want to make sure that there's an opportunity to meet with the neighborhood and see. If there is a way to resolve the differences and come to an agreement.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say that this application is already been before us. In fairness, one, two, three, four, this will be the fifth. So we've opened the public hearing. We we're not going to go backwards. When we do come back, we're gonna pick up right where we left off. Do a continuance, we pick up. That means there will be no further public comment unless there's new material.
Oh, Sharon, I again, I said that I really shortened my comments.
Well, I'll give you the opportunity to speak. If that happens, I think that in fairness, we I may will open up a very brief. Public comment, but then we're gonna move on, but we we certainly will bring it in the top of the docket, so that. It's the first thing we do. Okay, so two weeks. You're welcome. Two weeks, right? So then, two hundred weeks. Always gonna be.
Vacation, school vacation.
Just like the comment that. The. This part, the the petitioner has submitted one hundred and forty six pages of new documentation. Last week. And we had three business days to put together a response. We, I I I came to the planning department to say, why do here? Because I, we don't have enough time. And I was told you get, you can get in the the butters and everybody, we have certain butters here. Can get their responsive data here. We will continue in this site. If we just keep going, we'll just be.
No, we won't. We would market no further. Respect that. Let you know then, we have, you know. We have a tool to deal with. The risk of that. we have a tool to deal with, um, the risk of that, uh, that bleed. But at the end of the day, this is this is not a perfect science, unfortunately, but we will endeavor to make it as perfect as we can. And I say this with respect. Vacations, summer, all that notwithstanding. This this board, we're all volunteers here as well, you know, so we're we're here with you shoulder to shoulder. We will be here. Um, not just because we have to, but because we want to see this through. Um, I want to try to accommodate obvious sort of conflicts, but
I was gonna say two of the applications, six twenty five, providing one presentation.
Six twenty five. Six twenty five? So that's two weeks. All right, then we mark it first out. We pick up. Attorney Duchaine's room. Well, um, I'll invite anybody, obviously. The public hearing's still open, so if you dare and are inclined, certainly we would want you to be here. I respect the fact that many of you have been here for us. So, uh, sorry to, uh, for your turn. The beginning of the interview. Yeah, I I wanted to be marked. Like, what what happens if, if he doesn't show?
Or his lady.
Or his lady, then we can, well.
Not, not to do this again.
Attorney Duchaine, you'll be, well, I think, I think there was
He's being here tonight as his brother died. I'm sure he'll be here on point.
There was a conflict, um, I believe you, it was another earlier mid episode, if you're in Act the Brother Dies.
Yes, brother died last.
But it's been
My end of my
Well, hold on, please, please. I know that it's safe, everyone's task. But let's not leave argumentary or someone's, someone's brother was there. I wasn't aware of that. My condolences. I am, I I I think let's undertake this continuance and then let's let's part company this evening and we'll come back fresh first out on the twenty two. And that's what we're gonna do. And if someone's late, we'll we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I I just, I couldn't, I can't address, I couldn't begin to address the hypothetical tonight, but
Thanks for all your work there.
Hopefully, hopefully this, all right. Uh, whoever wants to make a so long, so, all in favor? All right, we opposed, no, the motion carries. Uh, it's continued to six twenty five.
Thank you.
And, um, my condolences. Uh, we have a motion to we have, um, do page two. Paragraph eighty two. It says twenty five percent, it should be twenty five feet. I'm gonna go to bottom of the pile, some aggression. All right. I have three ninety minutes. Done this time, this time dead man in law.